Please find your seats. Please find your seats. Good morning. Good morning. Welcome to the New York City hearing on the Committee on Public Housing. At this time, please silence all electronics and do not approach today's. I repeat, please do not approach today's. If you haven't filled out a slip and are testifying, please fill out a slip at the back of the room with the sergeant at arms. You could submit one online at testimony@council.nyc.gov. That is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Any questions? Any further questions or concerns? Please contact the sergeant. Chair, you may begin.
Thank you. I'm calling this meeting to order. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this hearing on the Committee for Public Housing in New York City Council. I am Councilman Chris Banks, the chair of this committee, and I'm glad to be joined by my colleague, Justin Brennan. And we're also glad to be joined by the public who's here today. I am also happy to welcome the New York City Comptole's office, who was here at our hearing this morning, and also will be expecting the public advocate in a few. Today's hearing focuses on transparency. Transparency is an essential expectation for all city agencies, an essential role of the city, of the council, in its demand for transparency when it is not freely given. But transparency is especially vital for NITRA due to its dual role as both a public authority and a landlord. NITRA is accountable not only to the city in general, but to its over 300,000 public housing residents who rely on and deserve clear and honest answers about the safety and the conditions of their homes. Without transparency, residents are left in the dark about critical issues that affect their daily lives, from the physical conditions of their apartments to the decisions about building management and governance. NITRA should be held at a minimum to the same standard as private landlords in the city, and ideally even a higher standard as the government body tasked with providing safe and affordable housing for mixed-income New Yorkers. One of the most pressing areas where NITRA lacks transparency is housing conditions and maintenance. We've heard that residents struggle to access clear and up-to-date information about the status of repairs, outstanding code violations, long-term capital improvements in their buildings, and too often, work orders are marked as completed when repairs are still unfinished. And there is little visibility into the criteria considered by NITRA when it prioritizes maintenance requests or selects contractors to complete repairs. At this hearing, we hope that NITRA can shed light on these processes and commit to making that information more accessible to residents moving forward. Another major concern is transparency around the Permanent Affordability Commitment Together Program, or PAC. Under the PAC, NITRA converts conventional Section 9 housing to private management under the federal rental assistance demonstration model. Despite prior hearings by the committee seeking transparency around PAC, NITRA has not offered clear answers as to how developments are selected for conversions and what impacts conversions will have on the services and rights available to the residents, and how oversight is maintained once private entities take over. NITRA has repeatedly affirmed that residents under PAC have the same rights as residents under Section 9 housing. Yet, we've heard that PAC residents are evicted at a higher rates, have limited ability to transfer to new apartments, and are not given access to the same services that they were guaranteed under NITRA, under Section 9. Risks that are not informed of before the conversion. As developments continue to be selected for potential conversions to PAC or considered PAC, when in the voting process for the Public Housing Preservation Trust, NITRA has the opportunity to provide greater transparency about these alternatives to ensure that residents can make informed decisions and are not pushed into making a choice that will harm them down the line. We hope to hear such commitments from NITRA today, but if we don't, I have serious reservations about the future of the PAC program and its ability to truly serve the residents. Moving forward, it is imperative that NITRA provide timely and accurate information to residents about decisions and operations that affect the safety and livability of their homes. Otherwise, harmful cycles of mismanagement, deteriorating living conditions, and erosion of the trust will continue. I hope that today's forum provides an opportunity for us to make meaningful steps towards stopping these cycles and ushering in a new era of proactive transparency in the city's public housing. I would like to thank my staff, Michael Lambert, along with the Public Housing Committee staff, Jose, Charles, Jack, Reese, Ciara Townsend, for all the work they've put into making this hearing possible. In keeping with tradition for this committee, before we hear from NITRA, we will first hear from the testimony of a panel of NITRA residents and advocates. We will now call for the pre-panel Marcus Jenkins, Selenez Miranda, and Dr. Keisha Crawford. I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall maintain silence at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witnesses, from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or radio recordings at testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant at arms for inclusion into the hearing record. We will begin with... Selenez, would you like to begin? Thank you.
My name is Selenez Miranda. I'm here representing the Fulton and Elliott Chelsea tenants against demolition. We have been fighting relentlessly against the proposed demolition of our NITRA buildings in Chelsea, two separate developments, Fulton and Elliott Chelsea Houses. There are several false narratives being circulated by NITRA, our city council member, Eric Botcher, and the developers, Essence and Related Companies regarding the demolition of our public housing. I want to remind the Public Housing Committee that the demolition of public housing in any community threatens the public housing in your respective district as well. We cannot allow this reckless demolition proposal to move forward as it threatens the future of public housing throughout New York City. The following three arguments are being used by NITRA and the private developers, Essence and Related Companies to support the demolition of our public housing. One, the residents want and chose demolition. Two, the buildings are falling apart. And three, it will cost more to renovate. I want to explain how these are all false. First, we have a petition of 949 signatures from the Fulton and Elliott Chelsea tenants who are against the demolition, which far exceeds the 550 tenants who selected new construction. I personally knocked off hundreds of doors to speak with my neighbors about this demolition proposal, and most of them do not want it. Our city council member is choosing to side with NITRA and the developers by ignoring our petition. Two, second, if our buildings were falling apart, they would not be habitable. We would be required to vacate immediately. The fact that families, elderly, the sick, disabled, are living there today means that the buildings are habitable. My apartment is in great shape, and so are the apartments of many of my neighbors. In addition to this, Essence, Related Companies, and NITRA admitted in a letter to our community board that they are not aware of any significant structural damages of our FEC building. In other words, the buildings are not falling apart. And lastly, the cost of demolition. Related Companies recently admitted at a community board meeting that the cost to demolish our buildings and rebuild is higher than the renovation with a total of $1.9 billion. This is an increase from the original projected cost. While NITRA said that the renovations of our FEC building will cost more than demolition, NITRA and the private developers have an agenda. They want to demolish public housing, even though it's more expensive than rehabilitating our NITRA buildings. We demand to view all relevant documents that are vital to this proposal. Number one, an independent audit that was completed for Related Companies. This audit is the one that demolition proposal is being based on. We have asked to see this audit, and NITRA has not answered us. We need to see the audit conducted by Related Companies, the one being used to justify the demolition of our homes. Two, we must see the obsolescence report, a document that is supposed to detail how our buildings are in disrepair. All housing authorities must provide an obsolescence report prior to any public housing demolition. Can I get 30 seconds?
30 seconds to wrap it up.
According to HUD's rules, NITRA has yet to disclose this report. We have requested this report over and over again. Why are they not making this available for public disclosure? We insist that these documents be made available, and our representatives should also be requesting to see these documents. Otherwise, you are all allowing the demolition of public housing to continue without any actual proof that anything is wrong with the buildings. Thank you for the platform.
Thank you. Order, guys. Order. Thank you, guys. Please reserve your applause. There's no applause in the committee hearing. Please, thank you, and maintain order. Marcus?
So I do want to applaud and thank Selenez, Renee, Jackie, and the members of FEC, as well as Dr. Crawford, who have been fighting this Herculean fight. Going back and continuing what we discussed outside, we have a huge problem with transparency. Everyone in public housing, everyone working with public housing residents wants to see the repairs done. The question is, how do we do it? And how do we do it in a way where the residents are at the decision-making table? We have, or the New York City Housing Authority has estimated a $78 billion deficit. But what continues to get left out of that number is the fact that that is a 20-year projection. And so, simple math, when you divide $78 billion by 20 years, how much money do we need for public housing each year? And why can we not get nearly $2 billion from all three levels of government? Further, when we look at this $78 billion deficit, and we look at the amount of RAD conversions that have taken place thus far, the New York City Housing Authority has been mentioning this $78 billion for well over a year, and that number jumped from nearly two years ago. So how is it that we have all of these conversions and yet the deficit is not going down? When we also think about transparency, we're also talking about the access that residents have to the information, not just the information about the repairs that need to be done in their home and how much it costs to do those repairs, but the contracts that are being signed. When tenant association presidents are being asked to sign non-disclosure agreements, that is a problem. It goes completely against their role as tenant association presidents. And when there is a block, something, a physical document, that is blocking them from communicating what is happening in their development, that becomes their inability to do their job effectively. And so, we need to put measures in to make sure that tenant association presidents are not signing non-disclosure agreements. The other thing I want to talk about is the evaluation of RAD. We only have one study of RAD, and that is the Human Watch Report. New York City, with all the RAD that has been conducted, there has been no evaluation of the overall program. And the New York City Housing Authority will tell you in their testimony that with each conversion, they have made changes. So that suggests that they have not created the ideal model of RAD thus far. And part of that is because they haven't included the residents in a real way. We have dozens of organizations all across the city that are perfect experts at community engagements that they should be utilizing. One more thing about transparency is, today, we will hear from the New York City Housing Authority, but who we will not hear from is the developers. So how much oversight do we truly have over these developers when our residents or when these developments cross over into their custody? 30 seconds to go. What we are asking for is we are asking for real resident engagement. Residents, there's no one-size-fits-all plan. So there might be some residents who want RAD. But if we are not arming residents with the information that they need by conducting an actual evaluation of RAD, by conducting actual independent physical needs assessments of their development so that they can understand how much it costs to fix all the repairs and where they can get that funding? And further, we need tools. We need tools to be able to hold private developers accountable. There should be an evaluation mechanism that's put in place to evaluate these private developers on an annual or biannual basis. And finally, we need funding. What the scariest part about RAD is that they are taking mortgages out on these properties. And for the first time in history, public housing can fall threat to foreclosure. And in putting forth legislation like the Public Housing Preservation Trust, there was no conversation about what happens if there is a default. If the city and the state thinks that this is a great plan, then why not back it up by saying, if there's a default, we will guarantee the funding to pay back the funding so that public housing does not go into foreclosure? So thank you, and I apologize for going over.
All right. Thank you for your testimony. Dr. Crawford?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Dr. Keisha Crawford, and I stand before you only as a longtime resident of Stuyvesant Gardens, but as the duly-elected Resident Management Corporation RMC chair. Today, I speak on behalf of the residents who have endured years of neglect, deception, and now direct retaliation by RAD PAC and NITRA. I have been threatened, lied upon, and retired... Excuse me. Retaliate... Excuse me. Retaliate, lady, and...
Take your time.
...against simply for exercising my rights, advocating for my community, and demanding transparency, ability, and fairness. I moved into Stuyvesant Gardens with the hope of providing my family with a stable home. Instead, for decades, I, along with my neighbors, have suffered through deplorable living conditions. The lack of insulation, malfunctioning radiators that spew steam, and the bathroom vents that have never worked have led to chronic mode infestations in our closets and bathrooms. Leaks for above are routinely... Excuse me, y'all. I'm just... Above are routinely patched up without addressing the root cause, allowing moisture to fester, attracting roaches and mice to scurry through our walls. When we ask about the future of our development, we are met with silence, half-truth, outright misinformation. I was personally approached by individuals pushing RAD PAC's agenda, asking me what I wanted. My answer was simple accountability. Instead of a meaningful response, I was told I should simply be happy with a nice apartment and whatever is handed to me. That is unacceptable. Residents are being harassed, intimidated, and told that they must sign documents without being given full and honest disclosures. We have seniors in gardens too who were told that the heat would not be turned back on unless they signed new leases. Where is the morality? Where is the morality in that? Where is the legal justification? Where is the oversight? We have submitted multiple requests for reasonable accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, and those requests have been ignored or denied without cause. This is a clear violation of federal law under 24 CFR, 42 USC, and New York City human rights law. The my NITRA system is riddled with conflicts of interest, and maintenance tickets are regularly closed without resolution, allowing these hazardous conditions to persist. Beyond the deteriorating... Excuse me. Beyond the deteriorating conditions, we are witnessing a coordinated effort to silence and coerce residents into compliance. We have reports of tenants being told that if they do not open their doors, their locks will be drilled open. Let me ask you this. Is this what transparency looks like? Why is RAD PAC threatening residents to force them into conversion? Who benefits from this scheme? Certainly not the residents...
You have a minute to wrap it up.
Instead, NITRA dodges accountability, developers profit, financial institutions rake into rewards, and tenants are left in the dark, confused, misinformed, and struggling with the mental and emotional toll of this manufactured chaos. Enough is enough. The residents of Stuyvesant Gardens have passed a binding resolution rejecting RAD PAC, coercing, and fraud. We have asserted our rights, and we will take judicial... Legislative and watchdog measures to prevent the conversion of our development. This letter serves as a form of cease and desist demand to NITRA and all associated entities. If the harassment, intimidation, and fraudulent tactics do not immediately cease within seven business days, we will, number one, file formal complaints with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, the New York Controller, the New York Attorney General, and federal watchdog agencies. Two, pursue legal action against NITRA and all involved parties for violation of federal housing laws, ADA, noncompliance, and tenant harassment. Three, petition legislators to conduct oversight hearings into NITRA's mismanagement and misconduct under RAD PAC. Four, mobilize media coverage and expose the corruption, intimidation, and coercing being exposed on tenants. We would not be forced into conversion against our will. Other developments were given the right to choose their future. Why is that right being stripped from us? We demand a freeze on RAD PAC. We demand a freeze on RAD PAC conversions until a full transparent investigation is conducted. And we demand an independent oversight body that does not direct conflict and interest with NITRA or private developers. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Stuyvesant Gardens matter. Our voices matter. Our rights matter. NITRA, RAD PAC, and all involved parties, you, NITRA, RAD PAC, and all involved parties, you have seven days to correct your course. If not, we will escalate every legal legislative and public action available to us. We refuse to be ignored, and we refuse to be silent. Respectfully, Dr. Keisha Crawford, Resident Management Corporation Chair, Stuyvesant Gardens. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let me, before we proceed with the pre-panel, I want to recognize some of my colleagues that are here. We have Councilmember Darlene Mealy, Councilmember Viles, and also, we've been joined by a public advocate. And before we proceed to the pre-panel, we will have our public advocate give a statement. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your testimony. Can't hear me?
Yep.
Is that better?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your testimony. Thanks for giving the opportunity to give... For giving an opening statement. Good morning. My name is Jomani Williams. I'm a public advocate for the City of New York. Thank you again, Chair Banks, for holding this hearing and allowing me the opportunity to provide a statement. Over the last few decades, the New York City Housing Authority, NITRA, has earned a reputation for being one of the worst landlords in New York City. Their physical needs assessment, or PNA, was conducted in 2023 by the United States Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. There are 335 NITRA developments consisting of 178,000 units that have violations. NITRA has been on my New York City worst landlord list in prior years for multiple years. Between 2023 to 2024, NITRA's work orders decreased from 618,310, the most in history, to 600,233. Furthermore, there needs to be complete transparency from NITRA to determine whether repairs were actually addressed, since work order tickets are often closed without repairs being done, and it's important to know many units have violations today, as well as how many are C violations. NITRA still needs almost $80 billion to be to resolve necessary repairs across the city. Elected officials continue to hear frustrations of constituents who have had to brave another winter with lack of heat or hot water in their NITRA buildings, a problem that has been exacerbated as a result of the chronic underfunding by the federal government. The Housing Authority advocated for Emergency Rental Assistance Program, or ERAP, funding, and there were other reports that NITRA was to distribute $185 million to aid households in that old rent. Yet, there has been an increase in non-payment cases, probably as a result of the pandemic, as well as NITRA and its residents waiting for ERAP inclusion and disbursement. NITRA created the Permanent Affordability Commitment Together, PAC, or PAC Initiative as part of the Next Generation Plan back in 2015. Almost 10 years later, as of July 2024, it was reported by CEO Lisa Bovet-Hayet that 138 developments across the city are either in the planning and engagement phase, under construction, or have completed the conversion of PAC, resulting in an estimated $13.2 billion worth of renovations. 138 out of 335, or 41% of NITRA developments, have converted to PAC, but a great number of NITRA residents have shared mistrust during transition periods at their developments. Unfortunately, we've seen Mayor Adams grow closer to President Trump since November 2024, but it is unclear how their relationship translates into assisting NITRA and New Yorkers. Moreover, we need to know how Trump-heavy-handed federal agency headcount reductions and cuts to agency budgets will impact HUD and public housing residents. While it is clear that NITRA needs a considerable amount of infusion of cash, they also must do better with transparency and communication when it comes to a variety of issues such as mold remediation, ground soil, arsenic contamination, and automatically closing out work order tickets when someone is not home. I believe NITRA has failed to create a healthy environment for its residents, or as many existing challenges have been exacerbated as a result of the pandemic. Hopefully, we can continue to work together to better understand what meaningfully practices NITRA is taking to strengthen the majority of the residents' quality of life, and that's in management, even without some of the funding, because both those things are necessary. in management, even without some of the funding, because both those things are necessary. In terms of RadPAC, particularly around Fulton Elliott, this is really, really important to get correct, since a lot of people are looking at what's happening here. And I always want to make it clear that many things can be true at the same time. It is 100% true that we need funding on multiple years, and it is probably true that we are not going to get much of that funding from the federal government. Trying to figure out how we address the tenants' needs is really, really important. Any proposal that's put forward gets pushed back. So we're trying to figure out how best to have tenants themselves lead in what they prefer. Sometimes it's the best, and some very tough decisions. That means some residents are going to agree with RadPAC, and some are not, and we should allow tenants to be the lead there. What is concerning about Fulton Elliott is how some of the votes around this took place, and I do think we should take some opportunities to really dig in just to make sure that tenants have the ability to have their voices heard. I have been really concerned about that, how NYCHA and developer handle that situation. So I would like some more information about that. But if indeed it is tenants that have had their voices heard, and that's the direction of going, then we should allow the tenants to lead. Also, it's really important, because we have a very bad history when it comes to this type of stuff, whether it is NYCHA or others where people are going to be removed, or stay in place, or land is going to be taken. This is very, very valuable land, and the makeup of NYCHA is that which sometimes those voices get ignored, particularly when there's land involved. So this is really, really something we have to pay attention to and get correct, and I have a lot of concerns about what's going on. So thank you, Chair, for doing this hearing. Appreciate it.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate. We're going to proceed with our pre-panel testimony. We will, oh, you have a question? Okay. Let me, well, what we'll do, let's get through the panel, then you can ask the question to the entire. We're going to move forth with Ms. Eve from Penn Workman Houses.
Good morning. I really didn't prepare. I really didn't prepare a speech, and the reason why I didn't prepare one is because I want to speak freestyle, because everything that NYCHA, everybody with the PAC-RAD program, all they do is they say what they're going to do, what they're going to do is what they're not doing, and what they're being very secretive. They keep saying about transparency, there is no transparency. They keep emphasizing conversion, it's not conversion, it's coercing. And what they're doing, they're lying about a lot of things, and they're very bold, and they speak to you in an indigified way, where they treat you not as tenants, but they treat you as if you're an inmate, that you have no rights. Police officers was called at me is because I'm expressing my rights, because I refuse to sign an attendant sheet. By law, there is no law to state that I have to sign any sheet. I have the right to be there because I'm a tenant, whether even if you're a squatter and you attend, and it's a community meeting, you're entitled to do. So I was pressured into signing an attendant sheet. They dictate what we're going to do, they only allow the board to speak, they, they say things that's not correct, and I blame NYCHA. And NYCHA is the cause of it, because they use people to make people go against. Since the conversion, I've been harassed, I've been followed, they tried into my apartment, they make things that's so uncomfortable that even family members are going against me, where we're all at odds, because everybody is afraid to speak up and speak out. Like I said before, at the end of the day, they had stated that the reason that they're going private is to be able to get the funding. They received the funding, and we're still at the same place before they got the conversion, and all they use is Section 8 this, Section 8 that. Section 8 has law. The only thing that they're trying to do is because they know that Section 9 is ironclad, and they are purposely not fixing things to force the hand at federal, at the federal government for them to be able to get the funding. That's number one. And they're very bold, and when I say they're very bold, they bold to tell the tenants is because they know nothing is being recorded, nothing is, is, is nothing but hearsay, it's for us to prove. How is it that in, since they received the contract on December 29th of 2022, that up until now, Penn Workman Houses, along with Linden Houses, Feltina, I'm saying just for Linden, how is it that management has been switched five times? All they keep is rolling out. And there are politicians, okay, that are working for L and M, that violates people's rights, and you're a person who says that you want to be in politics, where they sit and they watch, they watch when people go to court. I, the last time I was able to come to speak was April of last year, is because they kept me booked and busy at the courthouses, because none of the judges know anything about the PAC-RAD conversions, because they don't know. The premise, all right, and it's ironclad, there's many things that Brian Honan, and I want to say one thing, with Brian Honan, all right, he saved my life. And the only reason why I'm going to say he saved my life is because I'm stressed out. When I say I'm stressed out to the point, I can't go to no one, the police department, is because they have me slated as if I'm crazy. I'm not crazy. The reason why they want to label me as I'm crazy is because, one, I keep telling them, because we live in public housing, or whatever it is, doesn't mean that we're dumb. I'm not dumb, and it's because they feel that I am, I'm a threat. Like I stated, the premise of the tenants signing the lease was for able to get the funding. They got it, they still not doing anything. They didn't change the pipes. Right now, I brought proof of everything that they're doing, they're keeping things very secret, very quietly. At the end of the day, there is no way that a person has to go putting rises where it's not supposed to be. Things, I brought proof, like, I'm done. When I say Brian Honan saved my life, when I say he saved my life, is because they stressed me out so much that I called at 3 o'clock in the morning, I said, if he didn't answer, that I didn't know what I was going to do, but you know what? But he answered. So at the end of the day, like I said, my great nephew is the one who keep giving me courage, a seven-year-old. They keep giving me courage for me to keep going, is because, you know why? They are our future. People are afraid to speak out is because they are being harassed, shootings, all that. They put cameras, it's not working. Why? Why? It makes no sense. They took NYCHA cameras out. Why? NYPD.
All right, you, you got 30 seconds to wrap it up, Eve.
No. And the premise, for six to eight weeks now, okay? The front door in my lobby has been broke since a week after Christmas. It's still broke now, and the reason being that it's not fixed is because, right? They didn't get insurance warranty because it's vandalism. Does that make sense? They said this in a meeting, Mr. Butler and Ms., it makes no sense. So I was saying, and there was a shooting, an attempted, a lot of things, they just want to keep everything secret. Like the young person said, this young lady, I can't remember if she said, right, but at the end of the day, the Tenant Association President, there are tenants just like us, they're supposed to keep us informed, they don't keep us informed. Had it not be for me to go to other meetings, and I'm saying, going across the tri-state for me to be able to know about certain things here, I would not know about it. I'm tired. At the end of the day, they can evict me, they can evict me, but they still going to have to explain as to the reason why I am being evicted and people, okay? A lot of people don't like Trump, but he's going to, he's bringing out the fraud, and it's right. And I'm a Democrat.
All right, Eve, we got to wrap this up. Thank you for your testimony. Now, we're going to.
Proof, and I'm going to submit it.
Thank you. We have Teresa Scott, who's all, who's part of the, also part of the, this particular panel, and she's on Zoom.
Peace and blessing, everyone.
Thank you.
This, what's happening here is very traumatic to know what people are experiencing. I'm Teresa Scott, I'm one of the leaders of Safe Section 9, and thank you all for expressing your pain and your hurt, and the disrespect that's happening with us here at NYCHA. I've been living in, I love public housing because public housing saved my life, and if I hadn't been in public housing, I might not be here. By me being part of Safe, by me being part of Safe Section 9 and other advocate, advocate for other people, I've been able to help other people that are disabled also. What they saying is true, the people are being harassed. I don't, I, my building hasn't been taken over by NYCHA, but there are members who spoke here that I, I know of, like, they are being, NYCHA has been a norm with real estate deals and forgotten the promise of public housing, and it seems the only thing that they seem to be want is just to privatize everything. There has, there has been a lot of privacy, like, you know, sneaky things, and people are not aware of what's going on, did not explain. We work with tenants that are, they are telling them to sign, sign paperwork that they don't even understand what they're signing, so there's, there is no transparency as far as RadPAC. I want to thank everyone. Thank you for even allowing us to speak. This is the first time in history that I've ever been in a hearing where the tenants were able to speak first. Thank you so much for that. The other problem, the other solution is that HUD needs to be part of these meetings, because HUD is the one who creates what goes and what doesn't happen in New York. Tenants have been bullied, as they said. There has not been no transparency. The lack of improvement, as a young lady said, she's living in Rad, and she's still being harassed, she's still not getting treatment. And we, and Human Rights did a stirring already to let us know what was going on, and no one else, as Mr. Markey said, there has not been no other person who's done an investigation. I'm asking that the public advocate, y'all think Rad is good for us, but Rad is not good for us. Rad removes our homes from public housing, and we no longer have public housing, so that means that they're trying to get rid of our house. I would like to know, can I come stay with one of y'all if that happens to me? Because where else my post is? I don't, I, I am a disabled person, and I have lived here, and my neighbors helped take care of me. I don't have family members that come and see about me like my neighbors do, so if I'm put in the street, I have a wheelchair, I'm going to be out in the street in a wheelchair. What I would like for y'all to do is I would like for y'all to adopt a resolution called 0730-205, and conduct a thorough study on the RadPAC program to assess the effects of conversion on residents and the programs and PACs on tenant rights, security, and well-being. I'm also asking that the City Council do immediate, to immediately issue a moratorium on NYCHA-RADPAC conversions, pending the completions of the road both impact studies, inclusive for all our properties currently being served by project section, project-based Section 8. We ask that the Council host a joint hearings with Albany counterparts on RadPAC. During this hearing, NYCHA and HUD's offers of public and Indian housing should be asked. We need y'all to provide insight for the success of the program nationally. Success should be defined on improving the quality of life for previous Section 9 tenant living, I'm sorry, improving, improved quality for the life of previous Section 9 tenants living in a Pacific property. An explanation of the lifetime for Rad conversions need to be.
You have a minute to wrap it up.
Okay, so, and then I want to expand on how we oppose, expand on how opposition is weighed in the larger application for Section 9 to RadPAC to Section 18. And what I want to say is that it's sad that we have to come here and cry about the abuse and harassment, and how can, y'all, y'all are giving NYCHA a right to steal our homes, because we, we, a lot of people don't even know what RadPAC mean, don't even know, they don't even know that Section 9 is the only affordable housing, only affordable low-income housing, and it's based on your income, not based on your zip code, because I live in, I live in a zip code where there are million-dollar houses, and a lot of times, they're not basing the income when they, when they coming, or the creations that they coming up out here and where we live at. And so, we need you to save our home. Our homes are, are part of us. If you, if you move some people out of their homes, they die instantly. Are you willing to have people's deaths on your hands because you did not take the time to investigate and make Rad, make NYCHA, make how, be accountable for us having a place to live that is called our home? I am a very intelligent black woman. I just wrote a book called Thriving Elders, but if I have to worry about where I'm going to live at, how can I be a thriving elder, thriving in this society if you don't protect me? And y'all have not protected us.
Thank you.
I'm so thankful that you let us speak today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, for your testimony. Now, we're going to move to the admin. Thank you. Oh, Councilmember Mealy, hold on a minute. Did you have any, you had any questions? Okay, we'll, we'll wait to the regular session of questions, of testimonies. Thank you to the pre-panel. Thank you for your advocacy. We'll get you that answer, just wait until, thank you. We want to move on to administration. Thank you, Eve. As the admins takes their seat, we've been joined by Everett Saloni, who's the EVP for Strategy and Innovation of NYCHA, Jonathan Goria, the EVP of Real Estate and NYCHA, Laura Bellrose, the Chief Landlord and Tenant Division of NYCHA, and we've also been joined by Brian Honan, the EV Intergovernmental Affairs for NYCHA.
Good morning. If you could all raise your right hand, please. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
You may begin with your opening statement.
Chair Banks, members of the Committee on Public Housing, residents, and members of the public, good morning. My name is Arvin Sahony, Executive Vice President for Strategy and Innovation at the New York City Housing Authority. Pleased to be joined by Jonathan Gavia, Executive Vice President for Real Estate Development, Laura Bellrose, Chief of the Landlord-Tentant Division, Brian Honan, EVP of Intergovernmental Affairs, and other members of the Authority's leadership team. In 2019, the Authority signed a regulatory agreement with the City, HUD, and the U.S. Attorney's Office for the Southern District of New York. The agreement was an acknowledgement of the agency's poor performance and mistakes, including a systemic lack of transparency. Over the past six years, we have executed on several reforms to open the doors to the agency. As stated in our transformation plan, the Authority is wholeheartedly committed to transparency and accountability. We believe that data about our performance and other matters helps our partners better understand our work while supporting our efforts to transform the Authority and better serve residents. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss how we are ensuring and expanding that transparency. Our website is the primary repository of our publicly available data and information. Service outages, individual work orders, and lead paint testing progress can all be tracked. Reports are available with extension information about capital needs at our properties and progress with meeting various mandates of the HUD agreement. The action plans we developed to meet different HUD agreement pillar areas are also available. Metrics on wide-ranging elements of operations, from the productivity of maintenance workers and skilled trade staff, to the number of vacant apartments and rent collection rates are all updated monthly. Dashboards on PACT and our capital projects, including sustainability and Sandy work, are also available. The Housing Authority also maintains data in the city's open data portal and voluntarily participates in checkbook NYC. Board meetings can be viewed live, in person, and on YouTube, where we also keep videos and transcript of all prior meetings. Our Community Engagement and Partnerships map enables residents to access workforce programs and other vital services and resources available from our partners. We also include background information on the Authority's scope, developments, and population, along with. along with detailed information reports about our long-term plans, policies, contracts, spending and resident hiring. We even catalog public artwork at the Housing Authority developments, which include a Marion Greenwood mural at Red Hook East and Richmond Barthay sculptures at Kingsborough and Johnson. We've also used the My NYCHA app to connect residents with a wealth of personalized information at their fingertips. In the app, residents can create new work orders, check the status of existing tickets and find information on service outages. Our self-service portal enables public housing residents to complete their annual recertifications, request transfers and more. Section eight participants and landlords can also access a range of functions through their respective portals. We also believe that transparency and resident engagement are fundamental to the success of our PAC program, which has improved the physical conditions and quality of life for thousands of residents. Residents are not only involved in every step of the PAC planning process, but also help lead the selection of development teams. They also prioritize investments and work closely with our PAC partners after conversion. During the planning process, we coordinate with resident leaders to share information, keep residents informed and answer any questions about the process. With these leaders, we host regular meetings and conduct tabling, office hours, open houses, info sessions and workshops. A PAC resource team also supports resident leaders by connecting them to trusted third-party advisors. And free legal assistance is available through a PAC hotline operated by the Legal Aid Society. Resident committees have now selected 21 partner teams. This includes developers, general contractors, property managers and social service providers who will elevate our residents' quality of life and address community priorities. In the past four years, resident leaders across 76 developments have selected PAC partner teams to provide their communities with tailored investments through the program. Together, our partners and residents are creating detailed community plans to capture their decision-making during the pre-development process. As mentioned, the PAC dashboard provides unprecedented level of insight into the PAC program. It is easily accessible from our website, tracks and displays performance metrics on maintenance and repairs, tenancy, construction and resident hiring. Since we know it's important to the committee, I also want to provide some additional information and context on evictions at PAC sites. The PAC program, in accordance with federal rules and regulations, provides strong anti-displacement protections for residents. At the time of conversion to project-based section eight, all authorized residents are offered a new lease, regardless of whether they owe back rent. We also require our PAC partners to work with onsite social service coordinators to conduct proactive outreach to help connect families with resources, which can include access to public benefits or setting up payment installment plans. PAC partners must take every effort to avoid bringing a lease issue to housing court. And the Housing Authority closely monitors those outreach efforts. Eviction is always a measure of last resort after all their methods to resolve tenant issues have been exhausted. Section eight lease agreements under PAC automatically renew every year and cannot be terminated except for a good cause, which includes criminal activity and non-payment. Residents can continue to add people to their household and permanent members will continue to have succession rights. We believe in the power of affordable housing to stabilize and support communities and provide a pathway to opportunity. And our goal at the Housing Authority is to keep residents housed. As a result, eviction rates are very low across the Housing Authority sites, including PAC developments, lower than the citywide rate. Transparency and accountability are core values that drive our work. Providing information to the public about our progress and our ongoing challenges are vital to our efforts to better serve residents. Transparency is also essential for effective collaboration with our partners, including members of the council. We look forward to our continuing partnership with you and are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we'll now go into questions. All right, so again, thank you, guys. Thank you for your testimony. Uh, we're gonna begin with the questions surrounding transparency around housing conditions and maintenance. And we're gonna start with repairs and capital improvements. Why does NYCHA require section eight participants to request a reasonable accommodation in order to submit their annual ratification, oh, sorry, recertification by mail instead of on self-service portal? On the self-service portal?
So, so councilmember, we, um, in order to, uh, process recertifications, you can do this, um, online. You can do it at the self, at the kiosk that's at the management office. Housing assistants can assist you in order to do that. We do prefer that, that's the method. You have, uh, it's immediately, uh, received. You also get a receipt. But if you do need, if you do need a paper copy.
Excuse me, hold on a minute, Brian.
Yes.
There, there will be order, guys. Everybody will have the opportunity to give testimony if you choose to, but outbursts in the audience will not be accepted. You may proceed. Thank you.
So that is a preferred method to do it. It, it works, you know, uh, but if that's not possible for you, we will provide a paper copy, but we would like to see a reason why.
Okay. The residents have voiced concerns about the quality of repairs, repair work by contractors. In November 2024, uh, it was reported by the city com control that 30% of the residents rated the work performed by contractors as poor. And less than half rated the work performed as good or better. How does NYCHA obtain feedback from the residents about work performed by the contractors?
Thanks, Councilmember, for that question. I'll say a couple of things to that. One, that is certainly the case. We've heard that consistently for years. Back in 2019, 2020, when I first started here, we did a lot of engagement on our transformation plan, what residents were most concerned about. This came up basically in every single session we had. Um, in the last year or so, we've actually implemented new policies to do different kind of oversight for vendor work. So we have a completely new role at the neighborhood level. So neighborhoods, we have 29 of them in the city, sort of local governance. A new contract manager has actually now been installed to oversee all of those contracts locally. That means someone who's gonna go out and inspect work to make sure we're not being fleeced by contractors to have sort of obviously avoid the issues we had last February. So that's a completely new process that's come in place in the last 12 months to really enforce the fact that we do have this issue with vendors. So that is sort of on the management side of things. We've changed that. There are structural issues too with vendors. We're often forced to take the lowest responsive bidder to contracts, which can, in some cases, be not the best for them to do that work. We're not sort of, we don't have a ton of wiggle room on that side, but on the management side, we have made a lot of changes in the last year to try and improve that number.
A straight question. How is NYCHA generally verifying and assessing the contractor's work? I think it's a straightforward question.
Sure. So a couple of things on this. So given the volume of in-unit contractor work, um, we're not doing 100% checks on all of that. We're doing now quality assurance checks on a certain percentage of those. So if you have a contractor doing, let's say, 20 apartments in one development on floor tiles, we'll have our neighborhood contract manager go check three of them to make sure the work has been done. That's not going to catch every single instance of a vendor performing poorly, but it's, it's gonna catch much more than we have been in the last sort of five, six years.
Obviously, that's not enough. Yeah. Um, what is, what is the timeframe to, uh, establish an apparatus or a system where, uh, we can accurately track or assess the work that's being done by the contractors?
Yeah, we're happy to engage in that question with you, councilmember, and with any other members of the committee too. So we've had this process in place for the last 12 months. We're happy to engage in sort of a more aggressive effort on this if you think there's, there's additional work to do. Um, but we're always trying to continuously improve these efforts. We know this has been a huge pain point for residents for a long time. We've made the first step on it, but it's really not the last step on this either.
The, that, as of November 20, uh, the November 2024 report recommended that NYCHA provide residents an opportunity to rate the vendors and view other residents' reviews. Does NYCHA plan to implement that recommendation?
There's no immediate plan. That has been under consideration for a while since that came up, but it's not been, it's not sort of imminent right now.
Why is it taking so long?
Well, I think we have to sort of put it into our existing standard procedures and process. We're not against that suggestion necessarily, but it's just.
So what's, what's the holdup?
It's, it's sort of under consideration. I'm not saying there's a.
But why is that not, why is that not a priority?
Well, I think that, I think that it is. I think the, the response to the.
Because we're not seeing a process put in place.
Sure.
To hear from the tenants as to the service that they're getting or the lack thereof service they're getting.
I appreciate that, councilmember. So, so one thing I'll say to this.
I don't want you to appreciate it. We, we, we.
We got it.
We want to see something put in place.
Given the, the new procedure after February of 24 with the bribery issues, we didn't want to load too many things at once. Again, we're happy to prioritize this as the next step. Um, but again, we're happy to take that feedback and prioritize this.
So then, uh, let me ask you a more pointed question. Um, by what date, uh, do you plan to commit implementing the recommendation? Give us a date.
I can't give you a date today because it's not my team that would do it, but I, we're happy to give you a date.
Well, if you can get that date back to us by tomorrow or hopefully by the end of this week, we greatly appreciate it.
Sure.
Because, uh, it seems like we have to force you to prioritize this concern and that shouldn't be.
Sure. And one thing I will note, I'm talking about the operation side of thing. I know we've got some capital programs that are different on this that I also want to have our capital team just mention quickly.
Did you want to say something?
Yes.
Um, sorry, before you begin, can I just, uh, give you the oath first? Um, if you could raise your right hand, please. Uh, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
Yes, I do.
And if you could state your name and title for the record too, please.
My name is Sean Mivani. I'm Chief Assistant Capital Management Officer at NYCHA. Uh, I just wanted to supplement, um, the answer that my colleague has provided. I think the report that you referred to, um, Chair Banks, looked at both contractors that are doing smaller scale repairs, uh, as Arvin mentioned, in apartment work, tiles, painting, things like that, as well as large capital contractors. So on both of your questions, for any type of larger capital contracts, we have, um, daily monitoring of quality of work, um, photos, things like that, that are done on these contracts through construction management teams that are out there at the site. Um, we review quality throughout the project. We also do independent quality inspections. We do about 4,000 of those a year across all of our projects. And at the end of the projects, we go through a quality punchless process where we look through the work. Many of those can involve the resident leader joining that walkthrough to assess quality and then to sign off what additional quality, uh, work needs to be done to finalize the project. On the second part of your question, we're actually currently working with the Citywide Council of Tenant Leader Presidents to design a survey or a set of surveys that would be done during capital projects to get feedback from the resident leadership of that property, how they feel about the engagement, um, the vendor work, uh, our team's engagement with them and coordination, et cetera, and hoping to roll that out, uh, during the second quarter of this year after we receive the input from the C-COP and other stakeholders on that. So on that part of the portfolio, where we're spending a large amount of our funding to make renovations to the property, we are moving forward with, um, those recommendations. And in fact, these efforts have been in play for some time.
So your testimony today is that residents are informed about NYCHA's process for selecting contractors?
Uh, sorry, could you repeat that?
I said your testimony today is that residents from NYCHA are informed about us when they are selecting of contractors.
Yeah, so for the area that I oversee, which again is the capital projects, section nine work, uh, that's grant funded, yes, after we work through the design with resident input, we then update them as we go through the procurement process and the selection of the contractor as well.
Okay, we've heard that, um, when some developments are converted to PAC, uh, the new property manager does not have a functioning work order or services request system is not in place. This leaves residents with a way, uh, to, uh, document the need for repairs or track maintenance work, uh, on their units. How does NYCHA ensure that the PAC partners provide the same or greater level of transparency about repairs to PAC residents?
Hi, if you could raise your right hand as well, please. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? And could, if you could state your name and title for the record.
Julian Connell, Managing Director of Strategic Operations in the Real Estate Development Department. Great, so I think the question was about the work order systems that.
Let me reread it again for you.
Thanks.
You can answer it correctly. Uh, we've heard that when some developments are converted to PAC, the new property manager does not have a functioning work order or service request system in place. This leaves residents without a way to document the need for repairs or track maintenance work on their repairs. How does NYCHA ensure that PAC partners provide the same or greater level of transparency about repairs to PAC residents?
Sure. So each of the PAC partners does have, um, an individual work order system specifically for their sites. And NYCHA collects information on a monthly basis about those work orders, um, from all of our different PAC partners. Additionally, residents have a couple of different ways that they can submit repair requests to our PAC partners. They're able to go into the management office, um, directly and speak to an assistant there. They're able to phone in, um, a repair complaint. They're able to send an email. So there are a number of different ways that.
Are you aware of Linden Houses? Are you, are you familiar with Linden Houses?
I'm familiar with Linden Houses, yes.
Are you familiar or aware that the management company, uh, I think over the last, maybe in the last month or two, uh, developed a ticket, a ticket, uh, repair type service or where a tenant can call in and get a confirmation number? Are you aware of that?
So they definitely track tickets on a work order number basis. We're absolutely aware of that, yes.
So, no, no, are you aware that they just implemented a system? I think within the last two months or so. It was brought to their attention that, uh, residents would call in and they weren't given any type of confirmation number or work order number. Are you aware that they just recently, I think within the last month or two, when it was brought to their attention at a TA meeting, uh, that they just recently put in a system? And they've had the development, uh, for the last three and a half years, going on probably four years.
Right, so they've always been able to track the work orders at the address and the unit level. Um, it sounds like they've recently issued a process where they can communicate that number to residents and that's, that's a positive.
Do you think that's important when it comes to tracking repairs? That the tenant get a confirmation number or work order number?
I think the, um, property managers are able to track the work orders, um, regardless of whether a work order number is distributed because they're able to track it to the particular unit.
Okay, how does NYCHA handle and record the records of work orders from a development once it's converted to PAC?
So we receive information on a monthly basis from all of our PAC partners about, um, various work orders. And the information about those work orders is ultimately published on our dashboard that's available on our website.
Uh, does NYCHA perform any follow-up with the new property manager to verify whether they have all the work orders or service request information for a newly converted development? So in the transition, let me break this question down for you. In the transition, what information is transferred over? Is it an orderly transition when a development is converted?
Yes, so, uh, when the property transitions from NYCHA to PAC, the work orders that were open under NYCHA are transferred over to the PAC partner? If that's what you're referring, referring to, to close out.
Well, let me just go a little further. What about documents? Because we've seen in situations where documents during the conversion are not transferred, transferred over to the, uh, the, the new management company.
So all of the relevant documents that the property manager will need in order to operate the site are transferred over at the time of conversion?
You, you will hear testimony, uh, down the line where residents have said that, uh, there were documents that, or the management company basically said that there were documents that weren't transferred over. So I want to get into, uh, whether or not, uh, there is an orderly transition of documents, because we're seeing residents being dragged into court because it's like a document chase. Well, we don't have the document, NYCHA has the document. It's, it's back and forth. And that, that has been a very contentious issue because residents, again, are being dragged into court. And obviously, when there's no clarity on the composition of household and, uh, these controversies arise. And we haven't seen NYCHA engage in these matters at all. So I want to know again, uh, what is being done to track this? What is NYCHA's engagement?
So specifically originally asked about work orders, for example. So information about work orders that were open under NYCHA are transferred over to PAC partners. And then six months after conversion, the PAC partners are required to submit a certification to NITIA regarding the closeout of those work orders to ensure that the open work order tickets were addressed.
So you're tracking each work order, you're saying?
So we're tracking that each of the work orders have been closed out, yes.
So every work order that comes through, you're tracking it?
So every new work order that's created, we are collecting itemized information about. And the work orders that were transferred after conversion, we get a certification from the partners confirming the closeout.
And is your testimony that every work order that was established under NITIA up until the conversion was transferred over to the new management company?
That's right.
Okay. I beg to disagree. But that's your testimony. Does NITIA perform any follow-up with the new property manager to verify whether they have all the work orders or service request information? Did that already. Let's go to the next question. In 2024, NITIA launched a new version of its capital projects and needs tracker, which allows residents to see bi-weekly updates on building renovations. Has NITIA received feedback from residents about the usefulness of this tracker?
Thank you for the question, Chair Banks. So this tracker is a version two of the tracker. We had released an earlier one about a year and a half before that. In the development of both trackers, we did seek input from residents and from resident leaders. In particular, when the first tracker was up, we put up a public survey so that anybody who was using that tracker could immediately provide feedback on what they wanted to see improved in that tracker. And on the basis of that feedback we got from residents as well as other public folks and through focus groups where we met with resident leaders to ask them for their feedback and their needs, we designed that second tracker and then launched it. So there are a number of resident committees that NITIA also works with, the Resident Roundtable, the CAC, where we have regular engagement with different groups of residents to input on NITIA initiatives. We took the tracker designs to those groups and sought resident feedback there and also incorporated that in what we finally built out.
Thank you. When it comes to complaints and code violations, by what methods can residents file complaints or service requests with NITIA? And what is the average, like, wait time to connect with NITIA? Staff member, when a resident calls the customer contact center? And how does NITIA track the performance of its customer contact center? And does NITIA also track the number of times or calls that get disconnected? How does that look?
Thanks, Chair. So a couple of things on this. Residents can create new tickets through, yes, calling the contact center. If they have the MyNITIA app on their phone, they can use that as well. They can actually also create it sometimes in the management office with the receptionist there if they need to. Most new tickets, though, are created through the contact center and the MyNITIA app. The contact center last year, so in calendar 24, had sort of funding and staff cuts in January of that year. We saw fairly immediate increases in wait times. So what used to be a two, three-minute wait for a call was all of a sudden taking some people 30, 40 minutes. We restored some of those cuts in July of '24, adding staff back, especially temporary floating staff. It is still not back to where it was prior to '23. So we still have long wait times. We do track that and we do report on that. But we're happy also to discuss more specifically what we're doing there, too.
Okay, thank you. Can residents of PAC developments call the customer contact center to report issues or request repairs?
So for repair issues, the resident should go to the management office. They also could go to 311 in PAC developments. If they have Section 8 issues, the issues with their subsidy, they can call the CCC. And there is a whole unit there that deals with Section 8 issues.
Okay. When there's a conversion that is taking place, are residents informed of this prior to the conversion?
It is something that often comes up because one of the biggest questions during conversion is, what is the difference between the two programs?
Correct.
So people ask, you know, do I still call the contact center? Will I still have the same management? Will I, you know, and people want to know the difference. So this is one of the differences in the two programs. You will not be calling the call center, which I know a lot of people complain about. You'll now have the ability to call a new system, whatever the system that particular management company has. And in addition, you could also call 311.
A local law 127 during the 2021 allows NITIA residents to file housing complaints by calling 311. Are you aware of how NITIA-related calls are logged with 311 as far as the service request system? And are you aware of what residents have experienced when they've called 311 with complaints?
I don't, I'm not aware what they experience because that's a question for Do-It, you know, and they manage it. I will say that, yes, they do take those calls and they do refer them to us. And so we create work orders, you know, for that and follow up, you know, the same as if they came in through a call center.
All right. How many customer contact centers, walk-in centers, does NITIA currently operate?
Two. We have two. We have one in Atlantic Avenue and one in Water Street in the Bronx.
All right. Does NITIA turn away residents who do not have a prior appointment?
It is, since COVID, we preferred method is for appointments. And if the day is booked, we will turn residents away if everybody else has an appointment, yes.
Is there a website or any form of communication that warns residents of this limitation?
I'm not aware of it.
You're not aware?
I'm not aware, no.
Can you commit to changing the name or posting certifications of residents that can have travel and issues? Go back and get my question together. Can you commit to changing the name or posting a certification so that residents can avoid traveling to a center just to be turned away?
I can commit to raising it. It is something that I've heard, not only from you, council member, but from other advocates, and I will speak to leadership about it.
Okay. Does NITIA share information publicly or wish with its residents about the code violations issued by the Department of Housing and Preservation? Is that public?
So we are working literally weekly with the HBD to come up with a way that they'll be able to show on their site and we'll be able to show on our site the number of open code violations. And we expect to have that done fairly shortly. But yes, it will be...
So your testimony is that they don't provide that information to the residents when there's a code violation?
Not currently, but we will.
Okay. In 2022, the state passed a law requiring the New York City Department of Housing and Preservation to post NITIA's housing code violations online. That means you're not in compliance. It appears that HBD has not yet complied and leading some tenants to file lawsuits against HBD.
I can't speak to HBD, but I will say that there was a funding issue, you know, here. The money has been found. And I will say, we literally, as I stated, you know, just a few minutes ago, we literally meet weekly in order to get this up and running. It is a priority for both agencies, and we will see it soon.
Well, has NITIA heard the concerns from residents about this issue? And has NITIA taken any steps to assist HBD and making this information public?
We have a standing meeting with HBD, and we're happy to give them all the information that we have. So this way, it could be, you know, up on both sites and easily understood. As to whether we've heard complaints, I personally have not heard complaints from residents. I have heard from advocates, though.
Well, while NITIA is not subject to any obligations under the state law, has NITIA considered publishing its code violations on its own accord to provide greater transparency to the residents?
We, the code violations that we get are from HBD. And they will, you know, we will work with them in order to make sure that everything we have is current and up to date.
The question is, will you publicize it to the tenants, to the residents?
It will be, it will be up for tenants and residents, both on their side and our side.
What's the timeframe to...?
I don't have a timeframe. And believe me, you will know before, you know, we will let this committee know before it's out. And we will make sure that it's heavily publicized once it is out. But we do expect it in the next few months.
We'll be waiting.
Okay.
When it comes to financial transparency, we're aware that there's a degree of uncertainty about the status of federal funding for public housing across the country. Has NITIA taken steps to prepare for potential decreases or pauses in federal funding? And what information has NITIA provided to the residents about the reality and any potential impacts on a Section 9 and Section 8 housing?
We are watching what's going on in Washington literally daily. And we are in unprecedented times right now. I will say that, from what, you know, from what we're hearing. Many of our colleagues at HUD, who have been there for decades, who have been great assets to NITIA and to public housing publicly, have now left the agency. But right now, we do not, you know, until the president's budget comes out, which is in a few, probably a few days, maybe the next few weeks, we won't have a good idea. I mean, from what I'm hearing is that, you know, public housing should expect very deep cuts. Section 8 probably a bit more stable. But we will have to make real decisions. And we will commit to both residents and also to the council and other elected officials that we will be in close contact to let you know, you know, our plans.
The governor recently released a 2026 executive budget proposal, which includes about $25 million for rehabilitation of vacant NITIA units over five years. How many vacant units could NITIA rehabilitate for occupancy within the proposed 20 million?
So the $25 million, which was part of the City of Yess funding?
Hold on a minute, Brian. Can we maintain order? Everybody will have the opportunity to give testimony. And that will be opportunity to speak. So please, while the admin is giving their testimony, we want to make sure we hear clear from them, all right? Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you. So the $25 million that is in the state budget that is part of the City of Yess funding will contribute to bringing about, in between, somewhere between 500 and 600 apartments back online?
You said 500, 600 apartments?
Yeah, between 500 and 600, correct.
And what's the timeframe from starting these repairs?
So state money is not unlike city money. It doesn't automatically go into our account. We will have to negotiate with the state on something is called a GDA, a Grants Disbursement Agreement. And then we spend the money and they reimburse us. So a lot has to, a lot, you know, plays on how quickly we can get that done. I will say, to the governor's credit, her team has been very helpful in approving GDAs quickly compared to the last administration. So we expect a smooth transition, but we'll have to see. We've never negotiated a GDA like this one before.
So you're saying that the 500 to 600 units will be rehabilitated within another year or so?
Again, all depending on how the GDA is agreed upon and other factors. But the faster that's agreed upon, the faster we could start, you know, with the plan to do that work.
Okay. I'm going to give another round of questions, and then I'm going to hand it over to Councilman Avila. When it comes to financial transparency... Hold on a minute. When it comes to transparency around the PAC selection for conversion, since 2023, five NITIA developments have voted on whether to remain Section 9 public housing, move to the PAC program, or join Public Housing Preservation Trusts. How does NITIA select which development will have the opportunity to vote?
Sure, so the voting came about through legislation that was passed by the state of New York in 2022. We looked, there were many tenant associations that had very strong opinions on the trust legislation in that year. Many of them who were in favor of it and really wanted it, you know, did advocate in Albany to make sure that, to make sure that the legislation passed. We did take, you know, the desire for a vote in their development into account. And that was one of the, you know, one of the selection, one of the criteria. We also looked at conditions of developments. It's safe to say that almost any development that you see in New York City can definitely use an influx of capital in order to bring about repairs. So we looked at conditions. We looked at, you know, whether there was support for an election. We also looked at, you know, can we close one of these deals once, you know, once we're able to hold a vote successfully? So all those things were taken into account.
When it comes to a RAD development being selected, a development being selected for the RAD program, what engagement is done? And is there a formal voting process for the residents?
So I'm going to ask my colleague, Simon Kowitsky, from Portfolio Planning within the Real Estate Group to talk about the extensive engagement that we do. But we typically work with residents for almost a year before we put out a request for expressions of interest and get into the actual conversion. But there's significant engagement. And we think about some of the factors that Brian had mentioned.
We would like to, I hear extensive engagement, but that to me, you know, we don't see that. But maybe you can walk us step by step.
I've asked Simon to come up because it's evolved over the last several years.
Thank you.
And before you start, if you could raise your right hand for me, please. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
Yes.
And if you could state your name and title, please.
My name is Simon Kowitsky. I'm the Vice President for Portfolio Planning in the Real Estate Department at NITIA. So, good morning, council member. Thanks for your question. To give a little bit more detail, the way that we identify developments for the PAC program is pretty straightforward. Where are developments that have the highest level of physical distress that need critical investments? Which developments have serious operational challenges that are difficult for NITIA to manage? These are developments that are located across many different buildings in a neighborhood where there's no centralized management office, for example. And there are also developments which we have already brought through the program, which for various reasons have not been receiving any level of federal support. So those different criteria have been really important for us as we identify developments for the PAC program. When we have a development that we think could benefit from these investments, we reach out to the resident leadership as the first point of contact to describe the benefits that the program can bring, share information about how this works, what the process would look like. And then from there, talk to them about how we would engage with their community and their residents about moving that process forward. And I can get into, you know, as much detail as you like about what that looks like.
So you're saying that the tenant association is working hand in hand with you when you're doing these community engagements?
Resident leaders are a really critical stakeholder for us. And absolutely, before we launch any process at a development, we engage with the resident leadership before bringing it to the wider community.
So would you agree that a vote would be, should be needed or to allow the residents to weigh in when these conversions are taking place?
There is no regulatory or statutory requirement for NITIA to hold a vote.
I'm not talking about what the requirement is. I'm asking you again, would you agree that residents should have the right to determine how their communities look?
I absolutely agree that residents should inform and help us determine the design and the investments that are coming as part of these initiatives. It is NITIA's responsibility to maintain habitable communities and make sure that we can preserve our housing stock to serve residents into the future.
Is this after you select them?
After we select a development for the PAC program?
Yeah, after you select a development. Because after you select a development, then you move, you're moving forward with engagement meetings. You're having these conversations. But is there ever a chance for the residents, for you to educate them on exactly how this conversion looks, the benefits, the pros and cons? And then there's a way for them to then weigh in and say, well, we want it, we don't want it?
Yeah, sure. So I can walk through the process for a typical PAC project. As I mentioned, we first want to inform residents about the PAC program. Starts with the resident leaders and then widens the circle to the community at large. What is PAC? There's a lot of misinformation out there about the program and how it works. What kinds of protections are going to be in place for residents? What their rent would look like under the PAC program? We also conduct different kinds of outreach activities to help shape the designs and the investments that are actually coming. Residents today play a central role in helping to make key decisions. So they help us to select who those partner teams are. That includes the developers, the contractors, the property managers, and the social services. And then, once a PAC partner team is onboarded, they work with us and the resident leadership to facilitate a process to really inform what those investments are going to look like. We also, at the end of that pre-development phase, before the renovations actually begin, we publish a community plan that codifies and documents all of the investments, physical, programmatic, so what kinds of operational enhancements, what kinds of security and social services are going to be provided, so all residents across the community can be aware and informed of what investments are coming.
I just want to back up a little when you say that there's misinformation put out. Can you dive in a little too, into what type of misinformation you say is put out about the RAD PAC program? Because I, you know, it's, we have multiple developments that have already been converted. So there's a report card already that exists. And any misinformation per se would be coming from the residents who are not in support or have had, can talk about their experience under conversion. So can you give us some of the misinformation that you say is out there?
Absolutely. So there is a lot of misinformation out there about the rights and protections that are afforded to residents under the PAC program. I am out in the community every week, talking to residents who are, we're engaging with as part of the PAC program and other initiatives. And I'm always hearing people concerned about the fact that they would not qualify for section eight and therefore would not stand to benefit from the program. So that is a falsehood because any authorized tenant at a development that transitions to project based section eight through the PAC program automatically qualifies per federal regulations. I hear concerns that their rent would go up, which again, is also a falsehood because rent is calculated in the same way that it is under the public housing program.
Let me, let me interrupt you on that one, so we can go step by step. The, there's been reports that residents have to fill out multiple certifications. Have you heard about that?
Are you referring to income certifications?
Income certifications.
So certain developments, and I believe it's only two developments in our portfolio, speaking to the PAC portfolio specifically, that use different sources of funding to finance the renovations. Because of the nature of those transactions and the mixing of those sources, there are different levels of income certification that are, is required. But for all of our other projects, including the ones that are currently going through the pipeline and the planning stages, there's only one annual income certification that is required. In addition, any resident can file an interim, same as under the public housing program, if they have a change in income and want to adjust their rent.
Well, in a RAD PAC converted development, there's been reports of residents having had, filled out or have to fill out multiple recertifications during.
That's correct, at two developments.
At two developments, okay.
That have already converted, correct.
No, I'm talking about RAD convert developments, not PAC developments. Well, PAC.
PAC is the New York City implementation of the RAD program.
Right.
So there are two developments that I'm aware of under the PAC portfolio where that multiple step income verification is required.
What about under the RAD portfolio?
The RAD and the PAC portfolio are one and the same.
No, no, no. The, there have been multiple developments that have been converted under RAD PAC. Am I correct?
There are over 160.
Right. So under those particular developments that I'm talking about, particularly Linden Houses, there's been reports that residents had to fill out multiple certifications.
I, if there are.
And that's like, say if they, they did overtime during that month, they would be, management would reach out to them and inform them that they would have to fill out another certification. So you have this seesaw.
So there should not be any circumstance where a property manager is asking somebody to file an interim recertification because of a change in income. But if you want to provide us with any specific circumstances, we can look into that because that, again, that's not a factor or a facet of the program.
All right. Given that the RAD program does not have a resident voting requirement, NITRA has previously stated it may transition developments to PAC on its own initiative, even absent of a resident vote. Under what circumstance will NITRA initiate a PAC conversion without a vote?
Well, again, Simon walked through the engagement process that we've been following over the last few years. Again, we have been in various hearings in the past where we have acknowledged that some of the early PAC conversions, we didn't have the same level of engagement. Over the last three or four years, we do this robust engagement before we even contemplate a conversion, and Simon outlined that. So what we want to do when we're doing that engagement process is see that there's support from the tenant leadership as well as the broader community.
Okay. What criteria does NITRA consider in making, when making a decision of such? And are those criterias, is it made public?
Yes. And again, Simon mentioned earlier, it's looking at the, the physical conditions of each of the buildings.
Is it made public?
Yes, we disclose this all the time, absolutely.
Once a NITRA development has been selected for PAC transition, what resource, if any, does residents have to pause or stop the transition?
I mean, once we've made the decision collectively with our residents to move forward, we will move forward. We don't have the luxury of.
Collectively with the residents, the decision is made?
Yes.
How does that process look?
Well, we described it earlier, right?
I want you to explain it.
Like to walk through the process again?
How's that process look?
So again, I want to emphasize that it's NITRA's duty, right, to invest in our properties, to make sure that this is a resource for residents into the future. While we value and very strongly prioritize the input and partnership with our residents, it ultimately is NITRA's decision to move forward with a PAC transaction.
So your testimony is that the residents don't have a say as to direction or how their community looks? NITRA can usurp their input and move forward with the program?
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that we seek partnerships with our residents to help inform the future of their communities.
Well, you just said that NITRA, it was, it's NITRA's decision to make. They have the final decision.
In the context of making critical investments that we are responsible for making.
Right. So my question to you is, should the tenants, should the tenants make that final decision? Should that decision be made by the majority of the tenants and not NITRA?
It is NITRA's responsibility and NITRA's decision.
So it's, it's, so the tenants have no, the level of engagement, once the engagement is done, once input is given, they basically, it's advisory and the, the, NITRA can just make a decision?
These projects are not going to be successful without resident support and resident input into the plans. So again, that is a critical facet of what we're doing and what we're prioritizing as part of the PAC program.
But the, the support comes after. It seems like once you tell them that they're selected to this program, then you want them to comply?
That's not accurate. Again, we go through our portfolio planning process and we identify sites that we think would be good candidates for PAC. And then Simon and his team begins the engagement process and talks about what PAC could potentially do. And as those conversations evolve, as Simon mentioned, we are hoping that we will get to a place of partnership. And over the last several years, for the most part, that has been the case. We have been in partnership with our residents. They sit on our review committees and help select the PAC partners. And that very much demonstrates that, that level of partnership and, and the agreement to move forward with PAC.
How are the developers selected? I mean, is it a multitude of developers, go through a vetting process? And the tenants engaging in that? Or has it been, is it the practice, is it still the practice that NITRA selects three developers and then gives it to this particular review committee?
We do an annual request for qualifications. So we pre-qualify contractors, developers, and property managers. And from that pool of folks that are within the pre-qualified list, we invite them to respond to RFEIs, Requests for Expressions of Interest. And the residents review all the responses that we get. They help us select the teams that will be interviewed, and then they help us select the ultimate team that will, to do the renovations.
So that selection process, that committee or review committee, how many residents serve on that committee? And is the major, is the committee composed of a majority of residents?
The committee, for purposes of, you know, the practicality of facilitating these processes, consists by default of the Resident Association Executive Board. And we also defer to the executive board to invite other members of the community into that process as they see fit. Generally, a board representation would be about five individuals, but for different projects, we have allowed about 10 or 12 different participants in those review committees.
And, and if the, are the majority tenants?
They're all tenants of the developments in question.
Right. So you're, so you're saying that the majority of the tenants on that committee then will make a decision?
The.
Well, the committee will make a decision.
Yeah, so we have, it's a very formal process that we go through. For any kind of procurement, you can imagine the, that it needs to be a high integrity process. And residents complete scorecards, ranking each proposal based on a number of different factors. And those scores are tallied up and that's used to make a decision.
Is that public information?
No. Those are, you know, proceedings that take place with the resident review committee as part of the selection process. The resident review committees are also supported by independent resident advisors. These are organizations with experience in affordable housing, real estate, architecture planning, legal services, that the resident committees select and who provide guidance and support to them in reviewing development proposals and ultimately helping them make a selection.
Are those minutes public, made public? Can we request a copy of those minutes of every review and committee? Are there minutes made available to the public?
We have documentation of the scorecards. We do not maintain minutes of all of our meetings.
Well, whatever, you, so you have a documentation of the actions that come from the committee or this particular committee?
For projects that are, that are closed out, I don't see an issue if there's a request to provide scorecards to validate a selection.
Okay. Would NITRA have the authority to transition a development to PAC, even if residents of the development have already rejected the option in a vote?
So if NITRA were to facilitate a voting process and residents decide through that voting process that they do not want to move forward with PAC, then NITRA is going to honor that decision.
Are residents informed of this possibility during the engagement period leading up to the, to a vote?
The circumstances of any formal NITRA voting process are made public prior to that voting process beginning.
All right. I'm gonna, Councilmember Millie, did you have any questions? Councilmember Millie?
I just have a few questions. You just said that if the TA does not have to agree with you to become RAD and PAC. True or not? Y'all would just do it automatically or take over the building?
When we begin our outreach to.
A yes or no?
When we begin our outreach to resident leaders to start a process for planning for PAC investments, we seek the support of resident leaders. And we have, to date, we have not moved forward with a project where there is not that level of support at the beginning stages of the project.
How many are they? How many are they that is not in RAD and PAC right now? They chose not to get in it.
Oh, um.
Could you give me how many?
It's hard to give that number because we're out in the fields constantly talking to people about the PAC program. So it's hard to give an exact number right now.
So y'all could give me statistics of my district. I'm 41. Y'all gave Fairstead 14 developments in my district. They never had, no experience with doing development. So give me how many of those 14 developments agreed to be RAD and PAC? Y'all have people, right?
So for the Reed and Park Rock Consolidated Portfolio that, that you're referring to, Councilmember, we did all of the robust engagement that we previously described with the resident leaders at those developments.
Yeah.
And moved forward based on that process.
How many agree that they want to become RAD and PAC? Could you give me that number?
They, they all did because we did robust engagement with the resident leaders at those developments.
A lot of people still do not want to be in RAD and PAC. And they saying that y'all moving straight along. So you have to give me some kind of concrete document that say everyone said that they wanted to get RAD and PAC? And the ones who said no, what are you doing to talk to them in regards to it?
Well.
Not threatening them?
Absolutely.
Not demanding them sign? And that's an issue also. I don't understand why people are being harassed in order to sign documents. Isn't that illegal?
So, well, with all respect for your questions, again, I want to say that we don't seek 100% consensus for, from our residents before moving forward with the program. And we don't expect that everybody would be in agreement all the time either. If there are specific instances of, you know, alleged harassment or inappropriate communication with our residents at a PAC development or elsewhere, we definitely want to know about it and can follow up because that's unacceptable. But again, we're not, we're not required to hold a vote or to ask every resident if they want to participate in the PAC program before actually bringing that program to their development.
So how, y'all in charge of all of them. How many people have told you that they have been harassed? Are y'all keeping a database on them?
Any, any referral, any referral to, to NITRA or our office is going to be followed up on. Again, we really benefit from specific cases so that we can get to the root of whatever is going on.
Cases. We just had Stivison just testified and said enough is enough. They're going to start going through the federal, state, media, that they're being harassed. You heard for your own ears, you were here. So that's not on your radar. They never told y'all that they were being harassed.
So we're certainly aware of the.
So what is the plan for that? You said you was aware now. What is the plan?
Right. So if there are specific instances where you referenced harassment in the context of signing a lease or something like that.
It was just stated here, with y'all swearing that y'all was going to tell us the truth. She's, the tenant just spoke on that. She said she's going to go through the media now. You have seven days. So now you're aware. So what is your plan? And if that's one.
It's the same thing. It's specifics. And when Dr. Crawford was giving the testimony, again.
Her name?
Absolutely, I do. Because we've been engaging with Dr. Crawford for several years now.
So you're aware. So what have you done? If that's one, it has to be others.
Again, we, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but again, we need specific examples of what's going on. With, with Stivison Gardens One, we have been working with that community for several years now to plan for these investments through the PAC program. Dr. Crawford and other members of the board participated in the selection of the PAC partner. And we have been working with her board and my team to really try and form a partnership where we can work collaboratively together, not to.
We could go back and forth. You could try to talk, overtalk me and I could try to overtalk you. But I don't want to go there. We already just had a statement that it's a problem. What are your plans to do anything about it? I have another one at Park Rock and Reed. I have community meetings where they come and tell me that they are still putting their stove on, they have heaters. And I keep, I met with Fairstead the other day. But HBD came to my office and one of my advisory board meetings, and I employ resident tenants to come to my advisory board, meaning that we can make a plan, that we could all come together and come and stating with one song, one voice. Y'all doing something and it's not being done correctly. So with that HBD now. So with that, HPD now say that you, if tenants call them and they are not getting heat, you can be charged just like if I'm a landlord, if I'm not giving my tenants heat. So the HPD HUD will come and give y'all tickets. Y'all know that, right? So now, from her coming, tenants coming to my meeting, they have tickets now. Now HPD is coming to investigate, see how the heat is. They still got their heaters on. So who is lying? Are the tenants that, when they do a pop-up, a pop-up, they didn't know they was coming? But the tenants, when they did come, they had their heater on, they had their stove on? Something is wrong with these developers.
Okay.
Heat is not being distributed properly to all these developments. And to get back one last time, you still never answered my question. If that's one development, how many other developments are not satisfied with RAD and PAC? Do you have a plan in which you're going to address that? Can they fire that developer?
So thank you for bringing that specific example to our attention. I think that's a really good example of the kind of feedback that we need to be able to take action. I want to, and we're always happy to coordinate with your office to be present at any meeting like that where you're fielding complaints from residents. Because again, our mission is the same. It's to make sure that residents have safe, decent housing.
So you just heard it here.
When, I also want to clarify...
That's just that one.
If I could just also answer some of the other questions that you had.
We got something on the table.
The other, the other thing that I want to just point out is that...
Let's address that one issue.
When these properties transition to the new property management...
I think she wanted a specific answer, and it seems like you're going around in circles.
Well, I'm trying, I'm...
And try not to answer a question.
I'm trying, I'm trying to respond.
I would appreciate it if you respect the council member and you answer her question. It's very pointed. She wants to know, you heard testimony from Dr. Crawford as to the harassment that's being done, the breaking into the TA office, the stealing of petitions? And, and, and she's saying, she said clearly that this is because of their opposition to the RAD PAC conversion. Can you answer that specifically? Because you said you've been in talks and you know Dr. Crawford.
So can you just clarify what your question is specifically?
The question is, what is your plan to handle situations like that when all the, when those controversies arise? And NITIA, NITIA is supposed to do the oversight, right? Am I correct? You're part of this community engagement. You said you've been in talks with this particular TA for the last three or four years. You have to be aware of what's going on as far as the harassment. What are you doing to stop the harassment? And listen to the residents, as they've clearly said in this particular situation, they do not want to go RAD.
So we are in constant communication, or we try to be with Dr. Crawford about some of the concerns that you raised. I don't have an answer specifically for what we're going to do regarding the allegation that somebody broke into the office and stole the petition. Obviously, we were in touch and tried to get to the bottom of whatever situation was happening there. But anytime a resident, any resident reaches out to us with a complaint or a concern, we try and be as responsive as possible and try and resolve the issue.
So in a situation like that, have you been in talks with management or with the, I guess, potential management company that is providing, I guess, the data management order?
Absolutely. Continuous and constant contact.
You're in constant contact?
Absolutely.
Have you addressed this concern?
Hi, can I do this one more time? If you could raise your right hand, please. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions?
Yes.
And if you could state your name and title for the record, please?
Sure. Michael Parkinson. I'm the Director of Community Planning in NITIA's Real Estate Development Department. So thank you, councilmember, for the question, councilmembers. In that specific instance, what, what I would say is that, you know, it takes a partnership to get to the bottom of allegations like that. We would love to extend, and we have extended literally dozens upon dozens of offers to form a better working relationship and meet more consistently with Dr. Crawford and the board. I will say, Dr. Crawford had raised, you know, a sort of issue around allegations, lack of respect in customer service, issues like that, that as my colleague Simon was describing, we too take, we do take very seriously. We, we did have the opportunity to discuss with the principals of the management and the development companies that were working with at Stuyvesant One to quash that, to look into it and make sure that their team, if there was any truth to the allegations that were being raised, they would deal with it directly. And we had agreed that we would take a meeting to discuss those things. And to date, we have not had the opportunity to sit down. So we would welcome that opportunity to do that.
You would agree that this adds to the frustration, this, the frustration of the tenants. I mean, here you have a new developer coming in and it's taking over the property or potentially is supposed to come in and rehab the property, and they're doing these type of tactics. Just because the residents are saying, we, we, we want to stay Section 9, we don't want to go RAD PAC.
I, I have no reason to disbelieve any of Dr. Crawford's allegations, and I want to work with her and the team to make sure that we're addressing those. But I do not believe that the team has any sort of tactic against, you know, folks that oppose the program. It, it's our mission, as Simon was describing, we want to sit down with residents who are in support of or in opposition of the program, to really understand what their issues and challenges are and work together to solve those problems.
But you, you want to sit down with them after the fact, not after...
Before, during, and after.
Right, you're not, and, and I think we've said this in foreign sidebar conversations or meetings we've had, that it seems like you're telling the tenants how they should live. And it's after the fact. It's not, well, you're coming to the tenants from the beginning and saying, is this something you want to do?
Yeah, with respect...
And you're trying to convince them.
With respect, councilmember, we, we heard testimony from Dr. Crawford today talking about the very real, very serious issue she's dealing with and her community is dealing with on a daily basis.
Yeah, but no, 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 but you can't, you can't scare...
Boilers that are not functional, security.
Sir, 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 I'm the chair. I have the right to interrupt. You cannot scare the residents with saying, well, because they, they have repair issues and things of that nature, just to use that as a scare tactic than to force this program down their throats.
We, we worked with the residents in advance of any decisions being made about who we were working with to understand, to understand...
If that was the case, sir, if that was the case, then we wouldn't be in these situations where you have, like Chelsea Elliott, where residents have said that they don't want this particular program, but you, and you had close to 950 residents who signed a petition, you're still going ahead with a project. Stuyvesant, Stuyvesant Gardens, it's the same thing. There was a petition that has been circulated, residents have weighed in and said they don't want it. But you're still going ahead. You're trying to convince them on how they should live.
We, we've never seen such a petition at Stuyvesant One. I'd welcome it if that petition exists. But also...
Order, order. So you, your testimony today that a petition has never been presented to you?
As far as I understand.
But you are aware there's a petition?
I, I've heard Dr. Crawford reference the petition multiple times, yes.
And Dr. Crawford is the elected Tenant Association President?
Correct.
And there's an executive board?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Let me ask you this question.
Chair?
Yes, darling.
They give us what they're going to plan to do in regards to if people have issues? They got to put something in place now.
I'll give, it seems, I'll give them one more opportunity to answer the question. I don't think we got a straight answer from them. So if you, if you want to take the time to answer the question, you have the opportunity to do so. If you can't answer the question, we'll move forward to another question. Just let us know.
Can you repeat the question?
To, this was to dealing with a plan to deal with the harassment that's being levered or allegedly that's being levered by the management companies against the Tenant Association for those residents who are not interested with going RAD PAC?
Right.
What is your plan to, how do you, what oversight are you providing? What are you doing to deal with that controversy or to mediate it?
Sure.
First, we need to date, we need to know how many are, want to be in RAD and PAC? Y'all already signed them up. And how many do not? That we, as elected officials, could give them the support they need, that if they do not want to go that route, they shouldn't have to be. They shouldn't have to be threatened to go that route. Some people don't want to go into RAD and PAC. That would change their life. To me, no, I'm not even in this. If they don't want to go in RAD and PAC, they should have that option. We need to know how many. I'm just asking, how many is, do not want to go in RAD and PAC right now? And how many you didn't sign up for it and you're working with them? How many no? How many yes? Can anyone tell me that?
We wouldn't have that information.
Why?
Hold on. So you, you are aware that there are developments that have petitioned and said that they are not interested with going RAD? So you're not aware of that? You're not aware of Stuy Gardens? You just said that. You just said that you spoke to Dr. Crawford?
I've never seen, I've never seen a petition at Stuy Gardens.
You've never seen a petition? But you are aware that there's opposition?
Again, I've heard references to the petition, yes.
Right, okay. Also, when it comes to Chelsea Elliott, you are aware that there's, there's been a petition that was collected for 950 residents?
Yes, we are aware.
Okay.
Keep it down, we'll have to remove folks. We want to do that.
Yeah, guys, please. You have your opportunity to give testimony. Let's just get through these questions. Councilmember Millie, were you satisfied?
No.
Okay. So you weren't satisfied?
I was.
Neither was I. But let's see if they can answer this question straight. What percentage of consensus do you look for from residents before moving forward with a PAC? What's the, what's the percentage of, of the consensus that's needed? How many residents are needed to be on the affirmative and supporting?
We do not have a specific target. We work with the resident leadership, and if they signal to us that there is an interest with them and their community to move forward, we move forward.
Okay. Have there been cases where NITIA has met a potential PAC candidate and decided not to go through with the PAC conversion after residents expressed their desire not to go forward?
Yes.
There has been. Can you name the development?
There were, we could look back into this and get you a more robust answer.
Yeah, we would love to have...
But off the top of my head, there were a few sites in Rockaway that after that early introduction stage, they said they were not interested, and we did not proceed.
Okay. And they're not even being considered to be selected for the RAD PAC, for the RAD program, even after?
No.
Okay. NITIA recently announced that Jacob Rees houses would be, would vote between, oh, sorry, would vote between remaining Section 9 or moving to PAC. Why is the third option, why isn't there a third option of joining the trust not on the ballot?
The entire process has been, is emblematic of what we've been talking about here today. We worked with resident leadership and the wider resident body over the course of a year and a half at this point to shape the engagement process that took place through 2024. And then the design of the vote that is going to be happening in a couple of weeks was informed by work that we did with resident leadership. So what they wanted to do in this vote was strictly PAC or stay Section 9. They did not want to have a vote that contemplated the trust.
Okay. Will the voting procedure be the same as the previous votes that included the trust option?
Do you mean for Rees?
Yeah.
Well, no, because the residents at Rees just wanted, the vote that is coming up is specifically on PAC or no PAC.
Councilmember, can I just say, for the most part, yes. The voting, voting will be the same. There'll be only two options instead of three, but residents will be able to vote online. They'll be able to vote by mail. There'll be an independent vote administrator who will handle the, all the ballots and the counting. And then one slight difference is for in-person voting for the trust elections, it has been 10 days, but we've made it five days. The reason being is that on the trust voting, we find that most people come in on the first day and the last day, and then we have those like nine days in between where we don't see a lot of traffic. So this is just more an efficiency. But residents still have 30 days in order to vote.
They have 30 days, okay. Given the, given that the federal RAD program does not have a resident voter requirement, NITIA has previously stated that it may transition developments to PAC on its own initiative. I think I asked that question already, am I correct? Again, we just want to make sure that the, the focus is on the desires and the wishes of the develop, of the residents. And would NITIA consider a voting, a formal voting process for the RAD, on selected RAD
At this time, as Simon mentioned earlier, we are moving forward with the engagement process that he outlined. And if we get resident support, we will...
I'm not talking about an engagement process. The engagement process is starting the program.
But the engagement process informs how we work with the residents. And so at this time, no, we're not contemplating specific votes just for...
So no, you're not going to let the residents be able to vote and determine how their community should look?
Well, in the case of Rees, the residents asked for a vote, and that is what we're doing there. It's going to be dependent on the developments and the work that we do with the residents.
I'm talking about also future developments that are...
That applies to the future.
Future developments that are slated to, that you're selecting to go RAD. Will you consider allowing those residents to vote on their future?
As I said, we will work with residents. As in the case of Rees, we are, they wanted to do a vote, and we're doing a vote there. So if something like that happens in the future, we will do it again, and we will entertain a vote.
So you're saying that if a NITIA development that you've selected to go into the RAD program, you will engage them and allow them to have a formal voting process?
If that is what they want to do, as in the case of Rees, we would do it again.
So Stuyvesant Gardens has requested to a vote as to the future of their development and going RAD. Will you today commit to bringing about, allowing a voting process for that particular development?
As Michael mentioned, we would like to work in partnership with Dr. Crawford and her residents. That project has been in the works for several years now. The residents were at one time in support of the PAC.
It doesn't matter. It's, it's clear that the residents have stated that they are not interested to go in RAD, go in RAD.
I think the first step is to have a productive conversation...
Can we have a voting process that clearly will...
First step would be to have a conversation with Dr. Crawford and work through these issues.
So...
We've already invested with the residents at that development. We've already invested a lot of time with the residents at that development in planning for the future. We can't keep revisiting these, 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 these plans.
Well, listen, sir, you don't live there. These folk, these residents that live there, if it takes 10 years to come to a decision, they should have that right to do so.
So, so councilmember, I, you know, so voting came to be in 2022 with the state legislation for trust properties.
Correct.
Even at that time, before this committee, we had said that any properties that were engaged and in the PAC pipeline at that, before that date, were not going to be considered for a vote. In Stuy, Stuy 1 and 2, the engagement started in 2021. I think what's clear here is that NITIA has two obligations. We have an obligation to inform and to work with the residents to make sure that all of their questions are answered, all of their, you know, questions are, are addressed, and they're engaged. We, we hold meetings, we knock on people's doors, we do phone banking, we meet with people one-on-one because we have office hours at the developments. I believe we check all the boxes there. We also have an obligation...
But you, but you didn't check the box of getting permission from the residents.
I don't, so I don't think that, so I think...
And I think that's where the issue is and the issue lies.
Correct, okay.
Where it seems as though you're moving forward with this program, you're doing everything, you're checking the boxes for the program, but you're not checking boxes with the tenants.
The federal, the federal reg mentioned nothing about permission from the residents. But what is important really?
And that's the issue, Brian, I think.
Right, well, you know, you, the federal government could change that, and, you know, and we would abide by that. But what our obligation is to make sure...
Well, no, but we're asking NITIA to be proactive. And since you've consistently said that you want to be a partner, you want to partner with the residents, why not also advocate for them to have a formal voting process? Or NITIA...
The second, the second part of our obligation is to make sure that these buildings are there for the next generation and for the generation afterwards. Right now, we are not funded to make that guarantee. I cannot guarantee that Stuy Gardens will be there for the next generation or the generation under, after that, under current funding conditions. I will say, by bringing investment into that development, we can address their chronic heating problems, their chronic elevator issues, their chronic mold issues, and all the other issues there. We need investment in order to...
We sing together, but we can't talk over each other.
We understand that, Brian. NITIA has done, has not done a good job with maintaining these properties, and thus, we understand, we understand the need to bring in this, bring in some degree of investment. What we're saying is that if you want to build true partnership, it needs to be along working with the tenants. The tenants need to have a say. The tenants need to have a say, and then, yes, do the investment. But give the tenants a say if they want to do it through Rad or if they want to do it or they want to stay traditional Section 9. That's all we're saying, give them an opportunity.
I think we agree that tenants should have a say, and I think in New York City, tenants have more of a say than in any other housing authority in the country when it comes to these conversions. I get, I will challenge any, any councilmember or any, you know, resident to show me a city that does this different in a more robust way. And if they do, we will, we will follow that model.
I don't need to show you a city.
But in New York City, residents are engaged in these processes in many cases for more than a year, in Stuy Gardens for four years, and residents were able to.
What's the disconnect, what's the disconnect, what's the disconnect at Stuy Gardens?
I don't know, I don't, you know, I, you know, and I'd be happy to sit with them and to talk to them, you know, along with my colleagues, and I know that they're doing that.
The disconnect is that you're speaking at them, you're telling them how they should live, you're not axing them, that's the disconnect.
I don't think that's the case, but, but we can agree to disagree.
Well, we can definitely agree to disagree on that, but we have anecdotes, we have members, tenants who live in those developments that have clearly stated that they don't want Rad and that, that the level of engagement is not there because they're being told how they should live, not being, they're not being asked.
Councilmember, again, I think our obligation is to engage, our obligation is not to make sure that we have 100% agreement.
Well, we're not saying 100%, we're talking about a majority of the tenants.
Councilmember, our second obligation is to make sure that these buildings are around for the next generation and the generation after that. We are not set up to do that currently.
You cannot make a major investment like this and leave the wishes and desires of the tenants on the corner. They have to be at the table.
Are we prepared to just give up on those developments?
No, we're not prepared, but we're prepared to have you respect those tenants in those developments, and that's what it's about.
Councilmember, if, so if we just say, okay, we're not going to invest, what is the plan then?
Brian, you're mixing apples and oranges. We, from the beginning, we have clearly stated that there needs to be an investment in NITRA. What we're saying is that the tenants should make that determination on what program they should go in. So are you saying that if they decide not to go, if they decide to stay in traditional Section 9, that they're going to continue to be in misery?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying that's, I'm saying that's the way the federal funding is right now set up. It is not set up for success. It is set up to make sure that crumbs are spread around and tenants are not getting the services that they deserve.
Okay, we're going to move on, let me ask some other questions. When it comes to the general conversation impacts on residents, how many developments have been converted or are in the process of being converted to PAC as of today?
We have converted 24,584 apartments. And there are 14,574 that are in pre-development. So that is, on a development basis, 92 developments have been converted and 53 are within the pre-development stage.
So those are ones that are in the process of being converted?
Yes, those are ones where we have PAC partners identified, and they are onsite doing their investigations, engaging with residents, and we are moving towards the conversion.
And how many residents, how many residents are affected by those conversions, give me?
You know, it's typically two to three residents per unit, so call it 28, 30,000 or so.
Does NITRA fully inform residents of the potential impacts that conversion to PAC may have on their rights and services available to them?
Yes, we do.
Well, can you confirm that as required by federal law, residents maintain the same rights they had under the conventional public housing when their developments are converted to PAC?
Yes, they do.
So the rights are the same?
Yes.
Under Section 9, transfer over to Section 8?
Yes, they are, in some cases, codified in different places, but the same ultimate result is the same for the residents.
Okay. Is NITRA aware of any negative impacts that residents have experienced before, during, or after their developments have been converted to PAC?
I mean, we know every day that residents who are living through tenant-in-place rehabs, and that is disruptive. Most of the, by far, the vast majority of the complaints we get deal with the frustration of living through an in-place renovation. And so we're always looking for ways to minimize that disruption to residents so that this program can actually be successful, not just at the end, when they're in their renovated units, but during the renovation process.
So when a development is converted and they're going through the rehab, they've gone through the rehab process, what is done, what is NITRA doing to monitor that? Especially when you have residents who complain, and there's been multiple complaints of the shabby, shabby equipment, not equipment, the shabby materials that are being used to be put in these apartments. What is NITRA doing and how is NITRA monitoring that when those controversies come up? And a tenant is saying that my apartment is falling apart after this three-week rehab?
So as it relates to the construction oversight, within real estate, there's a design and construction team. And we have folks who go out and, and their whole purpose is to go out and spot check and make sure that the renovations are happening pursuant to the agreements that we struck prior to the conversion. And if there are issues, we make sure that the development teams correct those issues.
Those reports that are done, is that done like through a report?
Pardon me?
Is it done through a report? Is that something we can see for one particular development where there has been complaints particularly after rehab has been done? And is there, is there some type of a report created or put out?
We don't generate a specific report on, of that nature, but we do respond to any of the complaints that we might get. And again, when our teams are out there doing this proactive work, we, we will then have the conversations with the development teams to correct in real time.
So the materials per se, how those materials selected, are the tenants involved in that process? When, as far as the type of materials or the quality of materials that have been?
In our most recent projects, yes. One of the things that we've been, we did not, again, we did not do it in our very first PAC conversions, but over the years, we've done a few things. Number one, in every PAC development, there is a model unit that is built where residents could see what a renovated apartment could look like. They are often given samples of flooring materials, kitchen cabinets, backsplashes, kitchen tiles, you know, bathroom tiles, the whole range. And residents can opine on what finishes, what products they would like to see in the apartments. And again, I want to be clear, I admit, we did not do that in the very beginning, but it is reflective of the way that the program has evolved.
Let me just point out a material that's been, well, material that's being used, flat paint. Do you know the difference between flat paint?
Yes.
And oil-based paint?
Yes.
Okay. Would you put flat paint on, on an apartment? Would you use flat paint as, on an apartment and say it's a finished apartment?
I mean, my apartment does have flat paint, so yes.
But we know flat paint is, is not normally used if you're talking about, you know, duration or something that will last over time, am I correct?
I mean, yes, obviously, a flat paint would need to be refreshed more often than other types of finishes. But that is the responsibility of the PAC partner to continue to refresh and maintain the properties.
The, and then let me go on to, how many, let me just do this.
Derek, could I ask a question on that?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, you can ask, watch.
You talk about the flat paint, that's the one that you could touch and it get dirty so quick. That's not good. And how much subcontracting did y'all do with minorities?
Jillian, can you speak to that? Yeah, we have, this is on our dashboard.
Because y'all making a lot of money and you say you remodeling these apartments. And I just drove through Howard Avenue and I saw all refitted tubs. So why couldn't you just, if you're really going to give people a quality of living, why not just put a brand-new tub? Y'all have the money, y'all just doing all refitting tubs, true or not?
That's not true.
Sir, you could go on Howard Avenue and St. John's, it's about five trucks, refitted tubs.
There are some developments, you are correct, there are some developments where they've used the bath fitter, and there are other developments where they've replaced the tubs.
So why did you choose to replace some and keep just the refitting tubs? Shouldn't everyone have a remodeled, brand-new apartment?
It depends on the needs of the, of the development, it's a part of a complex decision-making around what each development needs.
A tub to be refitted, you might as well just put in a tub. So that's why it came to my realization, tell me about, how many contracts did minorities get in this whole Rad and PAC?
Do we have that off the top?
Since you want to use an outside entity just to refit tubs, so you had to put maybe the remodeling of the floors. What local contract was done? We have a lot of them right on Bedford Avenue. How many did y'all use with all this millions of dollars? That y'all gave back to the community since we are partners?
Yes, so we do have MWBEs are part of our program.
How many?
We require that every project have a partner who is an MWBE.
Have a list.
I'm getting to that, so yes, we have that on our website and we can provide you with a detailed list. But it is a requirement of the program that MWBEs play a significant role in the rehabilitation of these properties.
So nobody locally in Brooklyn or in those boroughs are qualified to do MWBEs?
I didn't say that.
So you say we can look on the website, but y'all should know, y'all should be proud to be talking about that y'all gave local developments or local organizations or businesses some city contracts. You can't name one for me?
We can give you a list. Well, first of all, NITRA does not directly enter into the contracts with the trades that do the PACs rehabs. We select the joint venture between the developer, the general contractor, and the property manager, and they in turn hire the various trades, which is why I can't name.
Who is watching them hire these people, is it a database?
We get reporting from our PAC partners on this, so this is why I can't name, because we did not specifically hire an MWBE trade. But we can provide you with lists of all the, and it's actually part of the transparency report, it has all of our contractors who were part of the projects.
Who is in charge, I could speak to Brian Holden about it? Because I must say, that's the only one I could ever reach, I thank you. I talk about you when you're bad, I'm talking about you when you're good too. But out of all NITRA, that's the only one I could talk to. So, so I could speak to him and see where locally contractors was involved in this. And I have one more question, because now it makes no sense to even be here, because I'm not hearing anything real and concrete. The young man just, oh, Mr. Brian Holden said that if Stuyerson do not go Rad and PAC, it may not be there for the future?
I mean, Brian, do you want to respond to that?
Sorry, Brian.
No, it's okay.
I'm coming for you.
It's okay.
You made a statement like that, I gotta check that.
Yeah, and I don't mean that as fear, I really do.
That's almost a fear tactic, and that's almost bullying.
Councilmember, it's not bullying, and I don't mean it as a fear. I do have a fear for the public housing program in general. It has not been funded the way it is, was supposed to be funded for generations, for as long as I've been doing this, which is quite some time now.
I know.
Yeah, so we are seeing issues that I've never seen before. We had to tell all the residents who live in Bronx River Edition that they couldn't live there anymore because we couldn't provide heat in Councilmember Banks's former district at Ferrantino Plaza before we converted, before we converted.
It's still the 42nd, still the 42nd.
All right, well, okay, but, but there are more and more conditions I'm seeing that are so serious that I do fear for the long-term health of those developments.
So if they don't go Rad and PAC?
If it doesn't have to be Rad and PAC, we have to find investment. If we can find investment another way to, you know, that, that's fine. But right now, the only thing that the federal government is offering for public housing developments is Rad.
Okay, because things could change.
They could.
So, and that gives me to the next question I want to ask. You just said that someone talked about foreclosure. So if no one do anything with Rad and PAC or if, if any TA president has a collective fire development and they go and disrepair?
Right.
And since I just heard today that they're taking loans out already, if it do go in foreclosure, would it not come back to NITRA because they only leased the land?
Correct, so, and I'll let Jonathan speak more to that, so.
Please.
Especially when it comes to the.
Because it still would go back to NITRA, you still got to fix it, no matter what.
We do, and in those cases.
That tactic was not nice.
So Jonathan, I don't think it's a question of nice, I, I think what's happened to public housing residents for more than a generation has not been nice.
Know that, because we, it's predicament, because NITRA didn't live up to what they should have been doing all along. So going forward, I just feel that we shouldn't be kind of scare tactics
Yep.
where some NITRA developments want to stay independent, and you never know, next year, somebody could come up with some money, we have a new president. I ain't saying he ain't going to do it, but you never know, we can't just close the door. So if those developments do not want to go to Rad and PAC, because it's a different thing with Rad and Section 9 and 8.
That's correct.
I feel people are getting evicted quicker now and not having a recourse to go to, to NITRA and have a fair hearing case. So that's why some people do not want to go and lose Section 9. So you said someone else was going to speak and I'm going to be done, I should have been, but please.
So I think the question that Brian referred to me is about, you know, the debt and going into default. So a few things, there is a, almost a year-long process, sometimes even longer.
Or you go on foreclosure, if.
No, 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 before we even convert. From the time we have selected a development and we are working and doing the engagement, the developers are going into the sites, they're doing invasive investigations to really inform the scope of work and making sure that they have fully thought through the scope of work that needs to happen. And we are overseeing that process to make sure that the scope of work is going to address today's needs, and it was mentioned in one of the pre-panels, making sure that the 20-year needs are addressed.
If it's not?
Well, hang on, as, once that scope of work, once, well, I need to give you a full answer. So once the scope of work has been developed, then it gets costed out, and we know what the budget is. So we, NITRA, review that budget and approve that budget, and we go back and forth to make sure we get to a place where we're okay.
We pass that?
Then there is the city's Housing Finance Agency, HDC, that also reviews and approves. And then, of course, there's the federal government, we have to submit financing plans to the federal government to show that we have a viable project. And they approve the subsidy that's going into the projects, they approve the costs, and they move forward with the project. All of that is to say, the risk of a default, by the time we get to a conversion, is extremely low because it's been vetted and the project has been developed and vetted by these three entities.
So have any development stated they did not want to be in Rad and PAC? And the development company that is doing their project, they do not want them? Have anyone said that as of yet?
I mean, that's a different issue than financial default.
Yeah, but it goes hand in hand, if the, that TA president or that development do not want it, and they don't, do not want that developer, so now they made up their mind.
So changing gears then to.
But it could go in default because if we don't hurry up and get a new CBO or a new organization to take over where the TAs fired that contractor, if that's a long process, it could go and disappear, disrepair, and it could go into financial ruin, true or not?
No.
If we don't find someone to take over, if we dismiss a development?
If we are in a situation where residents, you know, are second-guessing their original thought and maybe they don't want to be in PAC anymore.
They said no.
We have not, at that point, we have not closed, we have not converted. Therefore, there's no risk of a default because there hasn't been a conversion yet, it's still Section 9.
Okay, all right, it makes sense, thank you.
You've been satisfying, okay. So I, I know the, we spoke about the Rad PAC when it comes to the engagement, and I just want to have just a couple of questions about, you know, when. when a development is converted. And once we're done with the rehab, and now we're on to the management, you know, phase, or the day-to-day phase, per se. If the residents are not content with that particular management company or those particular owners, is there a process put in place or any type of trigger where NYCHA can revisit the contract agreement?
Yes. So again, we have our ongoing oversight, which happens through our asset management team. NYCHA also has a compliance team. There's also leased housing that administers the subsidy. So there's a lot of different ways in which NYCHA looks at these properties. And if there are issues, including resident complaints, we will take immediate action. And there are two cases where we have removed a property manager, one at Hope Gardens and one in the Manhattan Bundle. At Hope Gardens, it was Pinnacle, and at the Manhattan Bundle, it was Cornell Pace. And we have replaced both of those property managers with Wavecrest.
And that process also involved the tenants getting their input?
I mean, yes. It was, a lot of it was driven by feedback we were getting from residents about what they felt was the poor level of service under the original property managers. So we responded.
Is there a formal process for that? Or is that just through protests or other residents coming together after? Or is there a formal process or period that's set up where that review can take place?
It's not responding just to protest. As I said, there was these three bodies within NYCHA that are constantly overseeing these properties. And so we have a real-time sense of whether customer service is being delivered in the way that we expect. And so, and so, you know, it is based on both what we are seeing on the properties, but also in feedback from the residents. But there is not a formal mechanism at this point.
Okay. We had talked about evictions. Has NYCHA heard concerns from residents that eviction, that the eviction rates at PAC developments are higher than the conventional public housing?
Yes, and I'll ask Jillian to respond specifically to some of these questions.
Sure. We have heard that concern. And the difference between the eviction rate at NYCHA properties, traditional Section 9, and the PAC-converted properties is actually very minimal. It's less than one quarter of 1%.
Has NYCHA heard concerns about the eviction rates at a particular, any particular developments or by particular property managers?
So the eviction rates across the various PAC properties are also relatively consistent.
Okay. Is heightened vulnerability to eviction a risk that NYCHA has communicated at resident information sessions or outreach events when discussing the potential impacts of a Rad PAC conversion?
Definitely, residents' rights are discussed when a conversion is contemplated. And particularly, many of those rights relate directly to eviction prevention. Specifically, that includes ongoing rights for residents to recertify should there be a change to their household income or to their household composition. They have a right to grievance hearing. So they have all of the equivalent rights. We make sure that those are communicated to them prior to conversion.
Is there any displacement, anti-displacement language in the Rad PAC program?
Yeah, the Housing Stability and Retention Guidelines are included in our deal documents. And those set clear expectations for protocols around eviction prevention and outreach that PAC partners must follow.
Okay. The New York City Comptroller released an audit in December 2024 finding that the eviction rate at PAC developments is significantly higher than the eviction rate in conventional public housing and is now comparable to the citywide eviction rate. The audit also found that PAC eviction rates have more than doubled in the last year. Is there anything you would like to comment about around the finding of this particular findings in this audit?
Yes, so we disagree with that characterization that there has been a significant increase from pre-conversion to post-conversion. And in fact, the data that's presented in the audit report supports that. And it actually shows that the change between the pre-conversion rate, Section 9 rate, and the PAC rate is, again, less than one quarter of a percent. So we do not feel that that's significant.
Okay. The December 2024 audit found that the eviction data reported to NYCHA by the PAC property managers was incomplete and inaccurate. What steps does NYCHA currently take to verify the information reported by PAC property manager?
Sure. So we review the information from our PAC property managers that they submit to us per the Housing Stability and Retention Guidelines on a monthly basis. And we look at those in detail. And we, again, disagree with the characterization that some of that information is inaccurate and not reported correctly.
The, well, I guess let's talk about, we can go into transfers. Let's stay in evictions. The, we've gotten complaints, again, of residents being dragged into court. And the fear of their apartments or having housing has, basically, has existed. It's something that currently is a frustration of the residents here and in NYCHA, particularly in the Rad PACs. When there is a process or eviction that is being executed or that particular process is starting, what role does NYCHA play in that process?
So the property manager is the lead in terms of conducting any pre-eviction outreach, connecting residents to resources, and working with the social services provider to do that. They're also responsible for initiating the legal proceeding process. NYCHA is responsible for reviewing the monthly reports that the partners submit carefully, questioning them about them on a monthly basis, ensuring that they're complete and accurate. And that's the oversight role that we have as it relates to the eviction proceeding process.
So the social service provider that's partnered with the particular developer or managing company, is there talks or there communication between NYCHA and that particular social service provider?
So there's nothing preventing that from happening, and there can and has been. When it comes to specific discussions regarding evictions, that's obviously a very one-on-one discussion that would need to be had between either the property manager and the social services provider directly, should something like a recertification or a, needs to be pursued. So that's more of a one-on-one conversation that a resident would have with a social services provider.
We'll come back to evictions. We're going to have a conversation about transfers. Has NYCHA heard concerns from residents about the transfer process at PAC developments? Has NYCHA heard of concerns from residents about the transfer process?
Do you mean going from one, from a PAC development to another PAC development or to a Section 9?
Yeah.
Yes, we have. And we are trying to find a way to facilitate such moves, but it's not currently permissible.
Okay. Have you heard of reports of residents being removed from transfer waitlists when their buildings are being converted to PAC?
No. Again, if you have some specifics, we will look into it, but I've not heard of that.
Okay. Is potential change in transfer policy or removal from a transfer waitlist a risk that NYCHA communicates to residents when discussing the impact of a PAC conversion?
Yes. Transfer policy? Just whether they can move from PAC to those conversions. Do we share that?
Oh, apologies, councilmember. Yes, any questions that come up at our meetings about transfer policy are addressed. We also have a meeting that's specific to different things that you need to be aware of prior to the conversion. And as my colleague Brian mentioned, where we walk through, you know, how to, you know, apply for reasonable accommodation, how you would pay your rent, where you would go to file an income certification under Project-Based Section 8 versus Section 9. Those are all explained at a very specific PAC welcome meeting prior to the conversion taking place.
So it's your testimony. You explain to the residents about the-
The transfer policy is correct.
Okay. And this is done through the engagement process?
Correct. This is done at, there is a specific resident meeting that goes through that and other topics related to how the new property manager and NYCHA would interact with residents after the conversion takes place. But we field questions like this all the time through our office hours, our phone banking, our hotline, and just our regular communication outreach.
How many community engagement meetings are held in the beginning process of a Rad PAC converted development?
It would depend on the specific development and the kind of feedback we get in working with resident leaders about how to best reach residents. We use a variety of different outreach tactics. So we host typically at least, I would say, two or three town hall-style meetings before we release a request to identify developers. We also are running weekly office hours. We're sending out text messages and emails. We're making phone calls. We're doing workshops. So there's a whole range of different activities. And it really depends on things like the size of the development and the kind of guidance that we get from resident leaders.
When a development converts to PAC, are all existing transfer requests closed? So during that transition-
The answer is yes. Residents receive a notice that their open transfer request is closed prior to the conversion taking place.
So my question then, why is that, why is that the outcome? Or why is the transfer closed? Shouldn't that just be transferred over to the new management company?
So if they have a transfer request-
Documents?
Yeah, so I can clarify.
Every request?
Yeah, so there's different kinds of requests. Under the Project-Based Section 8 program, residents cannot currently request a transfer between a Section 8 development and a public housing development or between different Section 8 developments. But if they have a request to move to, say, a larger apartment to accommodate their family size within that development, that is still relayed to the PAC partners. And then they would work through a process to facilitate transfers as apartments are available.
That's transferred over to the PAC partner?
Those requests are transferred over and made aware, the PAC partners are made aware. Correct.
Is it true, even when residents are seeking reasonable accommodations, emergency transfers? Has that, has that been something you've heard about? Or has that been a constant where residents are seeking reasonable accommodations? Or emergency transfers?
So apologies, getting some information from my colleague. So if a reasonable accommodation request has been made and can be accommodated on-site, efforts are made by the PAC partner to accommodate those needs. If there's an emergency transfer request to move to a different location, again, because of the restrictions on how transfers can take place between different developments, we would, the option that we would offer to the resident is a housing choice voucher, which would allow them to move off-site to a different property.
Okay. Does NYCHA currently permit transfers within and between PAC portfolios?
No, as I mentioned, current regulations prohibit us from facilitating those transfers between PAC developments.
Will NYCHA eventually permit transfers between PAC developments and Section 9 developments?
It's something that we're looking at and working to facilitate.
Which, which, which regulations prohibit that? Or what regulation prohibits a resident transferring to a PAC, a different PAC portfolio or to a Section 9 development or traditional NYCHA development?
We can get you more details, but it sounds like it's in the Section 8 admin plan. But again, we can get you more specifics on where that's, where that's codified.
Okay. When a PAC resident needs to transfer that cannot be accommodated at their development, what are their options?
Yeah. So as I mentioned previously, the main option we have in that circumstance is to offer the resident a housing choice voucher, which would allow them to move, basically port over their subsidy to rent an apartment in the private market.
There's, there've been reports that source-of-income discrimination combined with skyrocketing rents across the city make it incredibly difficult for voucher recipients to find housing. So if they do choose to transfer or port that voucher or take that voucher and leave NYCHA, a 2020-23 report by NYU Furman Center found that nearly half of NYCHA's Section 8 voucher recipients lose their vouchers because they were unable to find housing. Is it NYCHA's position that the receipt of a Section 8 voucher is equivalent to the right of a tenant to have conventional public housing or to transferring to conventional public housing or to developments across the NYCHA portfolio?
So unfortunately, we're not the department that typically manages helping residents navigate the identification of homes with a housing choice voucher. But we can get you more information about the different initiatives that NYCHA has to support our residents making those moves.
When it comes to transactional transparency, at a hearing in April of 2024 before this committee, NYCHA testified that it does not publish the documents that govern its transactions with PAC partners. Is this still the case? And is it still the case?
Yes, that is still the case.
And are there any plans to begin by making these documents public?
We actually have transaction, template transaction documents on our website so people can see how the deals are generally structured. But we have not released-
Or the actual deal itself?
We have not released specific deal documents. Ultimately, we want to be able to preserve our ability to negotiate the best possible deal whenever we're doing a conversion.
But we're talking about after the deal is negotiated and agreed to.
But that could impact negotiations on future deals.
So that particular document is not released or is not made public, you're saying? Or that particular deal for that particular development is not?
Not closed, not converted projects, no.
At the same hearing, also NYCHA testified that the reason it does not make those documents public is to preserve the ability to negotiate competitive agreements with each PAC partner. Can you explain why withholding prior transactional documents is necessary to ensure that the contracts with PAC partners meet the needs of NYCHA residents?
I mean, obviously, to get, you know, we want to get the best deal to make sure we're getting the best pricing and that we've got the best scopes of work so that we can serve residents. That's the whole point. That's why we want to make sure we're getting the best, structuring the best deals and that we are doing this to favor NYCHA as an organization and our residents, not necessarily the other side.
But do you think it's in the best interest of the residents to keep those, keep that, those deals or keep those negotiations private? Or keep the deal, the final deal that comes out of those negotiations to keep it private? You don't think that should be given to the tenants so they can see and examine?
And we do a lot with residents so that they, as we've discussed through our engagement process, we do a lot as it relates to helping them shape the scope of work and all the oversight that we provide. And again, we have made, we've looked at these issues that you're raising and, you know, looked at the pros and cons and have decided that for now, we want to keep those documents. You know, we're not putting, you know, specific deal documents on our website so that we can negotiate better deals in the future.
So this is not, this is, okay, and this is, this is the frustration. This is not, what happened to the engagement? The community engagement, the resident engagement? This is information that the residents should, should be privy, should be privy to. Let me ask you this then. Can you point to an example where making a prior transactional, prior transactional documents public have jeopardized the contract with a PAC partner?
I mean, it's just standard practice, not just with NYCHA. I think many agencies and entities would not release their information so that they could do, again, preserve their ability to do better negotiations in the future.
So you're saying by releasing this document, it would jeopardize future agreements? So you're saying by releasing this document, it, it would jeopardize future agreements?
Yes, we want to, again, preserve our ability to negotiate the best deals.
So, so you're saying not being, not being transparent to the residents who ultimately will, whatever this agreement that is done now in secret, that, that the residents are basically left in the dark?
I didn't say we did anything in secret, although we weren't transparent. Again, we do a lot to be transparent. We share the scopes.
Well, you just said that you, you don't-
We share the scope. We develop the scopes of work with the residents. They are very much aware of the scopes of work. They know the value, the overall value of the projects, right? And as was mentioned earlier, we also produce these community plans so that they can, so for folks who may not have been in part of the engagement process, they will see exactly the kind of renovations they're getting. So they, they have ample insight into what the renovations are going to be.
Well, do you believe that allowing residents to access those transition documents would allow them to make a more fully informed decision about whether to vote for PAC conversion or any, or any, at their development?
Again, the-
Do you think-
-template documents are online, the basic framework of these deals is online, and anyone can look at them at any time.
We're not talking about a template. Template doesn't show the details as to what is being negotiated. We're talking about after NITIA negotiates, why isn't this information made public to the residents?
As I, I've explained, we want to preserve our ability to negotiate in the future.
Okay. These transactional documents also contain previous provisions protecting residents' rights and obligating developers to make certain repairs that go beyond what is contained in the PAC, PAC leases. However, in 2022, Human Rights Watch reported that residents face difficulty enforcing these rights because only NITIA and HUD can enforce the underlying contract. Can you walk us through how NITIA enforces its PAC contracts to ensure that residents' rights are being protected?
Resident, so-
I'm gonna repeat this again. Please, guys, everyone will have an opportunity to give testimony.
Your engagement about this.
If you call out or make, or interrupt a proceedings, you will be removed.
I mean-
Remove him, remove him. You may proceed.
Sure, I can take a, I can take a crack at answering that. So the different rights and protections related to the PAC transaction are contained in different documents. That includes the lease, which is probably the most significant source in terms of regulating rent, and other specifics. There's also regulatory agreements, there's a ground lease, there's a control agreement. Those are just a few of the different legal documents that we have to hold our partners accountable. And, you know, again, as we've mentioned, if there are specific instances of violations related to those different obligations that our partners have, we can always step in per the terms of those documents and correct. But again, without specific information, it's difficult for us to respond in a general way.
Well, how would, how would the residents know what's a specific violation if you refuse to release the document to the public? Because I, I, NITIA, I know NITIA provides the oversight-
Yeah.
But when there is a breach-
Sure.
And where, where, where's the resident engagement? Where's the resident empowered then to be a part of this process or to give input? That's what's missing, because it-
Yeah, so, so are you referring to after the conversion has taken place, or during the whole process overall?
During the negotiation process.
Oh, okay, during the negotiation process. So, you know, as I mentioned, we do a whole lot of work to just make sure that residents are informed about the program, how it works, what their rights and protections are. Once the partner team comes on board and they start conducting inspections across the community to really determine what are the conditions that need to be addressed as part of this project, they start, they reflect that information back, and we want to hear from residents about, you know, their experience. So that involves, you know, walking apartments with residents, understanding, you know, in a really detailed way, where does it leak in your home when there's a rainstorm? What are some of the really challenging issues that you struggle with in your apartment? Matching that up with the information that's gleaned from the technical inspections, using that information to come up with a draft plan. That plan is communicated with residents at public meetings, it's put on the website, there are a whole host of different activities that take place where we want to hear from residents about, is this the plan that's going to ensure success for your community? And residents have opportunities to tell us, yes, this needs to prioritize, or I don't see you talking about how to handle cleaning of our property in a, in a positive way. So that needs to be something that's put forward. And those are the kinds of conversations that we have. Ultimately, that information, that plan is codified in a community plan document, which is shared with every resident at the development. And that describes in a lot of detail what kinds of infrastructure upgrades are going to be made, what the apartments are going to look like. And again, that is based on the model units that are designed with residents, and also the types of security, public safety, social service, property management strategies that are going to be implemented. So that is really, in terms of what residents can use to make sure that the things they were promised are being provided, we did that for that specific reason. So people know what they're going to get, and if they're not getting it, that they should let us know. Often, complaints, concerns filter up through the resident leadership, and, and that's an important outlet. But, you know, residents can communicate with us in a whole range of different ways. We have a hotline, we have office hours, and those kinds of means.
So again, back to my point, the, after the negotiations are done, then the residents weigh in? So it's, it's, this plan is negotiated, and then it's presented to the tenants?
Oh, no, it's, it's very iterative. So, you know, when I mentioned that the PAC partner team would come to the table with a draft plan, that's already been developed with input from residents, because they've had meetings, we consult regularly with the tenant leaders, they're talking with us about, you know, what we think is, should be prioritized or what's needed. So that draft is based on months, or in some cases, years of engagement and conversations. And then during that process, when residents are saying, more needs to be done here, we don't care as much about that, we're constantly behind the scenes with the partner team, trying to negotiate, what can the project afford? What is going to be too costly? And where can we compromise to make sure that this project is financially sustainable, but also addresses residents' needs?
Yeah, it, it sounds like it's, it's said easier than it's done.
Very challenging.
And, and it was challenging. In the late 2023 property, I'm sorry, in late 2023, the property manager from Hope Gardens was replaced by the PAC developer. Was NITIA involved in that decision? And do PAC developers need NITIA's approval to replace a property manager?
Yes, to both.
Did NITIA have advance notice of this decision?
Yes.
And did it share this information with the residents?
Yes, there was an engagement process. And again, I mentioned this earlier, we were all collectively responding to a number of things, including resident input in the couple of years leading up to the change. And so we agreed with resident leadership and with the development team to make a change in terms of the property management.
Okay. Could NITIA initiate a replacement of a PAC property manager on its own without approval from the PAC developer?
Yes.
Could the residents initiate a replacement on their own?
Again, yes, we respond to feedback from our residents.
You respond, so if the residents came and said, this particular managing company, this owner has to go, and they can, if they did it through petition, they did it through a vote, or some type of resolution that reflected the will of the majority of the residents, would that be enough to remove an owner or a management company?
I mean, we don't wait for those types of issues to crop up. We are monitoring these properties on a day-to-day basis, again, within the real estate team, the asset management part of the real estate team, within the compliance group, within leased housing, there's a lot of eyes on these projects. So we already have a sense of what's going on, and whether things are working as optimally as we would like. So there's not a surprise. There's not a surprise with Hope Gardens, there wasn't a surprise with, with the Manhattan Bundle. And we try to work to resolution with the existing teams, because replacing a partner is disruptive, so we hope that there can be some corrective action. If all parties eventually decide that there's no path forward, then we will work to remove. So, again, I don't see a world where we don't know anything about it, and then the residents come with a petition. We are actively hearing things from residents on a day-to-day basis.
During a resident, during resident engagement prior to PAC conversion or, or voting, does NITIA inform the residents about the process of replacing a PAC, PAC developers?
Yes, I mean, we, we talk all the time about how we have the ability to replace PAC partners.
So you explained, okay.
And I would let Simon chime in with more detail of where in the engagement process that happens, but yes, we absolutely do.
So the residents are aware that a PAC developer and management company can be removed?
It, it's part of our standard talking points when we give an introductory presentation about the PAC program.
Okay, we've heard reports that tenants at some developments have been asked to sign leases with the PAC partners prior to HUD approval. Have you heard of this happening?
Well, I'm not sure what's meant by HUD approval, because there's actually a couple layers of approval. I think what is meant by that, and I don't mean you and, and folks that have relayed this to you, is that the leases need to be signed before the conversion can happen. So that is absolutely true. HUD is very much aware of our projects well before we even do a conversion. We have to submit initial plans, we have to go through a number of steps with them and demonstrate that we've done engagement, we have to submit the financing plan, we have to submit the scopes of work. So HUD gives us various approvals along the way. And so, again, it is true, though, that these leases need to be signed before the actual conversion takes place, because that is what allows legally, you know, the subsidy to flow and all of the rights and protections that we've been talking about through, in this conversation, to actually be in effect.
So, so is your testimony that the, once the conversion or is, is, the early process has started, the transferring over from Section 9 to Section, there's no approval, direct approval that's needed from HUD? Or the early, because it, it seems as though residents are saying that the, there's a move, an early move to try to rush folks to sign over to, onto the Section 8, Section 8 lease?
They sign the lease, but it's not in effect the day they sign it. The lease becomes effective of the date of the conversion.
How do, how do PAC partners have authority to, but how do PAC partners have authority to send out leases? And if they don't yet have HUD approval to take over the management of a development, how do they begin that process if there's no approval to take over a particular development?
Well, again, the leases are not in effect unless and until the conversion actually happens. So, so that's thing number one, right? The fact that they, if you have a conversion happening in March and the resident signed it in December, it doesn't matter, because it takes effect in March. So there's no risk, there's no downside to the resident signing it prior to the closing. The benefit is that we need to get these things in order so that it is an orderly transition at the closing, so that everyone is on the rent roll, we know what's going on at the conversion.
Okay, so if a resident decides not to sign a Section 8 lease, will you drag them in a court, or will the management company drag them in a court to, to evict them, thus making them homeless?
I mean, eventually, they have to sign a lease. I mean, you have to have an effective lease, and at the conversion, the prior Section 9 lease falls away. So they would need to have an active lease for the Project Based Section 8 conversion. Yes.
So if, and then that goes back to the early point I was making with the need for community engagement and having the residents give permission before we even get to this process. If a tenant opts out of signing the lease and is not in support of the conversion, or you have a situation where you have a development that is not in support of the conversion, and NITIA goes ahead and they, they, they put this particular development in, and selects them to be a part of the program, how do you get, how do you, how do you get residents to sign on to a lease where they're not in support of the program? How do you force them to do that? And then dangle over their head their right to, 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 to have an apartment over a roof over there? How do you do that, over a piece of paper?
We have not had that situation yet. I know we've been speaking about the situation with Dr. Crawford, and again, we keep saying we will have, we want to have a meaningful conversation with her about how to move forward. But leaving that specific project aside, we have managed with all of our other projects to work through issues with, with the residents and get them on board over time to sign their leases. But it's in their interest to sign the lease.
Is NITIA aware, we know NITIA is supposed to provide oversight, and when these type of controversies come into play, NITIA is supposed to mediate. Is NITIA aware of any developments that have been converted over to Rad PAC, and we're talking about past developments, obviously, where there are tenants who have not signed over to the Section 8 lease? Do you know the count? Is there a, a specific number where you-
I don't know if we have a specific number, but yes, we-
But is legal action being taken against those tenants?
We are aware that some people have not signed leases in converted sites, and, Jolene, I don't know if you have specific numbers there.
Yeah, if we can get specific numbers-
But what we want to do, as we've said, as we've said-
With, with the amount of tenants and where they're at, and what development they're in.
Do you have that breakdown?
No, we don't have that breakdown here, but immediately after conversion, it is definitely a top priority to identify any residents that have not signed the PAC lease, and then continue to work with them, to educate them about the rights that the PAC lease affords them, and work with them to sign it. That, those-
Let me ask you this question. If a tenant doesn't sign a PAC lease, is their apartment still rehabbed?
Yes, the apartment would still be rehabbed in the long run. It is extremely important that the residents sign the lease in order for all of their rights to be codified.
So is your testimony that even if they don't sign a Section 8 lease, are they still entitled to have their apartment rehabbed?
Partners will continue to work with the resident, yes. I, I just want to add-
In the same time, are they trying to evict them?
Parallel, they do continue to work with the residents. Additionally, I just want to add that conversations with residents after conversion who have not signed leases, we may even refer them to a third party such as legal aid to have an additional conversation, further clarify the terms of the PAC lease in case there are any lingering concerns that they might have to encourage them to sign.
Well, do you have the, any numbers showing the amount of folks you've added to the homeless role?
Excuse me?
I said, do you have any numbers showing how many residents that chose to opt out of signing a, a Section 8 lease, those folks who have been evicted, that you've added to the homeless role? Do you have those numbers?
So we continue to work with residents who have, who have not signed lease, with the ultimate goal of having them sign a lease and have all of their rights retained.
Are there any situations where residents have been evicted for not signing over to a Section 8 lease?
I don't have any information about that in front of me today.
So there's no reporting done? I mean, that, that, to me, is a serious move when anytime a tenant is evicted from an apartment, especially because they don't want to sign over to a Section 8 lease. So you're saying you have no information on tenants being evicted, those tenants who have been evicted because they refused to sign a Section 8 lease?
We would have to follow up.
Yeah, it would be good to get that information. It would, it would make sense, you should have that information readily available when there's been, Alex, it's been complaints-
Just to be clear, we know how many-
-contention about the aggressive tactics being used by management companies, and the, the, the high rates of eviction in some of the Rad, in the Rad PAC portfolio.
So we absolutely know the total number of evictions. What Jillian is saying is we do not know, in front of us today, when we'll get you the information, the number of people that have been evicted because they did not sign a Section 8 lease. We know the total number.
No, 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 I know you know the total, but I'm saying specifically for that, because that's important. Am I correct? Okay. Because you constantly- Because you constantly talk about the need to have a partnership. And obviously, if a resident's not pleased, would happen to have to sign over to this program because they think that it's, you know, it's not in their best interests, making them homeless because of that is unacceptable. We've also heard that resident leaders at some of the developments have been asked to sign a non-disclosure agreements for their participation in their development's PAC conversion process. Are you aware of any such non-disclosure agreements? And why would a tenant leader be asked to sign a non-disclosure agreement?
This is part of the RFEI process, so when we are reviewing with the residents submissions for PAC projects and selecting the developer. And Simon's team oversees that specific process, so he can give you a little bit more detail. But yes, they do sign these agreements.
So, as I previously described, the Resident Review Committee that the Tenant Association forms to evaluate proposals, that committee is required to sign a confidentiality and conflict of interest agreement. And what that does is it protects the procurement process that we're going through to make sure that if it were challenged, we can ensure integrity in the process. It also ensures that there's no conflict of interest of any review committee member in connection with the candidates that they're interviewing. So, say somebody maybe works for a property management company that they're interviewing, the agreement just requires them to disclose that conflict to us so that we can take appropriate action. There's also no recourse if any information that's confidential is shared. It would just result in that member not being permitted to remain on the committee. But again, there's a lot of sensitive information contained in those proposals, as you can imagine. And if any of that information were disclosed publicly or leaked, it could lead to one of the applicants having a disadvantage. And that could jeopardize the entire process and require us to start over again. So, that, those are the reasons why we require the members to sign those agreements. And lastly, again, they do have that technical assistance, the independent advisors that work with them, along with NITIA to explain, you know, all of the reasoning and also to vet that agreement to make sure that everything is proper.
Okay. When it comes particularly dealing with Fulton-Elliott Chelsea, NITIA has proposed the demolition and a redevelopment of the Fulton-Elliott Chelsea campuses. Has NITIA received approval from HUD to bring FEC campuses under the RAD program?
As I mentioned, it's any of these projects that we do, there are multiple steps that we go through with HUD and other agencies. So, HUD is very much aware of the proposal. They have not granted final approval of the project. We are going through the environmental review process.
Just let me just make it clear, there's been no approval given by HUD to move forward with this particular project?
There hasn't been final approval to move forward, but we have, they are very much aware.
There has been no final approval by HUD to move forward with this particular project?
Correct.
Has HUD approved a Section 18 application for the demolition or disposition of the FEC campuses?
No, not yet.
Okay. Were those applications submitted as single applications for both developments or was it submitted for multiple, multiple applications?
Between the whole project. I think it'll be done as. Yeah, I think it's one.
So, they submitted separate applications for each?
We have not submitted yet, but, go ahead.
We can follow up. I don't want to misspeak, but we can get you that information.
We can get that information, appreciate it. We heard reports that tenants are seeing Section 8 recertification showing up in their self-service portal. How is this possible if the project has not yet been, yet received HUD approval?
Yeah. There is a development that's part of the Fulton-Elliott Chelsea project that currently has Section 8 tenants, so that might be the reason. But we can follow up and get you more information on that.
Please. Has any, has there been any reports been produced for the project as required for Section 18 applications? And if so, can you share a copy of the report?
What kind of report? What do you mean?
The, I think this is the obsolescence report? Obsolescence? Sorry about that. Obsolescence report?
That hasn't been completed yet. That would be part of the whole package that gets submitted.
Has an independent audit been conducted as required by HUD for RAD applications? And if so, can you share a copy of the audit, of that audit?
Well, there's two things that you might be referring to. One is the physical needs assessment and that I think was made reference to in one of the pre-panels. So, that's done every five years. The most recent one was done in 2023, and that's online and it's actually part of that capital projects tracker that you asked about earlier. So, residents can go and look at all of the campuses for Fulton-Elliott Chelsea and see exactly, you know, what that reveals. There's another piece called a CNA that we have to do when we get into an actual project, and that is underway.
Okay. Before development partner was selected for FEC, what was NITIA's estimated cost for renovation of the FEC campuses? And can you provide us with documentation supporting whatever estimate that was reported?
Sure, we can provide documentation. When we started this project or the engagement process associated with this project, NITIA had estimated the physical needs assessment at about $344 million. But after NITIA conducted its required five-year, it's, it's a physical needs assessment that is required for NITIA to do every five years that was released and had shown that costs had ballooned to closer to about $1 billion. So, those are the costs that, you know, we have. Those were also consistent with what the selected development partner had presented to us as part of their investigations as well.
So, you'll be able to provide that documentation?
We can provide the physical needs assessment.
Physical needs assessment, okay. After related and essence were designated as PAC development partners for FEC, what was the estimated cost of the renovation of the FEC campus? And can you provide us with documentation supporting that estimate?
Sure, it's the same response that when we first solicited proposals for that project, NITIA, based on our physical needs assessment, assumed the cost would be about $344 million. After the team had been selected and as they were conducting their own due diligence, NITIA updated its physical needs assessment and that showed costs ballooning to about $1 billion.
Okay. What is the current estimate cost for the proposed FEC demolition and redevelopment? And can you provide us with the documentation supporting that particular estimate?
I mean, so that's still being developed, but for the replacement to build new buildings, and this would be inclusive of the demolition costs and the reconstruction of the NITIA buildings, it's about $1.7 billion.
Is there any part to the proposal that includes doing infill on the property?
Well, yes, because the, both Fulton, Elliott Chelsea, and Chelsea Edition will all be completely rebuilt.
Will there be a infill on the existing property once the, you know, if the proposal goes for it? On the existing property, will there be any fair market units added to the property?
The current proposal calls for the replacement of all 2,056 apartments, the addition of 1,000 new affordable units on top of the replacement units, as well as about 2,400 market rate units.
Okay. Just want to go back to the community engagement piece when it comes to Chelsea and Elliott. Can you describe the informal survey that was conducted at FEC to justify the demolition?
So, we did the survey in the first half of 2023. It was part of a whole engagement process that we had designed with the Tenant Association presidents at the time from Fulton and Elliott Chelsea, as well as the elected officials who represent the area. And we decided jointly that we would put together this survey that would be accompanied with pretty in-depth engagement on a weekly basis. So, we were holding three or four town hall style meetings every week. We were taking residents on tours of new affordable housing construction that they could see in Long Island City as well as Roosevelt Island. And we talked about the benefits and the trade-offs associated with rehab versus new construction. And then residents had the ability to use this survey to register their preference for either sticking with the rehab plan or the new construction plan.
So, were residents clearly told how this survey would impact their development?
We believe so.
Okay. NITIA's metrics on the dashboard shows that as of January 2025, there are no vacant apartments in FEC developments. However, NITIA has previously stated that residents who would need to relocate would be moved into the, into vacant NITIA, into vacant NITIA units within FEC developments or other nearby affordable housing units. How many vacant units are there currently at the FEC developments? And if there are no or fewer vacant units, where will residents be relocated to?
Currently, there are enough vacant units to relocate, temporarily relocate everyone from Fulton 11 and Chelsea Edition. So, that, those residents can be accommodated at their host community if they so choose.
Repeat that again?
We have enough vacant units at Fulton houses, which could then accommodate residents who would have to be temporarily relocated from Fulton 11, which would be the first building at Fulton to be rebuilt. Similarly, we have enough vacant units at Elliott Chelsea to accommodate residents from Chelsea Edition who would be temporarily relocated from that building, so it can get rebuilt.
Okay. How does NITIA intend to, tend to fill vacant units at the FEC developments for relocation? How does NITIA plan to move relocating tenants to the top of the waitlist?
So, NITIA's been reserving vacant apartments as tenants have been leaving at the Fulton-Elliott Chelsea campuses for this explicit purpose of accommodating temporary moves. For, under 120 households are going to have to temporarily relocate while the new building, denser new buildings are going up. That represents just about 6%, or actually, I think it's about 4% of the total number of households that will have to temporarily relocate. Everybody else will move directly into their new home once the new buildings are constructed. As part of the whole process for facilitating the relocations, we're working to develop a HUD-required relocation plan with a relocation specialist who would be responsible for working directly with households to assess their needs, support them during that move process, and ensure that they're accommodated with an appropriately sized apartment.
Okay. And how does NITIA plan to keep track of these relocated tenants?
So, that's part of the relocation plan that's under development right now. This is something that many other housing authorities have done in other jurisdictions. And so, the process of tracking households is done by the liaison as well as with NITIA. But again, part of the reason that we are facilitating vacant move, temporary relocations within the home campuses is so that we don't lose anybody. We don't want people to move off-site into private developments, not managed by NITIA, where there could be a risk of losing track of folks. So, having everybody within our communities will allow us to keep better track of everybody and ensure that they're guaranteed the right to return to their newly constructed home at the appropriate time.
Since January 2021, how many FEC tenants have been offered a Section 8 voucher to move out of the development?
I'm not aware that anybody has been offered a Section 8 voucher in connection with this project, but I can look into that and get back to you.
Can you repeat that again?
I'm not aware of anybody being offered a Section 8 voucher in connection with the Fulton-Elliott Chelsea redevelopment project. There may be certain circumstances where, you know, to facilitate an accommodation request or an emergency transfer. But as part of the project related to the redevelopment plan, there have not been offers made as far as I'm aware. But again, I will get back to you to make sure that I'm giving you the accurate information.
Okay. When it comes to reporting requirements under Local Law 65, in 2024, the council passed Local Law 65 requiring annual reporting on the impacts of the PAC program to increase transparency around the impacts of PAC conversions on residents. NITIA submitted its first report on November 2024. The law requires that the report be made publicly, available online. Where they can report, where can the report currently be accessed? Is any?
It's on our website, on the PAC section of the NITIA website.
You said it's on the website?
Yes.
And as of February 20th, the committee staff, we were unable to locate the report on NITIA's website. Can you be more specific about where the, where to find the report on the website?
Sorry, I misspoke. It's actually, so it's on the NYC DO-IT website, so we can provide a link for you.
Can you repeat that?
It is on the main New York City website, so we can send you that link.
It's not on NITIA's website?
Yes, I misspoke. It's actually on the DO-IT website, so we can send you that link.
Okay. By what date do you commit to having this report made publicly available online and accessible to the public?
I mean, it is online now, right?
Accessible. It seems like we've been unable to find it.
Well, we'll send you the link and we'll make sure that people know about it.
Okay. The report, hold on a minute. I want to walk through some of the requirements of Local Law 65 and where they might be met or not be met. In the first PAC report, the report must include the date each PAC development was selected for inclusion in PAC, wherein the report, it states this information. Those columns refer to PAC project name, NITIA consolidation name, NITIA development name. Where in those columns can I find a date that each PAC development was selected for inclusion in the PAC?
I believe we do. And again, we will send you the link so that you have it and you can see all the information. But I think we've complied with all the requirements.
Okay. The report, the report must also include languages that outreach materials where available in each PAC development. Where in the report is that, is that information?
Same answer. I mean, the full, there's a report and then there's a couple of appendices that has, you know, what we think is responsive to the requests.
So, the letters that is reported in the particular report doesn't provide for that in the columns, so can you walk us through that?
I mean, we can follow up with you.
The report is not in front of you?
I have a report here, but they are not columns named, so I can't really walk it through with you.
Well, this is the report we have right here, and it clearly states the date such development was selected for inclusion. It goes through the requirements. Am I correct?
Yes.
The columns on the report, it's basically blank. There's no names as to what's in these particular columns. There's no names as to what's in these particular columns.
So, councilmember, we provided the committee the report before it was even, on the same day that it was published online. So, just want to make it clear that there is, you know, we were not hiding anything here. If you want to go over the details of the report, we'd be happy to set up a meeting with you and committee, you know, to go over that and walk it through. And if there's things that you think that in the next report would be helpful in order to, you know, make it better, we'd love to hear you out.
Well, I think we got to point this out, that the report stated in the law that the report must include languages of outreach materials in each PAC development. That's not available? The report also says that there must include outreach that NYCHA conducted before and during the conversions of the PAC development. That's not listed. The report must include NYCHA's oversight of the development partner or property manager for the PAC development. That's not there. The report must also include outreach for the NYCHA conducted before and during the conversions of each PAC development. Where in the report is that information?
Again, I'm not sure what you're looking at, but we have the report. We can have a meeting and go through the report with you.
You know, this report is public, and folks can read and assess as they read, but it doesn't seem like the report is in full compliance with the law.
I think we disagree.
Well, we would love to hear your position in those holes that we actually pointed out, so we can get an accurate report. The report, there's another one. The report also says it must include the breakdown of the costs and time it took to complete the repairs and upgrades following the conversions at each PAC development, including, but not limited to work to address environmental hazards. Where in the report is that information as well?
It's the same answer again. I have a report here, and I don't know if you're looking at the same thing, but Appendix A to your specific question right now has that information.
We'll move on to the Comptroller's Office and their report audit. I believe we've asked every question. I don't know if we got every question answered. We're hoping to get information or get some clarity on the report that you require to release and actually hopefully find the report wherever you said you released it or you claim that it's at. Hopefully, get some clarification on where the report is at. Again, thank you so much for your time and your patience. Hopefully, we can get those follow-up responses. Have a good day.
Thank you.
We will now bring up the Deputy Comptroller, Maura Hayes Chafe. She's still here? Come on up. And we do welcome NYCHA to, please stay behind, to hear from the residents that you work for.
Good afternoon. As we get resituated, could I ask you to raise your right hand, please? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You may proceed when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Chair Banks and members of the Committee on Public Housing. My name is Maura Hayes Chafe. I am the Deputy Comptroller for Audit within the New York City Comptroller's Office. Thank you for convening this hearing and for the opportunity to give testimony today on behalf of the Comptroller's Office. Since the beginning of his term in January 2022, Comptroller Lander has prioritized the collection of input from NYCHA residents to inform which areas of NYCHA's performance to audit. While many previous Comptrollers have conducted many audits of NYCHA, this was the first time NYCHA resident input was sought and collected on a large scale. In 2022, the Comptroller's Office launched a multilingual public engagement process through surveys and town halls to ask residents about the issues they face and seek suggestions for audits. We then formed the first-ever NYCHA resident audit committee, who were presented with several ideas to choose from before voting and selecting the two audits that were subsequently conducted. One on NYCHA's oversight over repair contractors and another assessing eviction rates at PAC housing. The results of both audits have been published and are a matter of record, so I'll focus my comments today on findings related specifically to transparency and engagement issues that were identified. The contractor audit found, for example, that NYCHA does not seek feedback from NYCHA residents concerning contractors or the quality of the work they performed, even when the work was conducted in their apartments. The auditors collected 1,005 survey responses from residents living in 44 developments. 30% of the residents indicated the work performed was poor, and only 46% rated the work performed as good or better. Had NYCHA communicated with residents concerning their experiences with contractors, they would have this information. Shockingly, 93% of respondents who answered this question indicated they were never asked by NYCHA to rate their satisfaction with the work performed, and only 35% rated NYCHA's responsiveness in responding to issues with repairs as good or better. That means 65% of surveyed residents rated NYCHA's responsiveness below this level. NYCHA does not currently evaluate contractors hired to perform jobs valued at or below $50,000. Various developments do not share information concerning issues that have been encountered with NYCHA's central office or with other developments, and as indicated above, they make no concerted effort to collect data from residents concerning contractor performance. This is a missed opportunity. As laid out in a recent report, our office recommends creating a Yelp-like tool for NYCHA residents to give direct feedback on vendors. Those reviews would generate vendor scorecards that staff can use to assess performance when selecting a contractor. This would help hold contractors accountable, increase transparency, and ensure that repairs actually get done while rebuilding resident trust and improving living conditions for the 1 in 17 New Yorkers who call NYCHA home. The NYCHA Resident Audit Committee also voted on an audit to examine eviction rates for PAC properties compared to traditional Section 9 NYCHA developments. The audit found that eviction rates at PAC developments are higher than Section 9 NYCHA units and are now closer to eviction rates of the citywide private rental housing market. The eviction rates vary dramatically among PAC property managers, and these range from 0 to 1.11%, which is nearly twice the citywide rate. Additionally, NYCHA did not ensure that PAC property managers followed standard operating procedures for pre-eviction outreach and tenant protections. This means residents living in PAC developments may have received less counseling and fewer opportunities to cure non-payment or holdover issues before eviction proceedings were begun. NYCHA also failed to ensure that PAC property managers reported all eviction and pre-eviction activity as required. As a result, residents relying on data published by NYCHA to make decisions concerning their homes only have access to incomplete and inaccurate eviction data. Residents facing eviction for reasons other than non-payment are not entitled to a separate administrative proceeding before court proceedings are begun. This is information that NYCHA should ensure is clearly shared with residents. As the capital needs for NYCHA developments across the city continue to grow, residents are being faced with incredibly difficult choices. As some developments already have, many residents will be deciding whether they want to stay in Section 9, join the preservation trust, or convert to PAC in the coming years. It is key that residents have all of the information available about their rights as a tenant and potential outcomes as they make these consequential decisions. The Comptroller's Office will continue to prioritize responding to suggestions of residents on the issues they see in public housing. Whether about conversions or repairs, NYCHA must strengthen its oversight capacity to provide transparency for the over 500,000 NYCHA residents in New York City. Our office looks forward to working with the City Council to ensure NYCHA provides the transparency NYCHA residents deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Comptroller. Just want to ask you a few questions. Based on what you observed and learned through your audit of NYCHA, what are your biggest concerns about transparency or lack of transparency at NYCHA?
I think within the context of the two reports that we're here to talk about, our biggest concern with PAC reporting is that it's not accurate and it's not complete. When the auditors approached this question, they looked at the reporting that NYCHA had gathered and published. We also went to PAC housing, to the developments themselves, and collected paperwork to review and see whether there were inconsistencies. We finally looked at court filings and actual evictions from the New York City Housing Court and found that the numbers were not consistent. And that's a serious concern. You know, NYCHA residents need to know when they're making decisions. The other thing that's very striking, when you look at the PAC evictions, is that there's a very big difference between, among developers, rather than developers' managers. If you get one property manager, you know, there were several that had zero eviction rates. There are others that have markedly higher. And the ones that had the highest eviction rates differed between fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24.
What single change in NYCHA's operations would you make, would make the biggest difference in increasing transparency for residents?
I think for the PAC housing, they need to do a better job of validating the information that they're collecting from the developers, or rather, the property managers. Our impression, having looked at this, was that the reports come in, and the reports, while possibly reviewed, are not validated. So, the results should be validated before they're made public. That would ensure accuracy.
A big focus of this hearing is the challenges faced by residents and other members of the public in accessing information about NYCHA's decision-making operations. In your work, have you faced challenges in assessing or receiving information from NYCHA?
That's an interesting question. I mean, we ultimately received everything we requested, but it was a very lengthy process and involved a lot of repeated requests. But as I said, ultimately, what we needed to complete the two audits was provided.
Do these challenges relate to like NYCHA's record-keeping practices?
I think in some cases, they do. If you look at the contractor audit, there is a particular reference to records being in disarray. At one point, we were going to developments and asking for records and looking for records and found that NYCHA needed hours to go and identify the records that we were seeking.
Have you observed or faced resistance from NYCHA officials with regard to implementing transparency measures recommended by your office?
I don't know if I would call it resistance. I think, as NYCHA stated themselves, they do not believe that the results of our eviction evaluation are correct. They do not, they have not committed so far to validating the results that they receive from property managers. And if you look at the recommendation section of the report, you'll see that NYCHA committed to implementing four or five and disagreed with a series of others. In the contractor audit, they agreed overwhelmingly to implement. They agreed to implement, I think, 12 of 14, or 10 of 12. So, it's a much higher rate of agreement.
So, in knowledge, has NYCHA implemented any of the 14 recommendations from your December 24th audit report on evictions? And if NYCHA does not implement all 14 recommendations, are you concerned that problems revealed by the audit, such as the inaccurate reporting from the PAC managers, will persist?
We don't know the current status. Our practice is to follow up roughly three to four months after the audit is issued. So, our first follow-up should be coming up now. But yes, we share concerns. When we write recommendations, they are things that we are asking the auditee to consider, and we hope that they will implement.
Thank you. Based on your work around NYCHA, how would you assess NYCHA's communication and outreach as they compare? Do they compare between the residents in Section 9 housing versus residents in the PAC development?
Yeah, the audit didn't cover a comparison in terms of communication. We assume that there is better outreach in NYCHA, traditional NYCHA, because the eviction rates are lower. You know, those outreach efforts are designed to give residents as much opportunity to cure the defects that are underpinning the evictions before they go forward. We think, and it's speculation, but we think that there's less outreach. In fact, there was less outreach documented, and there are much higher eviction rates. I know that the eviction rates overall are still very low. For example, in all three, in the city as well, they're under 100%. Sorry, under 1%. But if you look at the comparison between traditional NYCHA and PAC, it's a very big difference.
All right. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Thank you. We are now going to go into public testimony. I'm now open up the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that the quorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed for the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion into the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic of transparency at NYCHA. If you have written, if you have a written statement or additional written testimony and you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@councilnyc.gov. Within 72 hours of the hearing, audio and video recordings will not be accepted. So, we're going to begin with Zulee Velasquez. Verity Gonzalez. Sandra Bumpers? Sandra Bumpers. I think she left. Carol Barnes. She left. Leila Gisico. Gisico. Okay. Those are the four. Okay. We can begin to our right. You have two minutes.
Good afternoon. Is it on? Oh, yes, it is.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you for really a very, very substantial hearing. We really appreciate all the pointed questions that you have already asked. My name is Leila Logi Gisico. I am the president of the City Club of New York. I am also the Democratic District Leader representing Chelsea. Today, I will be testifying on my own behalf. Chelsea has two very large NICA developments, Fulton and Elliott Chelsea. Both are undergoing federal environmental review, and both are slated for full demolition, according to NICA. In the course of engaging with this project, it has been incredibly difficult to get information from NICA. As you've heard today, a number of documents related to this very controversial proposal are still not available to the public. Among those, the obsolescence report, which is a document that is necessary to establish that the developments must be demolished, has yet to be provided by NICA. I have submitted already three separate FOIL requests, requesting a total of 10 separate documents. I have only received one, and I received it yesterday. It is heavily redacted and does not provide the financing information that we should be entitled to.
Can you make sure that red, the red button is on?
Is it on?
Okay, now it's on.
Much better. Okay. I will just go very quickly to add that we also have submitted a request to IBO, to the Independent Budget Office, asking them to do an investigation and an audit of this particular proposal. We urge the City Council to help get access to the documents requested through FOIL and also to support this request to IBO to get this information. Transparency is lacking. There is no trust without transparency. The project for Chelsea is billed at $1.9 billion. We need to know how these monies are going to be spent. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. You may begin.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon. Thank you for having us again. My name is Veronica Gonzalez. I represent myself, but not only myself, my fellow tenants, and also others that are suffering through the hands of NICA and also of RAD, PACT. I'm here to be a voice for everyone. And basically, I'm going to summarize what I'm here for. I've seen my families who suffered through the hands of NICA for many years. I am also a child, a product child of the Lower East Side for over 40 years, and I firsthand seen my family being affected by this, of NICA, with their negligence and the way they're handling things and the fact that they don't care about their own tenants. They are a prophet. They are not what they care about at the end of the day. And for me, particularly the reason why I'm here is to voice other people and help them and to also be part of the community and let their voices be heard and be seen. And when RAD came here, PACT, forgive me, and they came here to tell the lies and deceit to us, the public, about what they're doing for us, they're not. They're here to look out for themselves. End of the day, I hope and pray that everything you heard of, everyone that spoke about them, and you make a final decision and make sure that RAD, PACT does not affect us, Jacob Rees Houses, or any houses that are being affected of this matter and this reason of well-being. That's the reason why I'm here, to fight for everyone who are in this room to know that they are not being, they're being heard, and they're not gonna be despaired and basically being rejected. And we need to all fight and unite together. This is the reason why I'm here, and I thank you for your time, and thank you so much for hearing all our voices to be heard and knowing RAD, PACT are not here for us. They're here to make a profit. That's it.
Thank you for your advocacy.
Thank you so much.
Jason?
No.
You may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Jason Morello. I am a member of the New York State Conservator Party. I'm also a longtime advocate and resident of NICA, Jacob Rees Houses, for over 30 years. And I am also running for City Council as well, and District Two. And I hope to be with you as a colleague, fighting the good fight regarding this issue very soon. But here's my official statement. So I am Jason Morello, and I am here today because NICA residents, our neighbors, our families, are being left to suffer. For years, we watched public housing fall into deeper despair. We've seen broken elevators, toxic mold, crumbling ceilings, no heat in the winter, no gas in the summer. We've seen lives put at risk, seniors trapped in their apartments, children breathing in hazardous, hazardous conditions. And what have our so-called leaders done? They have handed our homes over to PACT, RAD, a privatization scheme designed as a solution stood by, I'm sorry, they promised us better conditions, but what have we gotten instead? More evictions, more neglect, more mismanagement. They are taking public housing out of public hands, stripping residents of their rights and silencing the very people who built these communities. And Councilmember Carolina Rivera, Assemblymember Harvey Epstein, and Governor Hokel stood by as this all has happened. And they told us that we'll fight for public housing. But when the time came, they failed us, and they let NICA deteriorate. They let private developers take over and let the people, our people, be pushed out.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Zulay Velasquez from Rees, and I just want to talk about a few things. So one thing I want to say is that around May, me and a few other people started petitioning against the privatization. And we gathered here, we have over 600 petitions that state that we, the residents, basically have not given the Tenant Association any verbal or written permission to make decisions on our behalf regarding RAD, especially one so sensitive that could displace us, right? The Tenant Association process, even the C-COP or the D-COP, that whole structure is compromised, right? But not only is it compromised, right, from the top, like, they have, NICA's controlling that. How is NICA controlling this, right? So they're controlling this, and at this point, even though they say that they are the elected people, right, the process in which they do it is not, is not good. But here it says, "Has the Tenant Association asked you your opinion about RAD, PACT?" Now, the residents, we are all the members. They're all operating with bylaws that are over 30 years old. Not good. So in there, it says, "Collect fees." In there, it says, "The membership is their committees." But you know what? We are all members. So they didn't come to us and say, "Hey, do you want this?" Before they came in, they just said, "We're gonna do it." But we are members, all of us. And all these 600-plus people, which I'm gonna submit as evidence, is basically saying, "No, no to RAD already. We've already said no to that, okay?" Now, in regards to the voting process, we had a Tenant Association election, and they stopped it. They stopped it because they tampered with our process. They changed order around, put people in different places, and then wanted us to go through with election. It was a recording that stopped it, but they could have also done the right thing. But instead of doing the right thing, they just canceled it so they can pause just enough time to do the RAD, PACT election.
30 seconds to wrap it up.
Okay. RAD, PACT election. And so now, they're knocking on people's doors, and they even violated the ADA rules for the people who are disabled. Blind lady doesn't know what's going on at Rees, okay? You have people who are being told at the door, basically, they called me yesterday to sign. So they're getting signatures from people. The ballot is really unclear. They now say in the package, I think, that you're gonna get a physical ballot, so this is gonna be a mail, or like a virtual kind of ballot. They can falsify that. They say, "We only got five apartments. We got over 100 empty apartments." So how, yeah, exactly. So, I mean, we need to make sure that those empty apartments don't get votes. That's number one. Number two, HUD told them to start an election over again, not the nomination process for the TA. But what they're doing at Rees is that, since I ran on a platform that, against the privatization, they stopped that because if it goes through the other, other current TA and they say yes, then I can't stop it when I get in.
Right, right.
And that's what's going on here, because they could have paused, they're not done anything, just continue election, election, and they didn't do that.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. We'll now have Renee Keith, David Holowak, Lydia Andre, and Alexia Cruz. Thank you, guys. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Cruz. Lydia Andre.
Yes.
She left. David Holowak. Holowak. And Alexia Cruz?
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that. And Renee?
Renee.
Renee Keith, okay. Sorry about that, Ms. Cruz.
That's okay.
Karen Blondell. Ms. Blondell. Caesar Godwell.
He's gone.
And Carla Hollingsworth. We will get to you, sir. Okay, we're gonna begin to our right. Thank you, ma'am. You may begin.
That's your right.
Well, my right, sorry. So, but since it's, unless you wanna, okay, you wanna start, Ms. Cruz? Ms. Cruz, go ahead, Ms. Cruz. And then we'll, yeah.
Hi. Sorry.
Ms. Cruz is gonna go then, Will.
First.
We'll go this way and come this way. It's all right.
Heather, you could go first.
You may begin, Ms. Cruz.
Oh, the elderly, right? Thank you. Good evening, good afternoon. I'm a resident of NICA for a long time. I've been a resident since 1969, and I feel that NICA is giving us a slap in the face. You could see the empty room, that they don't even want to listen to our testimony. You know, they don't care. I believe that, I believe in Section 9. I want no demolition in Chelsea, Elliott, and Fulton. And I believe that these people are land-grabbed, money-grabbed people that don't care about the low-income people. And I believe we are all going, within time, we're gonna go homeless. There's gonna be a lot of homelessness. We have homelessness as it is from other, from other buildings. And what they're doing is trying to get rid of us from the city. And where are we going? Where are we going? Nowhere. We don't have no money to buy a house. We have no money, there's no means. The only thing that saved me for years was NICA, because I worked on a low income, and I'm retired, and it's scary. And I come here for help, and I beg you to take it to consideration, all the tenants and all the people that are homeless with all those empty apartments that they have in NICA, the 5,000 apartments, they could put homelessness, homeless people in there, and we can continue with the Section 9. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Cruz. Go ahead, ma'am. You may begin.
Thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
Make sure the red light is on.
Yes.
And just put the mic in front of you, ma'am. There we go.
Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Carla Hollingsworth, and I'd like to speak about something that I am really passionate about, living at Stuyvesant Gardens. I moved in on May 23rd, 1990, with my three children. I've had to endure deplorable conditions for decades, and I have lived in three different buildings of the development. The nonexistent insulation, compounded with the radiators that shoot steam at times, causes mold to grow in our closets, and the bathroom vents have never worked, caused the mold to grow in our bathrooms. Then there are the leaks from above that are covered up and never found. By covered up, I mean they will open up the ceiling or the wall and eventually close it back up without finding the leak. The dampness attracts the roaches which live in the walls, coexisting with the mice that you can often hear scurrying in the walls. After attending meetings where I've asked what the permanent plans are for our development, which was originally built as temporary housing, I've never received an answer. I was asked by one of the people who descended on the development, knocking on doors and spreading misinformation about PACT, what I wanted, and when I answered accountability, I was told that I should be happy with a nice apartment. I keep being told that I have no choice because NICA doesn't have the money to do the necessary repairs. This is not the fault of the tenants. I keep being told that NICA has been underfunded for decades, but they don't mention the misappropriated funds throughout the decades. And in light of all that we have been through over the years, we are now being told that we have to trust the entity that has not done the right thing by us to be the oversight of the entities that they have chosen to do what they couldn't. Unfair. But so they tell me we don't have a choice. Why? Other developments got the opportunity to choose.
30 seconds to wrap up.
Other developments got the opportunity to choose the route they wanted to take moving forward. Why not us? Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Renee?
So, in 2019, the discussion was about the possible demolition of two Fulton Houses buildings. Now, we're on the verge of trying to demolish 22 buildings in Fulton and Elliott Chelsea. What I'd like to discuss, the subject of the survey brought up by public advocate Williams. The problem is not how the votes took place. There wasn't a vote. It was a survey, a temperature check, as Simon Kowitski, VP of Portfolio Planning, has said. May 20th, the survey closed. May 26th, draft PHA Annual Agency Plan for Fiscal Year 2024, you see marked demolition and disposition. Six days later, impossible, manufactured consent. The survey wasn't for PACT, but for new construction and rezoning, or in reality, demolition or rehabilitation. The NICA RFP to Implement a Community-Driven Preservation and Investment Strategy for Fulton and Elliott Chelsea, key updates and the third round of questions and answers. NICA wants to remind applicants that this RFP includes the option to submit an additional alternative scenario that deviates from the recommendations of the Chelsea Working Group, but still achieves the goal of providing comprehensive repairs to the four properties and creating an enhanced built environment with additional amenities for NICA residents. The important part, applicants are encouraged to think creatively about design interventions. They may not have been considered a part of the Working Group process and should clearly explain the benefit that provides to NICA residents. The Resident Review Committee must select a project that is financially sound, and that may mean a proposal that is different from the proposed development scenario recommended by the Working Group. First thing the Working Group said, no demolition. This tells us there was a lack of transparency. Only through backtracking were we able to find these. It tells us from the beginning, this was a convoluted plan. Yes, a plan to unhome us.
30 seconds to wrap it up.
Okay. And also, residents who participate in the Resident Review Committee will also sign a confidentiality and conflict of interest agreement. This was never in the thought of the residents. We are real estate to them. They are leveraging us, our lives, our homes. They are leveraging us, our lives, our homes. This needs to be understood. We are not here for anyone's profit or gain.
Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Chase, you may begin.
Hey, good morning. My name is Christina Chase. I am an advocacy coordinator at Take Root Justice, but above all, I'm a long-term Nycha resident and have been for almost 30 years. I have a lot to say, but I will start with the fact that there's no transparency on how a Nycha property is selected to convert to the RAD PAC program, despite what we've heard. Conversions that have taken place are neighborhoods experiencing rapid gentrification and pose a real estate investment rather than a commitment to meaningfully serve the longstanding residents who built that community. We are seen as joint ventures, not families living in homes. There's no transparency for residents who do not want RAD PAC. Those are the residents who are often intimidated and silenced. But we, the tenants who are here today, will no longer live in fear and refuse to be quiet. We do not want RAD PAC for our homes and for the city of New York at large. We understand the consequences of this conversion as leaseholders and as citizens, and the erosion of Section 9 public housing that results from these conversions, the erosion of the right to housing as a public good. Residents have lost the right to transfer despite their right to reasonable accommodations. Even if they've been waiting for several years, their accommodation requests are canceled. We do not even know the implications for domestic violence survivors and if their rights to transfer are being honored, or if their emergency situations necessitating relocation are being ignored. I have residents calling me scared that the RAD PAC team is at their development and being harassed and intimidated to sign leases for a conversion that HUD has not even approved, as in the case of Boston Seacor, who actually testified here not too long ago. This is unlawful. There are residents who have converted to RAD PAC who are pleading to go back to Section 9, but there's no reversal to such a permanent decision that reduces our public housing stock and endangers our rights as public housing residents. To Nycha, this is a real estate transaction. To us, this is our lives, this is our homes. Stop playing with our lives. I would be remiss not to mention our brothers, sisters, and siblings over at Fulton, Elliot, and Chelsea Houses. The FEC plan is an example of the most egregious and extractive plan for a public housing conversion that is blatantly about greed and profit than it is about providing a dignified home for Nycha residents. We need our council members to step up and say no to demolition, no to privatization, and no to giving our city-owned land away to private developers. We need an investigation both into RAD PAC as well as infill. We also want to know where all the money from infill and transfer of development rights is going, especially the monies that are supposed to go back into the development. Until there is proper investigation and resolution, we need the city council to put a moratorium on all RAD PAC conversions as well as infill. Thank you.
Okay, panel, thank you for your testimony. And we're gonna move on to Reginald Bowman. Thank you. Amelia Walden? Ms. Walden? Mr. Martinez, Manuel? And Ted Burrows? And can we have Mateen?
Sorry?
Oh, yes. Okay. We may begin. We can start with Mr. Martinez.
Thank you so much. Okay, Red is, okay. Nycha, Red is, Red is means go, right? I'm sorry. Good afternoon. Thank you for, for having this hearing, and I just wanna commend the chair for conducting a well, a well-presented questioning of, of Nycha. My name is Manny Martinez. I'm the resident council president for South Jamaica Houses, also once the Queens CCOP Chair, I mean, once the Queens South District Chair. I would like to start off the statement with a regulation to answer Nycha's comment of only having two obligations. They forgot this one. And this is 964-135C, which says, while a housing authority has responsibility for management operations, it shall ensure strong resident participation in all issues and facets of its operations through the duly-elected resident councils at public housing developments, something that's not happening. Many resident councils exercise their autonomy with signed resolutions publicly presented denouncing and dissolving CCOP, the Nycha-created, permanent, citywide resident organization. Today, I stand with the voices of resident councils across this city that have denounced CCOP and declared Nycha's recognition of CCOP a lie. For 34 years, CCOP has been Nycha's greatest fraud, a 218 resident council-wide wall built to block real resident power. It stops us from influencing Nycha's workplace rules, rules that control our economic rights, our safety, and our dignity in, in the very buildings we call home. Matters of Section 3, compliance are made up by Nycha's executives and staff inconsistent with the law and changing with every meeting. Nycha itself recently admitted to the chair of, of this committee that it created CCOP. Nycha decided its structure, picked its procedures, and without shame, declared its belief that it can speak and decide for us as if we are assets owned, not people served. May, may I have 30 seconds?
Yes, 30 seconds to wrap it up.
Resident councils are elected by public housing residents under the authority of federal legislation to represent our communities with strong participation in all matters concerning Nycha. We see Nycha's deception in real dollars. A million-dollar city allocation secured by, by this council's first black speaker was quietly slashed by 60% without telling residents, without telling the speaker, only revealing it months before construction was set to begin. And where is CCOP? In secret weekly Zoom meetings with Nycha every Thursday, not to hold them accountable, but to serve as Nycha's cover. A box checked off while Nycha cuts out the voices of resident population, while Nycha cuts out the voices of a resident population the size of the 50th largest city in the U.S. CCOP is a wall that keeps us away from Nycha's top executives while they cut deals collectively, totaling billions of dollars with contractors, developers, and nonprofits at our expense. Resident councils and residents continue to express deep confusion about RAD PAC changes and their rights while Nycha claims that everything is working great. This is because CCOP blocks resident councils from changing Nycha's policies on its approach to RAD. They haven't, they've stated that they haven't heard complaints from residents on RAD. That's because the eight CCOP members are the only residents they listen to. It's time to tear this Nycha-created CCOP wall down. We demand the rights of our representation restored. We denounce and demand the dissolution of CCOP. Nycha does not speak for us. Our rights are not discretionary. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Walden.
Hi, I'm from Pitt Worthman Houses.
Ms. Walden, pull the mic down to your, pull the mic down.
Can we rescind our conversion with PAC-RAD? Can we?
That's a discussion that needs to be held.
Okay. Pitt Worthman was not given the opportunity to accept or deny PAC-RAD. Management, some of the management is disrespectful. We always tell them, respect us as we respect you. They give you short appointments when they have construction going on. You may only be notified a week before, and they expect you to be in. And I was told by one manager that they don't give appointments. I was the one that got management at 914, the mayor's office, to give us confirmation ticket numbers. When they have your appointments, they are not respecting appointment dates. Sometimes they don't even show up. I still have work orders from 2023. All of these are my work orders. So when they say the day come out, they don't do what they need to do. Okay. Can we request, like, all Zoom meetings from them from December of 2021? Because a lot of discrepancies when it's Zoom meetings that we had. And I'm understanding.
You mean from the?
From when they started.
From, you, you mean the, the.
COVID came into play.
The owners or the builders or the management team?
The managers.
Okay.
Okay, I understand RAD is a program and not law. And we received letters from Nycha at one point stating that tenants cannot opt out. If you do not sign, you will be evicted, if you do not sign the lease.
30 seconds, and we'll, Walden to wrap it up.
As far as no voting, they only needed 20% they're saying of the tenants to agree. Under the RAD program, we understand there's about 57% of tenants being evicted. And we had a power outage. Management swore that they notified, which they did not. So we hope that doesn't happen again. The pipes and the plummets was never changed. We're still having leaks in the apartments, in the walls, and in the lobby. Elevators are constantly out of order. And Nycha has one tenant in court, in housing court. Other tenants have been to housing court, but Nycha only showed up at one tennis court appearance, and we would like to know why was that? When you call in for the repairs at night, there's no numbers given. And I would also like.
You mean there's no confirmation numbers or order numbers?
Yeah, I have it because when Ms. Alexander was the first manager, I went and told her Nycha gave confirmation numbers, and she did give it. So they put it at the top of the paper.
But it wasn't an automatic confirmation number given to you?
I have so many here.
Okay.
But when you go back, because I still have orders from previous, the same complaint, when you go back, what they do is give you that same repeat paper because they say the ticket is not closed out, but they have the date, the new date that you did come in at the very, very bottom.
Okay. All right. Thank, thank you for your.
And I would like, also like to know, I have an apartment door, and it's defected. It has about almost, not quite a half-inch gap at the door side and the bottom because HUD had, HPD had to come in when the management refused to correct the door correctly. So, but now they want to put weather stripping on my door rather than, the new door they put there, they wanna put weather stripping, and I refuse to have weather stripping because that can also catch fire. The way the gap is now, if it's a fire, smoke will come into the apartment. Slam locks, I'd like to know if you could look into that. Is that mandatory? Because that put everyone at risk, even the disabled people or people that's not able to get around, like if they go to empty their garbage and, or the home attendant, you know, may get locked out, then your patient is at jeopardy for not being able to get to that patient in a timely manner.
Thank, thank you for your testimony, and those concerns will, will reach out. You are constituted in my district, so I'm well aware of the slam lock issue that's been ongoing at.
And they do come into your apartment without your permission?
Thank you.
They came in on me while my family was there because we had an agreement to relocate me for the renovation, and I wasn't refusing, but I told them, I'm not gonna let them come in and dig up my wall and my closet. And put me at jeopardy. So when they come in for your renovations, you better make sure they have the right equipment. If you don't speak up and speak out, you will be a lost cause.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Walden. Sir?
Hi, council. My name is Ted, Ted Burrows. I represent a nonprofit organization that I founded called A Vision for Change. And my take here is to essentially have been, to be a consultant and to help a lot of the tenant presidents who are going through this forced conversion. But I wanted, before I got into the forced conversion, I just wanted to say really quickly, this is so much more than just about a forced conversion or just about the Nycha problem. This is a black and brown problem that is being amplified through gradual gentrification. Okay? They are trying to kick out the low-income residents of these developments, and they're doing it in a hurry. And they need to bypass resident, uh, presidents, they need to bypass residents' desires in order to make this happen. They have to have a steamroll model, and that's what they're using. One of the things I'd like to specifically address is that, for instance, I've been helping out Stuyvesant Gardens, and I witnessed firsthand that, for instance, the president would put up advertisements for the tenant association meeting, and then the next day or within hours, there would be advertisements right next to hers from RAD PAC. We hear the residents calling her specifically stating that RAD PAC is threatening them, telling them that their locks will be drilled and they will be, the unit will be forcibly entered if they do not comply. These are all against the law. What I wanted to really wrap this up, though, and say is that every last one of these developments still have recourse, and they are not actively using that. Where Nycha presents that there's three options, the trust, RAD PAC, or Section 9, I would actually argue that there are four choices. The fourth choice is a resident management corporation, which is, can be specifically established.
30 seconds to wrap it up.
Thanks, sir. Which can be, a resident management corporation can be specifically established to push back against Nycha. Residents can actually come together, form this type of corporation, and request funds from HUD directly and do not need to go through Nycha, but they do not tell us that this option exists. I will be helping several developments to convert and to understand their rights under 24964.18, 430, under 42USC, under the numerous state laws that also protect tenants, and then as well under the New York City laws. There are several options, and, and I, I think that going forward, we need to let the tenants know that they have an option to self-manage.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Mateen?
Thank you, Chair Bax. My name is Mateen Sarsay. The opinions shared in this testimony are based upon my own experience and do not necessarily represent the views of the housing authority as an employee. If you have time to go through thousands of pages related to practices, policies, and procedures, then you already know how Nycha works on paper. To Nycha's credit, these sources are publicly available. I use them regularly to avoid retaliation because outspoken employees are targets. However, my issue isn't what's on paper. My issue with transparency in Nycha stems from the fact that they are forced to comply with the system that regularly pits city interests over those of our residents. The Office of the Mayor has direct control over the performance of this authority through their ability to appoint leadership. Nycha's board is too small. They do not meet for every committee under the federal agreement, and this guarantees that the authority is only as effective as its mayor will allow. This year's mayor's management report, for example, uses broken repair metrics to hide the true length of time it takes for residents to receive repairs or rehabilitate vacant units. Where Nycha appears in the MMR, they do not appear in the city's adopted budget. Funding allocations are made through individual agencies, identifying Nycha as a footnote, making it difficult for the public to obtain qualitative information on the city's agenda. Nycha's 2023 physical needs assessment purposefully admits the existence of over 400 community facilities to inflate the cost of repairs per unit, meaning if you were to look at the capital tracker versus the capital needs tracker, you will only see community centers in one of those. When the city makes decisions on rezoning, it does so without our residents sneaking disposition through Nycha's draft agency plan. Instead, residents are offered the illusion of choice: privatize, join the trust, or enjoy government-enforced misery. If this city cares about affordable housing, then it's time to redirect the welfare checks from developers to the only true affordable housing stock. And I suggest that if we're gonna do that, Nycha needs a reform. We need to increase the number of board members, diversify that stakeholder, provide actual oversight, remove mayoral control, and deviate from private partnerships in favor of social enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you, panel, for your testimony. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, well, and we'll be back. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and we'll be back. This meeting is, committee hearing is called back to order. We're going to proceed with our panel for testimony. We have John Mudd. He left? Thank you. Monica Royer Horn. Ken Bravo. Galeno Francis Francois. Christopher Leon Johnson. And Sharon Brown. Sharon Brown? Okay.
Can I go first, or?
You may begin, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, hello, Chair Baggs. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. I'm here to show my support for anybody and everybody that want to make sure that NYCHA stays public and NYCHA gets the real transparency it needs. Now, the issue here is that there's a lot of divide, and this NYCHA movement, the people trying to save their housing, while at the same time, there's people that are upset at organizations that are trying their best to prevent NYCHA being privatized. Those are the same people that want NYCHA to be privatized. We don't know, is it a reason because they're getting, they're looking for arts credit? They're looking for arts and residency credits? You know, I'll tell people this right now, that NYCHA got to be public. It cannot be privatized. People got to save Section 9. It cannot go to Section 8. Don't let the tenant leaders, Tenant Association presidents, that are getting paid off under the table to guide you and saying that RAD and PAC is good for you guys because of repairs and upgrades. Because with the upgrades and repairs, you're, you're going to be, it's going to be looking like Stuytown at the expense of you guys being displaced. This is all about displacement of the current tenants of these developments, especially Fulton Chelsea. And what they want to do is replace them with the YIMBs, the Open Year For All, Transall, Open Plans folks, and want to get rid of the people that's paying by $100 a month in rent. So I'll tell people this right now, you people got to unite, unite, no matter what. Shout to the PSL for coming out today and supporting. Shout to Jason Barilio, who's running for city council in the second district as a Republican conservative for supporting. And be careful, be careful with all the people that are backed by Theo Chino, who's running for public advocate, that is pushing for the privatization of NYCHA. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We're going to now move to, we'll move to Ken. You may proceed.
I'm just here to tell you a quick story. My next, first of all, I appreciate you asking all those questions, and I appreciate how I noticed, you noticed, they couldn't have any answers that you were looking for. I appreciate that. I'd like to say that I have an next-door neighbor who's 84 years old. She's an old, very intelligent Latin woman. She only speaks English, I mean, Spanish. And when I told her about one of these resident engagement meetings, she says she couldn't go, because, you know, she's fragile, she couldn't go. I told her, well, send your son. This way, he can represent you and be there for you. When he went over there to go into this meeting, they didn't let him in, because his name was not on the list. They didn't let anyone in unless your name was on the list. I showed them my press badge. That didn't get me in. The only way I got in was because I am a resident of Jacob Rees Housing. It's obvious that RAD PAC and NYCHA are together. They, if you're against them, they will bully you into either deciding, yes, fine, I'll go, leave me alone, or, you know, let's continue talking about this, because I don't think you see the whole thing. In my opinion, what they're doing is they're selling us dreams. Yeah, they can fix our apartments, whatever it is. Yeah, it takes a year and a half to get tiles on my floor that I'm still waiting for. But, you know, I, you know, and then it takes an hour and a half to wait on the phone during the week to get a ticket in. But on a Monday, you can't even get a ticket. They don't even answer the phones on Mondays. The reason I'm bringing all this up is because I didn't know RAD PAC was part, was coming into our Rees until November, and I've been living there for 30 years. Okay? The Tenant Association and RAD PAC shouldn't be signing NDAs. There's no reason for them to be signing NDAs. For what I take from that is, they're being paid under the table to make a decision for us, and I don't get, they don't have the right to make that decision for me. Because they don't even post anything. I just wanted to bring that up to you guys.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Thank you.
Take care. You can be seated, seated until the panel gets up together. It's all right. You may begin your testimony, sir.
Hi, my name is Galeno Francois. I live in the 41st District in Tilden Houses Development, and I'm just here to bring attention how the Tilden management there has been asking my family to redo the annual every time. We did our annual back in November. We spoke to the housing assistant. She's, she gave her, we gave her all the documents, and everything was approved. We got a new lease. But recently, before the year, this year started in December, they asked us again to redo the annual. We went down to the office saying, why we need to redo the annual? Was something wrong with the documents we submitted? Her statement was, well, I don't know. The head, the head NYCHA office is just asking my, our family to redo the annual again and everybody in the building. So I didn't seek some, I just come here because I don't know what else to do with NYCHA, because it's not the first time they've been asking us to redo the annual. It's been a constant, like, almost every year, they're doing the same thing with us. We do the annual, the documents is accepted according to the housing assistant, and then before the year ends or going into the next cycle, they ask us to redo the annual again. So I'm just coming out here to bring that attention for my family and also the residents of the Tilden development there, what's going on, because that's a common occurrence. Thank you.
That concludes your testimony?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much, sir, for your advocacy. She's got it, when she's done, she can. Yeah, that's all right.
Hello, my name is Sharon Brown. Before I begin, remember Israel, defend Israel, release the hostages, let Yahweh's people go. Okay, for NYCHA, this is one of the other situations for a city council hearing that I keep hearing the same thing over and over about NYCHA. I've seen them on the news, and the thing that they keep complaining about is that they haven't had repairs. I see them during Christmas season, they don't have heat, they don't have hot water, they don't have this, they don't have that, they don't have repairs. Now, they're trying to make them sign certain things. If I was in those situations, I probably wouldn't want to sign with them again, because they haven't seemed to met their end of the bargain for just the simple repairs. So why would I trust them once again to go into a contract with them for something else? So I, I feel for the people who live in NYCHA, because for many, many years and probably decades, I've heard things about NYCHA. Now, I know as America, we are wonderful, and we do treat our people good. Probably most of NYCHA doesn't deal with this kind of situation. But for some reason, this is happening in NYCHA to certain people, and they keep coming back. Two years, like I saw maybe two or three years ago, someone on TV saying, oh, this has been happening for two years. That was two or three years ago, and it was happening for two years or longer. So there needs to be something done now to get this situation under wraps. There was a tenant, the first panel that came on, she said she doesn't know where she's going to go, where is she going to live? Can we find out who she is and get her some help right away to avoid her being homeless? So people can't be evicted until they have comparable accommodations. And in this situation, I don't know if they should be evicted at all. NYCHA is going to wind up owing these tenants money for all the repairs they had to suffer not having. So a lot of the tenants are not, sorry, they're not in arrears. They're probably owed money by NYCHA, the city, or whoever, because they had to live in those kind of conditions.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you to this panel. Is Monica Royal Horn, Horn available? Oh, Monica. Mo. Ms. Monica, you're going to press that red button, and you can bring the mic closer if you need to.
Okay, thank you.
You may begin. You may begin.
Okay, all right. Well, as you know, thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I'm going to make this very quick and brief. All right, my name is Monica Royal Horn. I'm a retired of the New York City Police Department. I dedicated 25 years of my life serving the city of New York. I now dedicate much of my spare time serving the elderly in the community as an advocate for the elderly. While living in Linden Houses, I've seen many things that most productive and law-abiding residents, myself included, don't approve of. And it affects the quality of our lives. There are five factors associated with the quality of life. Physical health, psychological condition, independence, relationships with others, and the environment in which I live. I'm here to inform you two of those factors. My physical health and my psychological condition have been deeply altered. I recall the day my mother and I moved into Linden Houses. We had to step over a blood-stained sidewalk where crime had occurred. I remember wondering if we made a mistake moving into the development. My mother has passed on, but while she has, while she was here, we eventually grew to love the place. She was very active in the community and loved her garden in front of the building at 295 Cozine Linden Houses, which brought her so much joy. As years pass, I notice many changes in the community that definitely affected the quality of life for many residents. Outsiders were coming into the community harassing our elderly. Strange men and women who may have been sexual predators or had criminal records were around our children and seniors. And on a daily basis, needless to say, they, as well as myself, were placed in potentially dangerous-
You have a minute, extra minute to wrap it up?
Yes.
All right.
So I want to say, I noticed, this is my first time coming to this meeting. I didn't appreciate most of the NYCHA individuals, employees, if you will, leaving so soon, not hearing everything, but I'm hoping that they'll see this. But right now, I think the next time that we do have a meeting like this, that the federal government should be here as well, somebody from the federal government. And also, I want NYCHA to pay more attention to the tenants that are now living in this development. I remember years ago when NYCHA, when people had felony records, they weren't allowed to live in there. I live now next door to people that have felony records. I don't know who they are. Some of them are not even on the lease. And it scares me, because I don't know who they are, and neither does NYCHA, neither does CNC Management, LM. They don't know who these people are, but I see them in the apartment, and it's frightening to me. I have to worry about my coming and going. So that needs to be rectified again. If people have felony records, they should not be allowed to live next door to other residents, especially our seniors and our elders and our children that's in the neighborhood.
Thank you for your testimony.
You're quite welcome, Chris.
All right, appreciate you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Have a good one. All right, so now, that is the end of our in-person testimonies. We will now move to our Zoom testimony, and we will now turn to the remote testimony. Once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the Sergeant of Arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the Sergeant of Arms to announce that you, that you may begin before delivering your testimony. April Summers?
You may begin.
I'm here.
Okay, you may begin.
Hey, hello, thank you. Good afternoon, Chris, and members of the committee. My name is April Summers. I'm the treasurer of the Tenant Association, Association and Resident. I'm here today to demand action on two urgent crisis affecting the residents of LaGuardia Houses. The ongoing neglect of our living conditions and the blatant misuse of federal tenant participation activity funds. For years, our common areas have been left in filth. Floors are covered in layers of grime. Instructional stickers from the '70s are faded and peeling, and our elevators and walls are stained and neglected. Despite repeated complaints, management continues to ignore this problem. I personally reached out to Tony Herbert, NYC NYCHA liaison for the mayor's office for help. His response, that I should speak with the president of my tenant association. That's unacceptable. The mayor's office, NYCHA, and this city must take responsibility for ensuring safe, clean, and dignified living for the living conditions for NYCHA residents. Meanwhile, the trash situation at LaGuardia Houses is appalling. Meanwhile, the trash situation at LaGuardia Houses is appalling. Garbage piles up on sidewalks and between buildings instead of being properly disposed of. Loose garbage blows through our development daily, making it look more like a landfill than a home. This is not just a quality of life issue, it is a public health crisis. This is an ongoing failure of NITRA and this city, and it must be addressed immediately. Financial mismanagement, where's the oversight? Beyond sanitation issues, there's another crisis, the misuse of our federal TPA funds. Our Tenant Association President, Danette Chavez, has been allowed to misuse these funds unchecked.
Your time has expired?
And nobody is stopping her. Despite clear HUD regulations.
Your time has expired?
Pardon me?
Your time, your time is up, ma'am. Would you like an additional 30 seconds to wrap it up?
Yes, I would, please.
Okay, you may proceed.
Despite clear regulations, knowing is, is checking this behavior. He and officials include Yucca Bazwith, Curtis Williams, and Daniel Sherrod. It's time to hold NITRA accountable for their failure to maintain sanitary living conditions, conduct an independent audit into the financial mismanagement of LaGuardia Houses' TPA funds, demand HUD, NITRA, and responsible officials enforce their own financial rules, no exceptions, no excuses. Tenants are not second-class citizens. We work here, we live here, we raise our families here. We're not asking for special treatment. We're demanding the dignity and respect every New Yorker deserves. This council has the power to act and I urge you to use it now. Special shout out to Rodney, Detective Rodney Rosado of the fifth. Thank you for your continued support. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Summers. Karen Blondo.
You may begin.
Ms. Bondo? Okay, there we go. You may begin your testimony.
Um, I'm glad rental assistance demonstration and PAC was created by the Obama administration in 2008. It was their own choice at the time and it was trash in regards to the residents. I hated RAD back in 2008, but when I see a problem, I immediately look for a solution. My solution was to learn about RAD PAC and to elevate the resident concerns, especially in RAD house, which at the time were focused around fear of being misplaced amongst other concerns. I then advocated for and helped with the creation of the New York City Preservation Trust and this brings me to C-COP, the Citywide Council of Presidents. Our job as duly-elected NITRA representatives, I'm the president of RAD West, is to provide the residents with all the information and options available. All information and options available, so that they can decide for themselves. Instead, members of C-COP and their collaborators of sorts did have decided that their position is the only position NITRA residents should have. We, the duly-elected Resident Council of RAD West and the RAD West Resident Association, are recognized by the New York City Housing Authority under the HUD Act of 1937 and regulated by 24 CFR 964. We ask that C-COP be dissolved immediately. C-COP does not speak for the RAD houses. C-COP has been in position for 33 years. I think the only way people leave off of that particular, um, uh, alleged counsel is when they die. Uh, that is not acceptable.
Your time has expired?
When you talk about RAD practices that went on with, with resident leaders undiscussed, a lot of them.
Ms. Bondo, your, 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 your time has expired, but I'll give you 30, 30 seconds to wrap it up.
I have one minute, 40 seconds. I'm timing myself too. So let's just quit all of this and go to the other question, Chris. And that is, can you give me the accurate number of conversions since you stood behind me and pretty much threatened me in 2000? Thank you.
Can you repeat the question or does it conclude your testimony?
Question, you can let me conclude even though I had a whole minute left because I'm timing myself. But anyway, that's even here in the air because my complaint is voiced as a 903 to HUD. Um, my question to you is, I saw you and you said there were 82 or 83,000 RAD conversions in New York City. And I told you that it was more like 23,000. Did you get that number today in this hearing? Thank you.
Based off the question, I do remember, we were talking about the units that went, that were converted under RAD. Am I correct? Right, and we said that there was, I think it was 80-something thousand units that were converted and another 62,000 slated to be, uh, converted. I stand by those numbers. I believe NITRA did, uh, they said they were gonna get back to us on new numbers today. Um, and I believe on the PAC side, they said it was a 23,000 or 21,000 units that were converted or that were transferred over on the PAC side. Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Blondo. Okay, Simone Hall.
Your time has begun.
Ms. Hall?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, you may.
Thanks for having, thanks for having me. My name is Simone Hall. I live in Boston Seacor Houses in the Bronx. Boston Seacor is a federal building and Section 9 is a federal program. Before RAD PAC, things were okay, but now it's different with privatization. Living in NITRA allowed me to raise three engineers and then I went to college and earned an associate's degree. We were happy, but not now. Repair tickets weren't canceled back then as they are now. Now repairs are not being done at all and there are new rules and regulations. I always paid my rent on time within the first five days of the month. Now, RAD statements arrive here very late in the mail, up to 18 days after the due date. Tenants are scared about being evicted because of all the threats and bullying. This has even extended, these threats have even extended to my family members who were led to believe by phone that a real emergency occurred concerning me when what was really the matter was the management was trying to get them to convince me to sign the PAC lease. So, oh, let me go now. Now, I'm in, I'm in touch with the Executive Secretary, uh, to the Director of Section 8, Robin Tesoriario. And I was told by the Executive Secretary that Section 8 was closed in 2009. It wasn't open legitimately until June 3rd, 2024. Several neighbors said they have been signed up for Section 8 since March 26th of 2024. Surprise, I never signed anything and I want to see my signature. A tenant was at a meeting and asked how were we signed up in March? She said she was unable to get into her tenant's quarter. A PAC partner, Samuel Levine, snatched the microphone out of her hand and shouted, "Don't listen to her. Don't listen to her."
Your time has expired? Thank you.
We need more time. I need just 30 seconds.
You have 30 seconds to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hurry. PAC partner, Khadijah Wilson, started screaming repeatedly, "She's a liar, she's a liar." The tenants became upset and the meeting ended with people walking out in disgust. We have no legitimate tenant association and never had a chance to vote for anyone, especially to make Boston Seacor private. How WaveQuest came to be in Boston Seacor Houses is a mystery. WaveQuest has a very bad reputation, especially with evictions. And I want to know this, and this is very important. Why has NITRA abandoned its tenants and when did it decide to do so? And here's one thing I wanna tell you, Chris. These panelists that appeared today have sworn an oath to tell the truth, but their testimony is questionable and not what residents are really experiencing. And NITRA and HUD need a forensic audit done to expose, expose their ongoing schemes and scams.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Hall. Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Hall. Christine Burke?
You may begin.
One minute. Hello?
Hello, Ms. Burke, you may begin.
My name is Christine Burke. I am a resident, resident of Howard Houses, Brooklyn, New York. The RAD process has unfolded in a way that feels both unfair and undemocratic. Residents' voices have been concealed, leading us without adequate explanation. None nor genuine participation. To address this, I urge the council to impose a moratorium on the RAD PAC program. There should be a minimum threshold of at least 51% residents voting for PAC. We also need a moratorium on RAD to ensure that the program is not rolled out without changes that address the misleading practice of using surveys results as proof of approval. Surveys were distributed during a June 2024 PAC meeting with fewer than 25 residents present. There are 813 apartments in Howard Houses. There was no transparency about how the surveys were, results would be used and no follow-up communication to ensure that the residents fully understood the implications of their response. The Tenant Association President, Ms. Naomi Johnson, told me that the PAC representative asked about the surveys. She said she told them the majority of the residents.
Your time has expired? Thank you.
In favor of the transition.
Ms. Burke, your time has expired. Would you like 30 seconds to wrap it up?
Yes.
Okay.
There were no discussions or votes in the PAC meeting nor in the Tenant Association meeting to confirm her decision. Ms. Johnson put Howard Houses in PAC using the surveys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, for your testimony. We'll now proceed to Cynthia Tibbs.
You may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Cynthia Tibbs. I'm the Tenant Association President of Worcester Brownstone's 36 buildings on the Upper West Side. After watching today, I'd like to put it in a nutshell. NITRA is nothing but organized crime at its highest. The names have been changed. Um, the Godfather is now known as Resident Engagement and the Real Estate Department, point blank, period. Simon Gortowski, what he did today is just a miniscule of what he does to us and people going into the RAD conversions, the bullying, the gaslighting. We deal with that on a daily basis. Regarding what Mr. Martinez said, I am in 100% in favor of the abolishment of C-COP. The Citywide Council of Presidents is nothing but another capo regime. They are not for us. Recently, a lot of us presidents were privy to a Zoom meeting that they had in January where they referred to all the presidents and they stated, Ms. Lozato said, "I can't stand any of the presidents." Mr. Bowman said that all the presidents are nothing but insects and bugs that should be swatted, sprayed, and smacked away. This is a man that the only time we ever, he ever reached out to any of us presidents was when he wanted donations when he was running for city council in his district. They are corrupt at the highest level, which is why NITRA meets with them on a weekly basis. Because those of us that try to do right in our developments, that are transparent with our residents, that do not steal, that do not muddle receipts, that do not owe Resident Engagement over 900 receipts, that are allowed to get away with things that no one else is allowed to get away with, need to be disbanded and let the chips fall as they may. All these D-COPS, all of C-COP.
Thank you.
30 seconds and I'll wrap it up. They all need to be disbanded. They all need to be disbanded. They are corruption at the highest, the highest. And the more that we don't go along, they push back. And yes, the bullying is real and it happens to us also. When we don't go along, they try to replace us with residents that will go along. And I yield, my, my whole testimony has been submitted. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Tibbs. Uh, we will now proceed to Ramona Ferreira. For real?
You may begin.
Hi, everyone. That was, you caught me off guard. Um, I hope everyone is, is doing okay after such a lengthy and, um, at times contentious, uh, hearing. Instead of going over all of the different ways that, um, NITRA fails us, which I think have been clearly outlined by my neighbors and, and by other allies, I think I'm gonna focus on the solutions that we're looking for. So my name is Ramona Ferreira, um, and I am the founder of Safe Section 9. And we have a set of national solutions that could make NITRA the most desirable address in New York City. Um, but we know that rehabilitating and expanding public housing is not only possible, it is necessary. We just need to restructure NITRA and hold them accountable. Our solutions work towards that. Um, I wanna highlight also that on May 7th, 2024, NITRA testified that rehabilitating an empty unit costs $45,000. And I wanna remind everyone that this is taxpayer money and that no corporate landlord can deliver what NITRA provides at the cost per unit. Um, so the solutions that we are actually focused on right now include adopting Resolution 0731, 2025, to implement a more robust resident engagement and voting process at each NITRA development considering RAD PAC conversion. Uh, number two would be to adopt Resolution 0730, 2025, which is conduct a thorough study on the RAD PAC program to assess the effects of conversion on residents and the program's impact on tenant rights, security, and community well-being. And I do wanna explain that currently HUD measures success via the ability to complete needed repairs. But after 40 years of disinvestment and mismanagement, there's a critical need for repairs and we understand that. However, the desire for repairs should not undermine the quality of life of tenants. We have amassed enough evidence to prove that RAD PAC is harmful and it is now time for NITRA to analyze the experience of tenants.
Thank you.
Can I have 30 seconds?
Yes, you may have 30 seconds to wrap it up, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, and the final solution is place an immediate moratorium on all RAD, RAD Section 18 blinds in New York City until that comprehensive third-party impact assessment study is completed. Um, thank you again for this hearing and I look forward to working on these solutions with you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We'll now move to Janine Lopez.
You may begin.
Hi, my name is Janine Lopez, 3555 Bavona Street, Officer Seacor in the Bronx. I advocate for Safe Section 9. I've lived in this building for over 19 years and what once was my home now feels like a place I'm being forced out of little by little. The RAD and PAC program was presented as a solution, but instead has become a nightmare. I'm expected to sign a lease under confusing terms while being harassed for rent and withheld the voucher until I do so. With exaggerated rent arrears and random fees that seem to be out of nowhere. HRA does not recognize any of these private companies, so how will I get the rent help once I do sign? Every month feels like a new rule, being thrown at us, making eviction an ever-present threat. It feels like they're setting us up to fail and fall behind just enough to justify them about pushing us out. I fear my future here. NITRA needs to stop lying on oath, no less, is diabolical. No wonder why they left. I agree, I never agreed to this process and I certainly never voted for it. We were told that it's just a survey, only to find out later it was being used as a vote without full understanding or consent. Meanwhile, construction is being done all around us with carelessness, leaving behind dust, toxic fumes, the breeze. I have, that has taken a serious toll on my health. I wake up with headache, nosebleeds, covered in dust. My breathing, clearly as y'all hear, is affected. Um, I'm stressed out and it's making my mental health spiral. The anxiety of not knowing if I'll be able to afford to stay in my home and dealing with unanswered questions, unfulfilled promises, and threats of eviction is an ongoing battle. It's a fight for survival in a place that's supposed to be my safe haven. The passing of my late mother has affected me and on top of grieving, now I'm being forced into uncertainty about my future. I'm trying to rebuild and refine my career path. But how can I do that when I don't know when I have a home next month? No one should have to live like this. I'm calling on the city council to conduct an end-up survey on the RAD PAC program to assess the true impact on this conversion, on the tenants, our rights, our safety. I have 30 seconds. I have thirty seconds, an extra thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds to wrap it up.
This entire plan needs to be reevaluated and if not, put on hold entirely. No New Yorker should be pushed toward homelessness, especially not any long-term residents like myself who are simply trying to get back on their feet. We deserve stability, transparency, and a fair chance at a future. Thank you, council.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Lopez. We'll now move to Brenda Temple.
You may begin.
Brenda Temple. Okay. Moving on to Rose Marie Williams.
You may begin.
Give me now, and I'm on camera. You got me doing this on camera. Give it here.
You may proceed with your testimony.
Hello. My name is Rose Marie Williams. I was a presidential candidate in the twenty-two, twenty twenty-four elections. I'm a public health leader. I have owned a home-based childcare business for fifteen years. I've been a lobbyist since I was nine years old. I have worked for Senator Jesse Hamilton, Mayor Tony Harp, Senator Mike Fowler. I worked at President Barack Obama's first inauguration. I currently live in Ingersoll Houses, and before this, I lived in East Chester Gardens. My company and I was featured on NYCHA's Journal website. So I'm here today to talk about how public housing has affected me and my family. So life has never been easy for me in public housing. I was kidnapped and raised in East Chester Project. Staff never requested or questioned why my mother's name on the birth certificate was different from my mother's name on the lease. Neither did my public school, yet they put me on the lease anyway for sixteen years before I ran away. I would wake up wanting to go to the park, and I couldn't go to the park because of a baby being thrown in a trash can in the park, or there was dead bodies laying in the middle of a walkway right outside. Public housing has never been safe for children, women, or men or families. Residents don't respect staff. Residents' visitors are dangerous. I was given a substance in the East Chester apartment, and I blacked out for three days. And only after I woke up was I then transported to a hospital where blood result tests said that I was pregnant. My handler was on the news for finding a baby on the ground from the adjacent building. When I went to the Brooklyn DA's office, they questioned my handlers that raised me in East Chester Projects, and they were told, "You're playing with fire. Leave it alone." Someone in the same family, I then went to a DV shelter and got an apartment with NYCHA on my own. Someone in the same family stole this apartment for five years prior to me moving in. I've been fighting rats and mice for the last nine years in this apartment. The goal of the building is under me as I'm on the first floor.
Your time has expired. If you would like thirty seconds, thirty seconds to wrap it up, ma'am.
All right. So in conclusion, I have made reports to Jermani Williams, Reverend R. Sharpton, to the White House, to FBI. Nothing has been resolved. My housing manager has put his hands on me. They have transients that are paid for by NYPD with a partnership with NYCHA, and they refuse to move these transients. These transients have asked me to sell myself, sell drugs. I have a home-based childcare business that I've had for over fifteen years. I'm not able to do that. So I've made all complaints and all human councils, all possible authorities, and nothing has been said. I am a mandated reporter, and NYCHA should be shut down immediately. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll now move to Julie Sharpton.
You may begin.
Julie Sharpton. Danette L. Chavis.
You may begin.
Hello. Yeah. Hi, I'm Danette Chavis. I'm the TA President of LaGuardia. And first off, I want to say three minutes is not nearly enough time to hear all the issues of concern. It's upsetting to attend these hearings and hear NYCHA give ample amount of time to say what are lies and not have any TA leader have the ability to refute it. Anyway, despite decided violations of NYCHA being committed in regards to Rad PAC and outright rejection of the residents who didn't even have a chance to vote, who told from day one that a survey was given, not a vote, NYCHA has been allowed to proceed nonstop with Rad PAC and has basically nearly completed half their portfolio. In the midst of that, NYCHA is taking actions that I believe account to a constructive dismantling of the TA boards themselves. They arbitrarily make moves to withhold the funding needed to govern and function these boards, and the training that's given is substandard. You cannot have a situation where anybody in a development can run for office based on compliance and be in the right age only, and then entrust them with thousands of dollars and give them what accounts to a fifteen-minute video, no hands-on training, no way to ask a turn if they understood the training, and leave it in their hands. And then at the same time, you cannot force TA leaders to come into an agreement that they must sign, and if they don't withhold their funding, which they've never read or had an opportunity to even understand what's being written. And that agreement has more restrictions on it than the previous agreement that they signed. So while they say they provide these boards with the funding needed, they restricted by the limitations imposed. And then to turn around and literally hold hostage such an agreement that you ain't seen, that you ain't read, that nobody's communicated to you what it is, is ridiculous, and it needs to be addressed. May I have thirty seconds additional time?
You may have thirty seconds.
We've heard these complaints over and over and over again, and I don't see you understand what action, if any, is being taken. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Carmen Quinones.
You may begin.
Carmen Quinones.
Do you hear me?
We hear you, Ms. Quinones. You may begin your testimony.
Okay. First of all, let me say thank you for this hearing, Chris, and I really appreciate everything and the drilling that you did. It was really, really good. Now hopefully they can come back and answer most of those questions. Let me start by saying that NYCHA's puppet council must be dissolved. You know, after admitting to racial bias in nineteen ninety-two, NYCHA built C-COP, a citywide systematic law to stop four hundred thousand residents from shaking NYCHA's workplace rules and to mark their representation for over thirty years. I don't know if you know, but I do have a resident management corporation that I just did a five oh one C three two, and I hope that I can sit with you and talk to you about that. But let me tell you what the immediate dissolution of C-COP is. Immediate dissolution of C-COP for no more fake leadership. Full recognition of two hundred-plus real resident council that truly represent residents. Actual HUD intervention to stop NYCHA's control over resident representation. Real oversight over NYCHA and HUD, ensuring all residents' rights are protected. What's happening now is with C-COP, there's eight people on C-COP. Eight people make decisions with NYCHA continuously every week for four hundred-plus thousand residents. This is unacceptable. Eight people that don't even live in our district. And they are, those are the representations that NYCHA staff, they told you about today. Those are the committees that they're talking about, not Tenant Association presidents. Eight people, eight people that are representing four hundred-plus thousand residents. Chris, this is unacceptable. It needs to be looked at. I would love a meeting with you. We need to sit down because this is really bad. It is really bad.
Thank you.
Okay, give me them thirty seconds, honey.
Thirty, thirty, thirty seconds, Ms. Quinones.
And again, you know, this is silencing the TA presidents. And what is happening is that NYCHA is trying to dismantle all TA presidents all around. And the only ones they listen to are the TA, the C-COP chairs, which is Danny Barber and some. Eight people for four hundred thousand people. You make the math. You make the math. Thank you very much for your time and your patience.
Thank you, Ms. Quinones, and we'll be reaching out to you to have that, set up that meeting. We'll now move on to Jacqueline Laura.
You may begin.
Jacqueline Laura. Jacqueline Laura. All right. We'll now go to Diana Eldon.
You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Banks. Good to see you again. Hope you come back to RPPH and meet with us again.
Good to see you.
Yes. So I'm here today to discuss the importance of transparency, truth, and respect within the relationship that NYCHA should maintain in serving the residents. During a recent incident, my residents were kicked out of our nomination election process to allow NYCHA to promote their conversion project in a meeting for another development that has a senior center they could have used. On November twenty-first, two NYCHA-coordinated staff members and I were denied access to our reserved lunchroom in our center by NYCHA's Rad PAC staff, holding a meeting for more houses. This was unacceptable, as I had seventeen residents in that meeting who were from the ages of sixty to eighty-seven, where there was no ventilation, no space for them. NYCHA left us to dry out as they promote these conversion programs. This is definitely a difference of what transparency means to NYCHA and how it relates to the residents. We have witnessed NYCHA backflip so many issues. The backflip was the dismissal of the resident leaders that were left out of the first conception of private management with the blueprint. When we began as RPPH, we noted that in the violating of HUD Regulations nine sixty-four point one thirty-five C, where we were supposed to sit at the table and have input, and most certainly how it was all going to be done and to whom it would be done to. That is where RPPH came in. We are comprised of resident leaders who defy the forced actions of NYCHA upon our residents around the city. And when we reminded NYCHA of this terrible action against the residents, they continued to go forth with these conversions. I believe that NYCHA has perpetuated their lies.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
You have thirty seconds to wrap it up, Ms. Eldon.
They have bullied us every day as residents, and the pressure that NYCHA gives towards these conversions has terrorized many elderly residents like myself and my age. And the fear as a wheelchair-bound senior that this might one day come to my development is overbearing. Something must be done, and NYCHA must fix this voting issue as it should be fifty-one percent of the population of the development that votes for these conversions and as well as the trust. And so under this, under this program here, I don't see any good coming from it, Chairman. And you have to do something, definitely have to do something in a way of independent audit, and there must be some resolution to C-COP because we're not being heard. For eight people to speak for all of us, as we said before, is obnoxious. And at my age, I don't have time to waste. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Eldon, and good to see you again. Thank you for your advocacy. Now we'll proceed to Shamika Ruiz.
You may begin.
Shamika Ruiz. You may begin. Shamika Ruiz. Okay. We'll now be moving on to Beverly McFaulen.
You may begin.
Yes. Good afternoon, Chairman Banks. I thank you for this meeting. I'm here to discuss the Section eighteen. I wish that you can stand with us resident leaders to abolish the trust. First of all, it was done against the valley in the nine sixty-four HUD regulations that states that the active consent decree were not supposed to be in place in order for NYCHA to start another program. So that, that in itself is a violation of the nine sixty-four HUD regulations. Section eighteen is impacting the demolition. That's the demolition of these development. If that portion of, in the Rad PAC and the trust is taken out in just a rehabilitation aspect that will help residents not be displaced or they're not having the ability, these developers, along with NYCHA, to demolish our properties. So I ask you to stand when we ask you and your colleagues to demolish the, or to get rid of the trust because it was illegally passed in the legislation when not knowing you got, the elected officials did not understand or did not know the law, the nine sixty-four laws in place. They have an active consent decree that they have not satisfied with the mole mediation. So I'm asking you guys to understand what negative impact these conversions are making on our lives and our families, and it is changing the fabric of our community and impacting our lives. I thank you. I yield.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. McFaulen. Now Louis Bartot.
You may begin.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, so you may proceed with your testimony.
Thank you for allowing me. I lived in Elliot Chelsea Houses, Manhattan, New York, raised two families over a period of fifty years. Because of state divorce laws, I was forced to give up my apartment without giving a chance to go into any of the dozens of empty apartments here in Elliot Chelsea Houses. I was a holy sir at that moment with my wife, and they did not present any alternative to me except go out the door under the bus. At that time, the city was reporting there was at least six thousand empty apartments across the city of New York. NYCHA was not created to create homelessness. They're supposed to protect tenants. They're supposed to help the elderly, especially a person of my age, which now I just turned seventy-nine. This just happened last year. You have to find a way to find what the vacancy rate, which you have already said is unusual, and find out what happened to the people that left these apartments. Among them, you find heads of households, women mostly, who have passed on, and their families have been left behind. You find also elderly people who were taking care of children and grandchildren, and they passed on, and their families have been left behind. And also you will find, of course, some residents who became eligible because they married an American citizen, and they also have been put out under the bus. So you guys, you gotta find this information and find a real number of how many units are empty in the city of New York because nobody gave NYCHA the mission to create homelessness. I thank you very much for your time. I will send these remarks in writing to you with your permission, and I hope that you can solve the problem of our needs here. And right now, I am homeless. I spent
Your time has expired.
Almost a year and a half. Can I get thirty seconds more?
You may get thirty seconds more to wrap it up.
Thank you. So just to wrap this up in a very bad note, I was assaulted here in Elliot Chelsea Houses when I moved from one building to take refuge in another. I ended up going to a city shelter for over a year. I was assaulted there as well and suffered eye injuries that I had to have operations. This is the result of what NYCHA has proposed on our people here in public housing. I don't think I need to say anymore. Thank you very much for your time, and I pray for you and God's peace. Thank you.
Thank you for your advocacy and thank you for your testimony. Lenora Shoemaker.
You may begin.
Leona, sorry. Leona Shoemaker.
You may begin.
Meneva Diaz.
You may begin. You may begin.
Minerva Diaz. Michael Centron.
You may begin.
Michael Centron. And the last one is E. E-R-E-R-E.
You may begin.
Is there anybody else on to give testimony? That concludes, hold on, hold on one minute. Please unmute. Can you state your name?
The hose is a little... Hello? Okay, you can hear me now? Okay, thank you for this platform. My name is Sadie. I'm from Reese. And I'd like to, you know, let you know how NICA has constantly kept violating our 964 regs, which is like our Bill of Rights. So to name one is, we had a hearing with you guys on October 31st, and I mentioned about the red and green dots with the data, how they act as though they wanted to pursue everything as if that's what we wanted, which it wasn't. And it was a survey which they took as a vote. And both times that they had this town hall meeting with NICA, which is the ID, they ID'd us inside and outside on September 19th, as well as this past February 13th, right? And when we came to the hearing to speak to you, Chairman, I mentioned about the red and green and how they're constantly saying that they're trying to provide us with healthy homes, which is like them rebranding their lives. They don't care about our quality of life. We have constant dirty air, soils contaminated. Where I'm at, they're about to close Beth Israel as of March 26th. So a lot of residents who are sick don't even know they're sick because they're constantly digging and doing things that we don't even know the other unknown harms, right? So also on top of that, when you ask them for assistance, I had mentioned to Simon last week on the, no, I was trying to say on the February 13th at the intro meeting for PAC, he could have answered my question, but Jonathan said that he's uncertain as to what is the correct answer when I said in regards to, do you think the new Secretary of HUD is going to fund us? Because they have a deficit of 80, I think 80 billion dollars in repair, and he said he doesn't know. But then Simon said, no, 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 that's wrong. But there's never no any transparency. When you ask for that assistance and for help to have them guide you as to what's going on, that's why he said it's going to take five more sessions. And we're like five sessions because he realized you have to reengage or disengage. Us tenants are not for this at all. That's why we don't want any part of what's taking place. And when we, like I said, when you ask them about how they're going to fund Section 8 and Section 9, the first thing that happens is demolishing.
Ms. Sadie, Sadie, your time has expired. You can have 30 seconds to wrap it up if you would like.
And then also, when you ask them for your folder, they don't know where your folder's at. If you ask them for a ticket, the ticket is either non-existent because like they said, we're going to hold up the TA president election because we want this PAC to go through. And that's what was said to me on the 13th when I went to the intro meeting for PAC. When you have elections coming out of Reese and ten in power, that's all I can say. We have to get this done. Please, I implore you, investigate them, audit them for the uncollected fines, as well as any other bribery. They probably got to see bribery going on. You need to audit them because they have no numbers. They keep giving you vague replies. Please look into them because they're not here for none of us at all. At this point in time, it's like, you know, premeditated murder because they're not doing an environmental impact survey on any of this. But they're getting paid, and they can't even tell you if you're going to still have a home after everything is said and done. They're giving you estimates of how long it's going to take for them to repair your home. And they don't even, aren't even certain if you're going to be able to come back once that's done, like they did in Cabrini-Green and Rise in Liberty Square. I want people to research and empower themselves and educate themselves as to what they're doing to us. Okay? Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you for your testimony, Sadie. Thank you. Please unmute and state your name. iPhone guest, please. There we go. Unmute and state your name.
Sabrina Dingle.
You may begin your testimony.
I'm calling, we already know how the lack of repairs. I'm talking about the asbestos that's in the floor, the mold that's inside the walls. I had two sons. One had a traumatic brain bleed from seizures at the age of 30. The other one developed seizures November 13th at the age of 34. Now, who do I hold accountable for? Do I hold NICA or do I have to go to federal? Is it city or fed? Because we're on federal ground, but it is city building. Can you please advise me? No lawyer is trying to pick me up because city can't sue city. So please advise me.
Ms. Dingle, we will be in touch with you. We'll reach out to you. We'll now move on to Lisa Hall.
You may begin.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Hall. I reside in the Boston Seacor Houses located in the Bronx, New York. And I would like to discuss the operations of the RAD PAC program and how it has evolved from its stated intentions. There are plenty of feel-good marketing campaigns promoting the RAD PAC program, but the actual results do not meet the expectations or promises made. And what I'm referring to is when Wavecrest Management and the PAC program came to the Boston Seacor Houses during the summer cutover period, NICA did not complete its transition from public to private management, including the transfer and validation of the rent roll, tenant records, and invalid rent payment systems that left the tenants between being a public and private hybrid status. At the same time, HUD in Washington DC, their special application center, and I was talking to someone between Chicago and Washington DC, they determined that our development application was not submitted until September of 2024, making October of 2024 an unrealistic target date to start the conversion as confirmed by NICA. So they were already going forward with an illegality. So the RAD PAC program is marketed as a renovation and upgrade to the apartments. However, the program is really a real estate arrangement. The lease is a problem also because a 50-page document with addendums and writers can be overwhelming and difficult to understand, especially for tenants who may not have legal or real estate experience. And they're also discouraged from reading the lease before they sign it. It can lead to confusion and cause tenants to miss important clauses, leading to unexplained arrears like I have and the process of eviction, which already got started with me. So the tenants who sign a Section 8 lease have arrears on their rent statement and
Your time has expired?
The tenants who have not, I need more time. The tenants who have not signed the Section 8 lease also have arrears on their rent statement.
Ms. Hall, your time has expired. You have 30 seconds to wrap it up.
Thank you. My rent statement is $15,000 this month, and that's a 5,415% of my income, not 30%. So I move to ask the city council and anyone involved in the law to create a suspension immediately for the RAD PAC program and to also provide inside clarification on the differences between the versions of Section 8. And I thank you for navigating through the people that took the oath on the panel, with the exception of Brian Honan, because they were under oath and they did not adhere to that testimony. Thank you.
Last call for virtual testimonies. All right. So guys, we thank everyone for coming out today. Seeing none, any requests to give any more testimony, we will now be closing this hearing. We obviously thank everyone again for coming out and being a part of this hearing as we continue our pursuit to hold NICA accountable and to bring about transparency. This meeting is adjourned.